You were ringing? Just close session.
All right, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the agenda of the regular meeting of the City of Coachella, the City Council Close Session, a regular meeting. The City Council, City as a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Finance and Authority, Coachella Education, Government Access Cable Channel Cooperation, Coachella Water Authority and Succession Agency to the Coachella Redevelopment Agency. It is July twenty-sixth and it's five oh one. We're to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is called the order and then we'll move now on our roll call.
Councilman Virgen's not here presently. Councilman Delgado.
Here.
And then Mayor Purcham Delapso.
Here.
Enter your head on this.
Mayor Hernandez here. All right, so my it's all cool. All right, we'll move forward on approval of the agenda. Mister.
Mister Mayor, we staff would like to continue item number two in closed session. We got some information and we want to revise that information. So we'll be presenting to you that we're representing that upcoming September meeting.
I'd like to take by number twenty-six.
Why is that?
It's something why it was brought up.
Well, that's not our fault, though. That's the city manager should have put the attachment to her.
I made a well, I want to pull it. Well, there's a. Was very ambiguous.
So Gabriel, where is the attachments when becoming six?
The the your request came in, I think, two days before the agenda was due, so we didn't have enough time to get the information. We're still working on it.
No, the request came in weeks before.
No.
So I sent them in now, yes. But if you needed further information, then, you know, reach out. But so I did that on my own to send an email. You know, but if you need information, then, you know, follow us up and let us know you need information. I did speak to Delia, though. She does have everything ready.
What's a? We got your email on Wednesdays, July nineteenth, and the agenda was out next day, so we couldn't really get all that information. We're still working on that information. We hope to. You know, the item was just more of a discussion point from council to see what direction they want the staff to go, but based on the stuff that you gave us, we're requiring that information now.
So that's not a non-urgent item, not staff-driven. I think we I think it could wait.
Yeah, but I do want to I do want to clear up the inaccuracy. So my email was then requesting the agenda item rather than just putting some information there. But the request itself came in where? Well, I do want to make sure that on the record it is stated clearly. So a week or two weeks.
On July thirteenth, you made the initial request that you wanted to add the item with along with Dr. Figaro, but.
Then there was two weeks there.
A week, and then we reached out to get more clarification. And when you provided it on Wednesday, the nineteenth, the agenda was already being populated on that Thursday.
But why not let me know at the time of thirteen that you needed more information? You're the city manager. You're presenting the items. How would I know you need an information?
We did reach. We did reach out and you got back to us later on.
The day of or the day before.
Right.
So it wasn't me who was providing the information a day before, but rather that you reached out a day before. So I just want to make sure that it's clarified correctly because and no time to that I want to make it, you know, that we made a mistake.
No, no, no one's making a mistake. It's just we needed a little more information. We put the item on just per your request. It was more of a discussion item. But the once you we acquired the information that you requested, we'll be presenting that to the council. But, you know, there was no mistake. It was just the timing. When the agenda was due, it was just we needed a little more time to get that information. But no mistake, you know, it was just we need a more time. And once we get that information, I will be sending it out.
No, there was an oversight of that week, but it was.
I think knowing that there's thirty plus items and we all have different ideas, but I think the as council members, I think we need to be a little more courteous of staff and not, you know, if somebody comes up, we have an idea, we need, we can be pragmatic. We sometimes have ideas and it takes, you know, it could be either this next meeting, we can provide an information in the email and then, you know, we're brought up, but the idea that it needs to be immediately in the next council meeting. I think that's also not, you know, like it's very authoritative of us to expect staff to drop all these other items and bring forth ours. I, you know, I brought up many items in and and we've been pragmatic about it. I've never asked council and staff and they can attest to it. I need this at the next council meeting. I I think that approach is not a pragmatic approach. I think it's a very authoritative approach. And it's not one of a of an authentic leader. You know, I think we can be better leaders as council members and we can work with our staff, but I think the idea that we need to expect them to, you know, drop all these thirty-plus items because we want an item i- in understanding we have more meetings coming up. I think we could be, you know, we don't need to be these authoritatives, you know, toward directing staff, why not this, why not this? We wanted it just now. It's it. We have time. We can be brought up next meeting. It's not an urgent item. There's no deadlines.
It was it was a city manager who said it was coming on this day. It wasn't. It wasn't myself and it wasn't. There's misinformation. It was the city manager who requested or let us know.
Excuse anyone or anything. I just asked this table. It's that's it.
Yeah, nobody's anybody has.
There's a there's a motion to table our second. And then also with the number two motion for the close session item number two to continue.
Yeah.
Okay, so a table and a continue.
Motion for agenda.
So I'll I'll make a motion.
Or second.
To modify the agenda with the continuance of item number two and a tabling of item number twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Doctor Figaro.
No.
Uh, Councilor Delgado.
No.
Mayor Purcham Delapso. Mary Hernandez.
I okay, but then with that and well, okay, well, with that, then we'll go on to uh, we'll come back to approve of the agenda. Hopefully, when we get a a whole council and then we'll go to public comments. Is there anyone here that'd like to address us in the public? See, and then we'll go to adjournment adjourned and we'll go to post session. So we always know when we always know when the police. All right, the council reconvened from our close session. Mister City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor City Councilman. On we only discuss the first item on the agenda. You see direction when our report will actually will take it. Thank you.
And then we have we have a full council. I just want to note for the record that council member beat hand arrived about. I think it was about five oh eight, oh, eight, five, ten. Call session. We do have to go back to approval of the agenda. We have not approved this agenda. Uh, the city manager suggested that we uh, take out item number two from the close session calendar and council member. The Larsa wanted to table item number twenty-six. There was a a roll call, no action that did not pass. And so if there's a motion uh, with then that would be the take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda uh, with the a continuous of item number two and the table of number item number twenty-six.
There's a motion I'll second. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Delgado? No. Councilmember Figaro?
No.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galasa?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
I motion carried. We'll move forward now. From again, closed session, and we'll reconvene the regular meeting. And I'm going to ask our city manager if you can lead us in a pledge of allegiance. We have a presentation proclamation. There's a presentation by Kikui Design Initiatives on the City of Coachella Displacement Avoidance Plan. Welcome. Well, who's leading this? Is it Gabriel or is it Selena?
It will be Christian.
Christian.
All right, you mayor. City.
Welcome, Christian.
Thank you very much. Can we please pull up presentation? Great. And my colleague, who's also here, um, will be on Zoom, is having some technical difficulties, but he should be joining shortly. So, um, great. So we're here to present to you the Displacement Avoidance Plan for the transformative climate communities. For the record, my name is Christian Rodriguez. I am a senior community associate with Conquid Design Initiative. On the call is also Elsa May Tongue, a principal and founder of K-E Impact, a consultant that KDI brought on for this work, and it is a policy technical expert and also my colleague Jerome Cho, who is a senior planning principal and who is having some technical difficulties, but he'll join us shortly. Do we have a okay. Okay, we've been in front of you before, but for those that don't know us, Conquid Design Initiative is a mission-driven practice. We are a nonprofit committed to building a more just and inclusive public realm through design, planning, advocacy, and policy change. The overall goals of the displacement avoidance plan, this is part of the transform. Excuse me. I don't know why I'm getting too tight. Transformative Climate Communities Program, which we saw a few of you at the big events that the city hosted just last week. Um, it going over the entirety of the program. So this is an element of that program. Um, it is a requirement for the application. And last round, unfortunately, the city was not successful in in securing funds. And we learned that the feedback we received was that this particular portion of the application scored fairly low. And so our attempt was to take that into consideration and develop a plan that would be competitive. For reference, this is the project area of the project. And we will be concentrating within the project area, but I do want to make note that some of the considerations that we will be sharing with you all will be citywide. So to walk you through the displacement avoidance plan timeline, in late June, early July, we started doing some research and analysis. Unfortunately, um, the city didn't have too much data sets for us to pull from to be able to, um, be able to show need within the project area. So we did some research and analysis that included using tools like the Calen Viro screen, uh, but also tools from staff for programs and initiatives that the city had implemented. We also worked with staff to learn more about your existing policies for anti-displacement. Uh, we did a series of engagement and we are now coming to you uh, with a series of recommendations of new policies for this plan. Uh, like I mentioned, we arrived at these new policies. Um, one, because these were recommended policies from, um, and the Strategic Growth Council uh, for the transformative climate communities application. So these are not there from a list that was provided as part of the guidelines. Um, we did get some feedback from housing advocates and small business owners. And we did a series of working sessions with staff to get a better sense of what was viable for the city of Coachella. And so here is the itemized list of the policies that we will be speaking on a little later. Um, and we'll get a chance to dive in more and give you an opportunity to ask questions. And again, we have our policy expert on the line. So what is it that we're requesting today? We're asking you to approve the implementation or the addition of the six policies into the transformative climate community grant. You are not uh, going to be adopting any policy today, um, but adding them to the application. Um, but adding them to the application uh does mean that the city will consider these policies for adoption once funding is received. And we will have plenty of time to really develop those policies and what the implementation looks like for the city of Coachella uh once that is received. Um, I also want to mention that as a requirement for the application, we need to adopt at minimum five of these. Three for uh anti-displacement for housing and two for anti-displacement of small businesses. And uh in just to make reference, some of the previous uh awardees had as many as ten policy, new policies for implementation. Um, so we um are bringing to you a set of recommendations that staff approved. But we will also um showcase a few other policies that we um were considering uh that didn't make that short list uh for further discussion if you all would be interested in um doing that. So let's talk a little bit about our findings in vulnerability in the city of Coachella. So according to the Calen Viro screen, within the project area, sixty percent of the residents live in poverty and sixty percent are considered linguistically isolated. Seventy percent of renters in the city are housing cost burden and that is uh in comparison to fifty five percent of the SCAG region. And more than third um in the city are severely cost burden compared to twenty nine percent in the SCAG region. Many residents are undocumented, making them wary of seeking government assistance and challenging landlords for evictions and tenant organizers reported that many residents in the region are uh aren't aware of rights, making residents vulnerable to harassment and self evictions. Here in this map um that we produced from in uh Calen Viro data um identifies uh the housing burden within the project boundary. And if you see uh project uh housing burden uh means that renters are are paying more than fifty percent of their income um for housing. And you can see here in the map um the severity of that situation within the project area. Uh, in regards to small business vulnerability uh for displacement, uh businesses owned by people of color were disproportionately impacted during the pandemic and local advocates cite rising costs across the region as another challenge for these small business owners. Uh, Coachella small business owners often lack resources related to business planning, or so we learned uh through our engagement with these small businesses. Uh, just to also showcase that during the COVID nineteen relief support that the city did, thirty three small businesses within the project area actually seeked some of this support. Uh, these businesses included childcare, beauty salons, and auto repairs. But here you see the list of um resident of uh small businesses that um needed that support from you all. So I will give it over to my colleague Jerome, if he's on the call um to talk to us about policies.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I'm unable to join you in person, but uh with Christian's help, I'll walk you through our proposed policies. Can you all see this?
No. So if you could go back to.
We're hearing an echo.
Did I share my screen?
That'd be great.
Okay. We just called the presentation. Sorry for the delay.
Is there any way we can pull up the PowerPoint here and then uh Christians, maybe you can lead him through it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Jason, it's on the W drive?
Yeah.
For the, oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay.
Just let me know when you want me to um go to the next slide.
Okay, so you can see a screen in front of you. You all have that in front of you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can now, we can now see the screen.
Okay, great. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So let's talk about the six policies that we're proposing to include in the application. Next slide, please. Okay, so starting with the business retention uh programs and policies. We heard when we met with small businesses that they have concerns about safety and sanitation and that they also just want to be better connected to city decision-making and city information and resources. So rather than have ten or twenty or thirty individual businesses complaining or operating in a vacuum, uh, we're proposing forming a small business alliance so they can collectively work with the city, prioritize what's most important to them as a group uh and then just stay connected to whatever resources the city can provide uh such as a grant program that we're all going to talk to you about later. The implementation for this policy would require that city officials meet regularly with this small business alliance to provide information and resources and just keep their priorities in mind and hopefully act on them um as when possible. Next slide. Uh, we learned that the city has in the past offered a program in which they offer city-owned facilities or retail spaces in those facilities to local business owners at a discounted rent. Um, this helps financially support local businesses and it also means that uh vacant city-owned spaces can be occupied by viable business. To implement this policy would require that city officials make a commercial space in a city-owned facility available to a local small business or small businesses for below market rent. And our understanding is that the city has already identified a building that uh they would use for this purpose. Next slide. Christian, I think we need to go back to. And if you can go back, uh one more. Okay, so we're gonna skip around apologies for that. I'm gonna talk about three housing policies and then we're gonna talk about the final business policy. So on the housing side, I won't spend too much time on this slide. I know that the council has already been studying and reviewing a potential inclusionary housing ordinance. We have been working with a technical assistance provider that is working with cities to get the best possible score on these applications. He said that even though the city is already considering this, since it won't be in place by the time we submit the application, we should consider it a new policy. So that's what we've done here. You all know the details on this policy and the reasons for doing it. Uh, so for implementation, you would just have to coordinate with developers during development process and enforce the ordinance. Next slide. Local preference for newly built affordable units. The idea here is that um new affordable housing is open to anyone who wants to apply, whether or not they live in the city. But we want residents of Coachella who may be struggling to stay in place um to get some preference. So everyone who qualifies for these units gets on a list. A local preference policy would just mean they get bumped up that list a little bit. Um, it's a simple idea. It is somewhat complex in implementation. So what the city would be required to do is to just coordinate closely with the state housing department, uh housing and community development and with affordable housing um developers and owners. Next slide. Um, the third and final housing anti-displacement policy is culturally appropriate tenants' rights education. As Chris John has outlined, and as I'm sure you all know, many tenants in Coachella and many other California cities don't know their rights, which means that landlords can do all kinds of illegal things and tenants feel like they don't have a choice. They just have to go along. Um, so we're proposing a tenants' rights education program. Um, the city's responsibility in this would be to uh co-host workshops, but we would identify a partner that already provides these kinds of services to work with KDI and leverage our local relationships with residents um and the trust that they've uh developed with us to organize these workshops, provide all kinds of information and workshops so that they're less vulnerable to illegal harassment and other practices. Okay, and then the final business policy. Uh, yes, this one. So the idea here with this code compliance grant is to provide financial assistance to business owners who might be struggling to stay open and who might need to close their doors otherwise. Um, one need we heard of when we engage business owners is um help getting their spaces up to code so they don't get penalized by the city for being out of compliance. So the grant here would basically provide assistance for owners to do that so they can improve their spaces and also be compliant with code. And here, the city's implementation requirement would just be to match funding that would be available through the TCC grant. Okay, uh Christian also mentioned, so those are the six policies that we're asking you to sign off on so we can include them in the application. And then, as you mentioned, we will have lots of time and resources to work with staff and other key stakeholders and you all to develop the final policies. Um, for now, we just wanted to run by you two other policy ideas. So the six that I've presented already, those are ones that staff signed off on, meaning they felt confident that the city can implement them and they recommend to you all um that we uh include them in the application. These two policies ideas I'm going to talk about now have not been approved by staff, but they felt like they were important enough to bring to you just for the purposes of conversation and discussion. Um, and if they're of interest, they're something that we can look at developing if the city gets the TCC grants. So the first is a ban on tenant harassment. I've already talked about the kinds of harassment and other illegal practices that tenants are vulnerable to. This policy would essentially establish in law that these practices are illegal. Um, and you would essentially adopt a local ordinance banning harassment. Um, there are some legal implications that city staff wanted us to better research and understand before they felt comfortable formally recommending this and including it in the application. But we're bringing this to you anyway, just to mention that this was something that was considered. And then finally, next slide, please. Um, I think everyone in this room knows that there's been a rapid increase in short-term rentals, such as Airbnbs. Um, many other cities in the state have adopted some kind of control or regulation limiting uh the number of those short-term rentals. Again, staff did not feel comfortable uh formally recommending this because of a lack of data on what really are the impacts of these short-term rentals on the housing market, on rising rents and housing costs. But we um put this in front of you in case you want to discuss this more. And this is just a map showing um some of the more than three hundred short-term rentals that the city has on record right now and showing the number of them within the study area that are um owned by out-of-town uh owners, which are the category that most concern us. That's about twenty percent of them.
Can you go back?
Yeah, go back to that.
Yeah, and can you email us this?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, make sure we have it.
Now, this is for the purposes of the delegation, but when our was putting together this, we actually expanded to um how to the entire city and saw some very interesting trends that I think you guys will find very interesting as to where the short-term rental concentration is happening.
Do a map uh more, so you know, I know this is for the sake of the positions made into an infographic. Do you have a more detailed graph that we could see a map? That we could.
Uh, not, not with us today, but we'd be happy to. Yes, we, we created a map specifically when we were doing the research and analysis that um outlines the all of the short-term rentals in the entire city.
Can you include that in our, in the email to us too?
Yes.
Um, that's, that's, that's gives introduction. And so in, I, I, I think with, with respect to the six, feel very comfortable with respect to the seventh recommendation. I think it's important that we understand the legal limitations and so as soon as we get more information on that, I think as soon as we understand that's good. And I, and with respect to short-term rentals, I don't see that as a problem. I, I do believe that that area in itself needs further and thorough uh discussion. And you know, I don't, I don't believe there's anyone up here that's probably opposed to that, but, but we have to be smart about how we go about it and because there could also be some huge legal implications for us as well, so.
Absolutely. And we did include um a, a couple of um presidents for the uh local preferences um for affordable housing. Um, and we included for the um the uh for one of the programs, but is this the one you were referring to, Mayor, about the legal implications?
Well, well, here's what I understand with respect to, you know, the capital stack. And, and depending on the federal funding or state funding, if you have local preference and you're not making it open to others, it may keep you out of, it may disadvantage your application. Even though our residents, you know, want it. And I will also say that in our new affordable housing that has come online, it's, it's been like less than seven percent that has gone to out of, out of city applicants. But, but I think on the capital stack, it's just very important that because it, it is very point, like point system, we don't want to be in conflict with our desire to build more affordable housing. I, I think that's the, it's a tricky balance, but what I feel is that this is a council that's very pro affordable housing and we've been doing a great job at it. So, so we want to keep it, but whatever that balance is, it doesn't disincentive us or doesn't create a disadvantage. We'd like to hear it, you know, and, and, and again, National City, Oakland, they're at an advantage already because they're urban communities that have multimodal transportation and they score extremely well. Whereas Coachella is at a disadvantage because we hardly have transportation and we're not dense. So, so, so I get where you're coming from, but I think it's also a question of like really understanding how do we, and then bringing in the developers that are building these projects and then like, how do we don't, how don't we disincentivize ourselves, even though it's well-intended? You know, and it's, it's the truth.
And, and we hear you loud and clear, and this was actually the same concerns that staff brought up and this made it to the shortlist, but didn't make it to the final recommendation list for all those concerns. But we wanted that to just be brought up to your attention, that this is something that could potentially be for further study and discussion later um with the implementation of funding.
Sorry, Mr. Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
Local preference is one of the three recommended policies that staff ultimately said we should try to include. I think all the points you raised are absolutely valid and they are an important part of what we would study as we implement the policy.
Right. My point was on, on suggestion seven.
Okay.
The other one, suggestion seven, which was what are the legal implications on on the, what would be the landlord's right, right? Like we, we need to understand.
On the ban of um harassment, yes, okay.
Correct. I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
And then on the, on, on that one, on question seven, you we have to also bring in, you know, landlords and tenants and get their perspective because that's important in the process here and transparency, so.
Totally agree.
Yeah. I, I uh, I'll chime in, I'm comfortable, obviously with, you know, all eight, but I, I really take the staff recommendation very serious because they understand the day and day. And so I, I uh, you know, I'll, I'll side with staff on moving forward with the six and bringing back seven and eight separately because I, you know, you, you know, we need to, I look at those, you know, and seeing how we can uh make sure that our residents are taken care of, that uh, you know, we create a good, you know, housing market. And I think, you know, after COVID, things have been tough. You know, I think, you know, we haven't recovered from the cost of living here, you know, uh before COVID, uh on Avenue fifty-four, we had new builds for less than four hundred thousand dollars. There was even less. There was even less, there were some for less than three hundred thousand dollars on Avenue fifty four. There were some new, new builds there for two eighty, two eighty five. Um, that's to think that we could buy a new build for less than three hundred thousand dollars today is very, very tough. Um, and so, you know, how do we, you know, ensure that we do that while that, you know, for, 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 for tenants that are looking to become homeowners one day? And as for those that are, you know, continuously, you know, with that, that are, that are, that are being tense, that they don't spend more than twenty percent of their, you know, uh, monthly budget on, on housing, you know, so. How can we do that? What are we, what can we implement? And then? Another question that wasn't raised today, but it's like, how do, how can we work with nonprofits and developers to build housing? Where people are willing not to make fair market value and, and being able to sell to. Recent college graduates at a lower rate, you know, and, and so what can the city do, you know? Do we need to, you know, so those, you know, because obviously we see new, new houses being built and new affordable housing is being built and, you know, I think as the mayor mentioned. I, we, we, we are a city that believes in affordable housing and we have probably the highest portfolio of affordable housing. Than any other city with, you know, some other cities uh have built affordable housing too, but they have, you know, uh, some, you know, like seniors only type of housing and. I get it, you know, or type of good housing, but you know, then it leaves out the younger families too. Uh, and uh, and so, but, but there's people in the middle of that, you know, that, that, you know, some, some recent college graduates. They were part of a, a family that would, that would qualify for affordable housing, but because they went to college and now they're making. A little more, they don't qualify for affordable housing, but they also don't have enough money to buy a house. And so that's sort of what, what, you know, another target that we need to sort of bring back and how do we tackle this issue too?
Absolutely.
There's so much here. Um, I'm happy and pleased that you're bringing so much support for the small businesses. We seen this when we did the T C C, um, the initial application, the first time application. And we were doing the community input events. Uh, what we got back was the small businesses support and childcare. Those were really two high ranking uh issues that our residents had addressed. Um, I did ask for childcare when we got our ARPA money. Um, that was not, that was not added, but I think it was something that we, we should have supported a bit more. Um, because we had a lot of childcare uh folks who needed to do the upgrades, you know, to address the COVID. Uh, so there was a lot of money out of their pocket that they had to put up front and there was an assistance programs for that for childcare. Um, the rent, um, as the education and the code compliance, I'm completely in agreement as well. Um, allow our small businesses cannot afford um the codes that they've been, you know, uh violated. Um, because they don't have the money. Many of them are mom and pop type of businesses. So outside of that, they just don't make enough to be able to be up to code. And some of them are fire codes that they need to, which is, you know, needed to be addressed because of safety reasons, the obvious reasons. Aesthetically, small businesses, that's also something that our residents have been asking for a great deal. Just because they want these businesses to be more attractive, to bring in more people into the downtown. Or surrounding areas that are probably not in our rent, our um. Uh, the areas that were renovating, you know, that were upgrading, that were putting so much attention to. And so just putting a little bit more effort into those areas as well to make it more appealing. Um, for the landlord harassment, I'm completely on board with it. I do understand that there are some legal things that need to be addressed and also um input from the landlords themselves. Because let's be honest, sometimes they have tenants that, you know, have been kind of dodging the system a bit. Um, but we really do want to focus on those who are just genuinely being harassed. Um, and you know, they want to get them out. The S T Rs, that's also something that I've brought up. Um, actually, I think a few months back. What I asked for is where do we have the short, short term rental concentrations? Um, there are some areas where we have a lot more S T Rs in other areas. Especially in our new residential communities, you know, we see people that are coming in and buying five houses down the same street. And so our families are not able to purchase some of these homes or. They just can't compete because they're coming in fifty, sixty thousand dollars above asking price. So I am uh hopeful that, that survey or assessment will be coming back so we can kind of learn, you know, where they're at. If we have too many S T Rs in a residential community, then that's something also that needs to be addressed. Because and then in my view, it's no longer operating as a residential, but now a different type of density, whether it's commercial or. You know, multi-home, but it changes the zoning from it. That's what I was asking, the concentrations in certain, you know, neighborhoods. And lastly is, we had discussed a first time housing homeowner's program. Um, that's something we had asked for staff and I don't know if that's something that's doable, um, but I would like to revisit a bit more. Um, again, because we do have a lot of families that are renting because they can't afford a home. And so I think a first time home buyers program would be very beneficial. I don't know if, if we can get back those deli, those developers that are building homes. Uh, under the market rate, you know, prior to, I think, two thousand nineteen, we were getting a lot of that, that changed. And so I, I'm not sure about the willingness of developers. But on our end, I think that's also something that we can um help them out with is by having a first time home buyers program. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And uh, just to add something that wasn't outlined, but will be on the application is that. We will be organizing a resident leadership group um for the neighborhoods within the project area to continue um monitoring impacts. And then also to bring up these types of discussions for future um assessment of potential policies for implementation. Uh, past the grant.
Your colleague had mentioned a building that staff had um pointed out for a possible hub for small businesses. Which building is that?
The Hidden Harvest Building.
Oh, God, it's okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I just want to talk about that. Um, the picture with the short term into, I think it's a full discussion that should come back at a later time. To the address the um. Concentration, but also um usage, really dialogue that larger conversation. But I think the other one, number seven, um, that's, that, that one is very interesting and, you know, I think the legality component. That it attracts is, is it? It's like a two way street. So some, you know, you never know where you're going to land with it. So I think it's, it's a further discussion as well, but. I think all of it is really, you know, the six that you put forward, I think we'll be really good, really good on this, this application, because it really. Uh, unifies the city and the city's needs that we have at this moment. Uh, moved forward with this grant application. So I just thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And to staff, hopefully we'll be able to see that half a million dollars come back. So that we can start supporting some of the small businesses that um funding had been set aside. And so whatever T C C can't or is not um adding on, then maybe we can help out with the rest of it. Thank you.
That's it from us. Thank you very much and thank you for your um input and we look forward to getting this grant.
I, I will just say that uh it, it, it fills and obviously that there's support for. Um, this plan, the, and we would be the first city, I believe, and probably Riverside County. Uh, it, it, that is moving forward on a, on a pro housing. Uh, what, what are we calling? And I, I think it's, uh, it's important to note that it is very progressive, but at the same time, I think. We're a city that, you know, if you look at who composes our community. It's, it's low socioeconomic, it's working class, it's folks, and I think at the same time, there's a council that's very. Uh, conscious of that gentrification word and we're more interested in the community development. And I think that's very, very important and uh the fact that staff brought this forward, the fact that we're including it in a T C C. Uh, is, is very good, is very good. So I don't want to downplay this conversation. Because it's important that other cities also take these bold actions, uh, because that's important. But, but thank you for your work and obviously this is potentially the beginning of more. Community engagement and, and, and discussion about, you know, uh displacement, which is a good conversation. So thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
All right, we'll move on now to uh written communication. Are there any written communications?
We, we received two letters from Lift to Rise via email on July twenty fifth yesterday. In support of items number twenty seven and twenty eight, those letters were forwarded to councils.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. It is recommended that the consent items be acted upon simultaneously unless separate discussion or action is requested by a council member. Uh, I do want to pull uh two items, item number eight and then item number fifteen. Uh, if there are any other items, council members would like to pull. Okay, we'll, we'll hear item number eight. Uh, this is a authorized award of a Central Park Architecture and Engineering Design Service Project. Number thirty one in the amount of eight hundred and thirty six thousand. Uh, Gabriel, Ramarita.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, the items before you, we did go through a procurement process and recommending the highest scoring. Uh, proposal that was received, it was uh scored by six members of staff, two members from public works, two members from economic development. And two members from the engineering department and the proposal before you is a result of those scores and staff's recommendation. It will be for Central Park. Um, it is the park that we received the grant for on Avenue fifty two. Um, and that is the kind of the high level summary of the item and happy.
This is a good thing. This is actually a big item.
Yes, it is designed.
That we recognize that this, this begins the, the process of actually, you know. Creating the architectural design of what is going to be a pretty cool park. So my question has to do with the procurement of the land. And, and so have we procured the land?
We have uh site control as of, I believe, July fifteenth, uh, per uh correspondence from BB and K.
So we do have site control.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, we filed a domain of inaction and across we filed a prejudgment possession motion that has been granted by the court, so. In terms of domain, the, the case will continue based on what is the value of the land. However. Um, in terms of uh access and control of the site, we have that now.
It's just, it's just not how much we're gonna have to pay for it.
So my second question um has to do with uh the state allowing us. To use these proceeds uh in order to one, buy the land through eminent domain and, and. And, and so.
I believe that the discussion has always been that um purchase of the property was not going to be made using the grant funds.
That's incorrect. The, the purchase, the, the discussion was that the ground funds were going to be used to make the property. And we were going to get to the state, but if, is the state going to allow us, if we have an domain, to use the eight million dollars?
Yes, if we have an domain, we can still use the funds allocated for what is before the council this evening. What will not be eligible expense, which I, I thought had been disclosed previously was that the purchase of the property itself cannot, grant funds will not be used for the. Purchase of the property, but all of the design, uh, construction, project management, all of those costs are eligible costs. Irregardless of how we acquire the site.
So then we have a letter from the state that allows us to proceed.
Agreement that is executed, yes.
Again, my question is, we have a letter from the state that allows us to proceed, expending eight million dollars on an eminent domain land.
Yes, we have, we have the, the agreement that she mentioned that the, the, the grant will cover the design and construction of that, of that parcel.
So then, so then tomorrow, we can tell the community that we're a full goal.
We're still having discussions with the state about other things that they, they're concerned about, but we don't have the, all the information to bring to council at the moment right now. So I would not recommend letting the, the community know that plan yet.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. That's what's important.
In discussions with the state, my understanding is that they are still standing behind that we have an executed agreement for this site. And we still are on their timeline for that agreement. So we are still trying to ensure that we can meet that timeline until we're directed formally by the state, something different.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm just, I, I want to make sure that we get this right. And then it's going to be important that um. That we start expanding or start going through the contract as soon as the state allows us to and we don't have any ambiguity. Because we don't want to spend money only to be told that we're not going to be reimbursed.
No, we've been in communications with the state. They're aware of this being before, you know, we're proceeding down the RFP process for design. And they have not held any red flags to us.
That's, well, that's great. That's, that's good.
I, I have a, um, for me, it, it's obviously, I just want to clarify to. We, we, you know, we're not a council that's going out to just land and, and taking it from, from land, from landowners. Uh, just to clarify to the community is, is this landowner had agreed with us. Prior to us receiving the grant that they were going to sell it to us if we were ready to grant. And there was a backpedal once we had the grant. So we had to, you know, decide whether, you know, we're, what we're going to do with that money. So we decided to go forward with it. And uh, that's why I feel comfortable, uh, you know, using eminent domain, but I'm not one that's gonna. You know, suggest we use eminent domain anytime we want to build a project anywhere. Um, and so that's, you know, just because it was brought up, I want to clarify, that's my position. Uh, and the second, I, you know, I, I think we have an opportunity to name the park something culturally important to Coachella. Uh, to Chicanos, you know, uh, because Central Park is, people think about New York. It's, it's a, it's not. You know, and it's not even central, like it's, it's central if, if the other part was built out of Coachella, but it's not, it's, it's. So I, I, I just think, you know, we need to talk about, think about the name, it's on, on all these, you know.
We'll have time for the name.
Yeah, but I, I want to bring it up now because I think we discussed it a while back and we haven't really done anything about it. So let's also bring in community to think about how we're going to name that park and on this, because we don't want it to be too late where. You know, we have designs with the, you know, with, with name and, and the, you know, uh signage and all that, Central Park coming and. And you know, it's, it's like naming your house, the White House. It's like, no, there's like one White House, there's one Central Park, like, you know, it's, it's. So the weird name, we can name it something important to Coachella, to Chicanos and the community, it's homage to someone or something, it's just.
And we anticipate outreach through this agreement. So through that process, we can definitely layer that in.
You got it.
Cool, thank you. Uh, we won't take a action. Yeah, because I think we can do it all simultaneously. And then item number fifteen, uh, does that use Selena?
That's me.
Oh, Maritza as well. Oh, you got all the good ones.
Yes.
Well, let's talk about this, because this is, this is pretty big for uh our residents and uh, and. What we're doing.
Of course, um, so this item is really before you, this, um, just want to preface it with, um. This is the first step towards the program that was identified in a twenty twenty grant that the city received for um, for ridership. That was a component of the grant. So um, the item.
This is part of the Pueblo Viejo grant that we got for the transformative, no, it was a H A C.
Yes, it's the H A C, as you said, the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant. Um, and it's part of H C D. The grant was received and it identified a partner with LEAP Institute. That partnership would provide right share services for the community. So the item before you is, is twofold. It will enter into an, an agreement with LEAP Institute to provide that ridership program. Um, and it will also um allow the city manager to execute a, a purchase agreement with enterprise fleet. Which will allow us to purchase seventeen Teslas that will then be um deeded over the title will be deeded over to LEAP Institute. Who will manage the ridership program and we will come back before the council to give more information on that program as um that develops. But we do have to acquire the assets first. So this is that first step in being able to bring that back.
So is there like a picture of a Tesla that we're buying or what, like what model are we buying?
Uh, it's a Y model, Model Y, and each Tesla is about sixty thousand dollars. So we're spending just about uh over a million dollars. Um, this component of the grant was one point one, one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, was allocated to this program. So after the purchase of the seventeen Teslas, we'll have about a hundred and thirty thousand available programming itself. So um, that's kind of where um, that's, this leaves us and we do feel comfortable that a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty one thousand is sufficient to be able to roll out the program.
So, so I want to make a, a little point here that cities do enter into. Ride share programs, but typically what we are accustomed to seeing is big gas vans. That have a big van pool, right ship. You see them all over the freeway, right? And, and. That have a big van pool right ship, and you see them all over the freeway, right, and, and this model. Why is a seven passenger, seven seater? And, and our intent is to make it available for migrant farm workers. Uh folks that work in the hospitality industry, folks that need to take, go to, go to college.
Higher education.
Yes, and then, then the subsequent question, because it's a good one, with seventeen Teslas. We have two chargers here in downtown and one probably works, so. What's the plan for the infrastructure?
We are working uh with Tesla actually on that, um on some charging stations. I've been speaking with the Economic Development Director on this topic and we hope to be able to bring something back to you on that. Um a little bit more developed, but we are working that angle as well, as we understand that infrastructure will be needed.
Awesome, so infrastructure and then also the grid availability, right, because that's, we don't wanna have. Our gasless, that's not even, you know, powerless. Yeah, and then the other side of it is that, I imagine that the Teslas will be parked at home. Or, or parked with the participants, right, or how's?
Yes, uh so we are giving the, you know, the title of these units to LEAP Institute, so it will be their. Responsibility to manage where they are parked at.
Okay, okay, so the good thing is, is there will be seventeen.
Units available for the public.
How, what do we call it, like, there's gotta be like a, a, a gasless and, you know. Electric vehicles that will be out here and be of service for our residents in Coachella. Okay, this is a good thing. Kinda neat.
Are some of the charging stations, are they being added to the TCC grant as well?
I believe we do have those components in that grant as well. We've been, we've been adding them in a lot of things, I think we even have it identified in the new park, actually.
Okay.
Um it was one of the amenities that were, was identified in Central Park.
Selena, did you wanna expand?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to indicate that uh Tesla has agreed to uh provide the electric vehicle infrastructure at no charge to the city. Uh and they asked that we uh do not include him in our TCC grant application. Uh so uh they, it will not be, it'll just simply be mentioned that the infrastruc- infrastructure will be there. And uh and that way, uh SGC and TCC staff can uh know that we will have the infrastructure on the ground to support the. Tesla vehicle right share program that is gonna be operated by the Green Drag Deros.
Very good, very good. And thank you to Selena for standing strong on the entire seventeen Teslas. You know, they tried to give us some vans and she was like, nope, I'm not taking it all seventeen Teslas. So thank you to staff for being committed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, as a right share person myself, that right shares to work, it's very important that we have a program like this in the city, because especially. For whoever is the participants, you know, those seven people are gonna save a lot of money on gas. Uh because and potentially, you know, the electricity with the lower cost of that will be, so I'm excited to see that we will have the infrastructure here because. A lot of um, I just read an article, you know, that electric vehicles, uh you show up and most of them are sometimes the broken. And you can only get, you have to wait in line, like in LA, you're in downtown LA and there's a Tesla charger and there's only five that work of the ten. And you have to wait in that forty five minute wait time just to charge your car, right, so hopefully we're able to have working infrastructure so that people know. And I'm excited to see how the program goes out.
And to that point, right, that, you know, it's the type of charger that we get, it's gotta be a. Think the right one is the DC, which is the fast charge. Supercharger, right, yeah, so that's what's important, and then the other side of it is that we also think about. Because there's, there's a, a component of people having a wait, maybe if it's ten minutes or five minutes or fifteen minutes. That there's an economic development component to it, so you don't wanna isolate them, you know, next to our, you know. In the industrial yard, that doesn't make any sense, you gotta put them where people get off and actually shop. And so that's there, there's, that's there, that's, I, I have some comments there on, but that's the next move where it's like as we transition from. From gas to electric, like what is that new world look like and economy look like and, and what's the balance that we maintain?
All right, so where the cricket, when you have, when we have non-working charging stations, so they get reported to you?
It does, and so we've been having challenges with um. The two that we had installed through the AQND grant, and primarily the challenge has been the parts and acquisition of parts. So um we, we've requested parts be replaced, and they actually received parts um at the yard. I believe this week or last week, and they were actually for the Sixth Street location. Um so we still are pending some receipt of parts, so we are actually looking at not installing the same model that we currently have. From ChargePoint, so we're looking at an alternative to that.
The average charge, like to get like twenty five percent is like, I don't know, ten hours, super slow.
That brings an important issue though, because it's, we're transitioning to these charging stations, we have to have working charging stations where we can get parts. You know, quickly, or else it defeats the purpose of us investing on this infrastructure, cause it's not gonna be working, and we can't get the parts to have it work. So.
They're goodies and so, good job, you know, cool things happening here. All right, that was uh my questions on the consent calendar, is there no other uh questions on any other items, we'll take a motion to approve the. Consent calendar in its entirety.
Move it.
Second, a motion, there's a second, we get a roll call, please? We'll move forward now on uh item number seventeen, this is the destination of uh voting delegates and alternatives, alternates to the. League of California City's Annual Conference.
I'll nominate uh council member Vigen to be our, our delegate.
I nominate council member Figo.
I mean, who wants it?
By the way, you can, you can both have it, cause you're gonna be alternate and then voting, so I'm, I'm win nominating both. You guys can figure out who's a.
I'm better at that.
Well, there's a motion and a second to nominate them both and. There's a motion, there's a, there's a, can we get a roll call?
Yes, I'm sorry, did you clarify who was the alternate or not, no?
I think they could, they could let Delia know.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll let Delia know by the end of the week.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'll take roll, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa? Council member Vision?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarsa?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi. We'll move forward on item number eighteen, this is a resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty. Approving a ratification for a four-year memorandum of understanding between the City of Coachella, the Teamsters local nineteen thirty two. Representing them um cal- the confidential mid-management employee bargaining unit.
Hello there, uh they finally voted last week and it was approved, so that's why we're bringing these to you tonight.
Bill Maritz is bringing us money and you're spending money.
Well, I, I, I said this, I am thoroughly and, and, and I'm for it, I, you know, I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll just, I'll just comment, I, I wanna thank uh the mid managers, the Teamsters. Uh nineteen thirty two, uh our staff. Uh for working out a four-year bargaining un- deal and, and uh we always get into, uh, uh, we call it the, the. The, the mating dance, where, you know, we always, we have to figure out, you know, how and what we can afford and how we can. Live and work with each other for the next, whatever our terms are, in this case it's four years, so. The fact that we'll have labor peace here in Coachella for four years, it's a very, very good thing, you know, and the fact that we can. Afford it, and I think that's even a better thing, and so, I'm very, very pleased, good, so. There's a motion, there's a second, can we get a roll call?
Yes, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Hi.
Council member Vision?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Galarsa?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
Hi. Move forward now on the appointments of, to the Cultural and Arts Commission.
Uh yes, hi, good evening, mayor and council members, uh Selena Jimenez, Economic Development Director. Uh the item before you is the uh appointment, the Cultural and Arts Commission. Uh we would like to ask the city council to go ahead and appoint. Uh any of the five commissioners, uh prospective commissioners uh so um in, in your uh agenda packet. I can name them uh to see if they're in the audience.
No, I think they could send, uh if, if they wanna present, there's a few people here. Yeah, and, and we have the names here too, um uh Selena. I, I think if, if uh, I think it's a good opportunity for, if you're present by phone or. I mean, online or, or uh, or in person, first maybe in person and then we'll do it all.
Well, I, I'll just, I think we should, uh, but there's five. Yeah, but we can, we can, we can.
Well, let's, let's let the people that are present, uh, uh, you know, we did this for the planning commission. Um uh let, let's let them just uh present themselves if they want to, if you choose to, we have your application, so you don't need to. Um but I know there's people online and there's people in person, so uh maybe let's do in person first and then we'll do online.
Who would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Irene Rodriguez. Um I live here in City of Coachella and I'll be honored to represent on the commission, I have. An art bar, uh art background, I used to work at Palm Springs Art Museum, and currently I'm the Executive Director at Cabot Spelling Museum. And Desert Hot Springs.
Hi, everybody, my name is Clara Nieblas, um I was born and raised here in the valley. Um I have a background in art education, um as well as working with um a local arts nonprofit. Um I'm also a uh working artist. Um and so my focus is around um art education and community engagement with emphasis on art.
Is there anyone online that would like to?
Yes, we have Yaya Ortiz. Jason, would you please promote her?
Yeah, yeah, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Hi, hi, everyone. Founder and director of Gooden Music and Art. Uh City Music and Art Festival, Women Rising, and um I think I'll be a good asset, um local first. Period.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, anyone else present? They can raise their hand.
Uh Armando Lerma was unable to attend in person and he was trying to connect via Zoom and could not, but he uh did let me know that. That he wanted to be considered.
Selena, we have, uh, we have what, five uh uh seats and we, and do we have one alternate?
Uh we need one alternate, so we'll need a total of six. And um and so I'll just, you know, we'll need to know which five could be the commissioners and then the alternate.
Well, this is easy, cause there's six applicants and six appointments. And so we nominate them all.
Yeah, all right, I think each one of them can, 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 maybe uh appoint someone.
What, I think they can appoint an alternate.
No, we need to, we need to do it like, like they're applying, it's our role to do that, even we, like right now, we could have taken a, a vote on which one of them, we can't be indecisive. That it's our responsibility.
Was there a motion to nominate the alternate?
Was it Mr. Figueroa the alternate before? That's what I was looking at, he was alternate number before, I think, if he's okay.
I think it's unfair though for him to continue maybe being the alternate.
Let's just, let's just do the process that we always do. We nominate someone.
I'll nominate Armando.
Uh Clara Nieblas.
Uh Orellia Ortiz, Yaya.
Irene Rodriguez.
No, pick Mr. Juan Ponser Ramos.
Awesome, and then. All right, um we got our, congratulations, congratulations, oh, we need to make a motion, I mean, a motion to approve. The uh, the uh, the, the five that were mentioned, Armando, Clara, Irene, Juan Ponse, Yaya, and Javier as the alternate.
I will just say something to the folks that are here. That it's important that we think of art in many modalities, I think it's important that. Obviously, we've done a good job of murals and probably need to restore some now, cause of the heat, et cetera, but there's other areas that we're missing. You know, and so really think about that, like in terms of sculptures and think of even music and, and, and how that can. How that can create its own economy within Coachella, cause I believe we have a. A really, really unique opportunity in the fact that we are Coachella and. The music and art scene is not developed in a Coachella bound, and we can really take it, so. Yeah, I put that out there for all of you members to really think that's.
I'll, 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 you know, wanna add to your comments, uh, uh mayor, and, and you know, we created this, this, this arts commission, um. You know, I, I brought it forward in uh one of my first meetings as council member, cause I thought the importance of having art and culture. Uh in our city, it was, it used to be part of the final commission, but it was like something in addition to everything else that we do and. There was a lot of people that weren't really art background and now we do. Um I think what didn't work out over the last few years was that. People weren't showing up to meetings, and so the count, the commission hasn't been within ten of it, you know, so things were being delayed, murals were being delayed. And so uh as council members too, like, well, so we can easily be council members, we, all we do is go to meetings. But that's a disservice to communities and commission, like commissioners and council members, it's, you're gonna get out of this commission and make. And impacting this commission, this community as much as you put into it, and so it'll, it, it, there is some, you know, there's some accountability on our staff to. Make sure that they staff the meetings, but the other ideas and projects and, 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 and some, it's, it's up to the commission that, you know, we, we, there is. You do have some, some power here in making changes in the community, I, I do think that, uh, you know, and I think those that have served in the commission over the last two years. Uh maybe we, you know, it was on, you know, again, I, I believe communications on both ends, maybe it was our first time doing it, so. There are some faults in us as a council and the city staff and, 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 and then there's on the other end too, but now, you know, we need to be open about it, see. Learn from the, what, what didn't work over the last few years and making that sure that these meetings happen, cause there were some times where mirrors would come. Or they would be delayed and, and we don't want to create commissions to make more bureaucracy. We, we, we don't wanna create another layer of bureaucracy, we wanna create a better that adds taste, the flavor of culture. Not another just sign up of bureau- bureaucratic uh structure. Uh that slows down government, that slows down community and that slows down progress. So it's really important for, for, for all of you uh that were, that are being appointed to. To, to, to make time to be part of this, that you're applying and, and I know you're gonna do great uh work, so. Look forward to it, and again, I, 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 just to clarify too, I, I, the, the folks that are being appointed. Uh making a motion, Armando, Lerma, Clara Nieblas, Irene, Irene Rodriguez, Juan Ponser Ramos, and Orellia Ortiz. And Javier Figueroa, the alternate.
I, I do wanna make a comment, um Selena, for the initial art commission, um. Maybe if you can get some input as to what their vision and maybe a strategic plan of what they would like to incorporate. So that there's proper planning and we can put RFPs out to get artists um that wanna provide some renderings. You know, we know we have a lot of local artists, you know, and I, I'm a big supporter of allowing them to provide a rendering. Um for, for uh an art piece or whatnot, and it gives them ability to earn some money as well. And so I do wanna kinda change maybe a bit on how we've been doing things where, you know, someone comes in and puts an applicant. But that, there be more planning behind it. Um to allow the art commissioners to have a little bit more authority. As to what they would like to see come through based on their um education and experience in art and culture.
I think, I see Yaya raising her hand.
Hello?
Hello.
I agree, I agree with Denise, I think we should. Make sure that our local artists, the Coachella Valley artists, not just Coachella, Coachella Valley artists are given first opportunity. And uh to paint some of those murals, um. And, and a- again, like Denise was saying, RFPs, well, uh the Arts Commission should have more authority. That you also have um a point different locations where murals or sculptures or anything else can be uh implemented. And I think we should take more control and RFPs are, is, is a big one for me.
All right, um I, I think uh you guys have a lot in your plate for your first meetings, uh look forward to uh hearing from, 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 from me. I think I, I made a motion, did we have a second, right?
We were waiting for you to, to start.
I'll get start roll, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
I.
Yes, oh, you're so quiet, okay, council member Virga?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarsa?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I.
We'll move forward now on item number, uh, twenty. And twenty is making findings on energy service contract and facility financing for energy efficiency projects.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will be presenting this item and then bringing up the vendor to finish it. I just wanted to give you a little background prior to this uh, project. This project is about a year and a half into making and I wanted to give uh, everybody an opportunity to get that background. You know, when we presented this item to the council about a year and a half ago, we kind of demonstrated that we're spending about a one point five million dollars in utility bills for our facilities through our enterprise funds and streetlights, sanitary plant. And uh, you know, and we talked about the benefits of, uh, you know, doing energy efficient programs uh, that would help uh, the uh, the area in regards to environmental and economic benefits. You know, they would reduce energy costs, uh, do some job creation, improve indoor air quality and productivity, demonstrate leadership. Um, and then we did, we, we talked about the government code forty-two seventeen, which allows the city to forego uh, the low bid process that we're, we're, we're all public agencies have to do to procure construction projects. And uh, so we decided to utilize this uh, this uh, government code to move forward with looking at different vendors and possibilities of just expediting the process. And and there were some benefits to it and obviously there were some disadvantages to it as well. Um, on March twenty-third, uh, twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry, it's twenty-twenty-two, the city council directed staff to engage energy solution companies via government code forty-two seventeen. Uh, so they can provide energy analysis, uh, facility improvement measures, uh, provide some options and design alternatives. Uh, create a cash flow to demonstrate the savings that we're getting, how much energy we're producing with, uh, you know, solar uh, cost analysis, cost savings, and then the uh, then how the implementation process would look like moving forward. Uh, staff worked about a year and a half, uh, we looked at three different vendors and we decided to move forward with Alliance Building Solutions, Inc. Uh, during this time, I would like to call up Jake Torres to uh, do the presentation.
Uh, good evening, members of the council, Mayor Hernandez. Um, like Gabe had mentioned, um, it's actually been a little closer to two years that we've been uh, at this, working uh, very closely with staff between facility staff, public works, and city manager uh, to ensure that every component of this project was able to meet all of the various capital infrastructure and facility related projects throughout the city. Um, and just to kind of touch on the fact that generally with the approach to projects, I like Gabe had mentioned. Uh, the main approach here is to work with the city and be able to help address facility maintenance needs along with capital infrastructure needs to where the actual realized energy savings can fully fund the projects over time. So throughout this whole entire process, the whole goal was to find uh, various measures throughout city facilities and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, to be able to complete these projects in a budget neutral dynamic, so that no money is actually taken out of the general fund and it's all funded to a self-funding model. Um, so to go and get into this, this first slide is going to be going over the current energy costs, I gave you a slide a little bit earlier that mentioned this. Um, about one point one million holistically throughout every single year, you're spending roughly on utility bills. Um, generally, when we look at these types of graphs, we try to focus on the larger uh, energy consumers. So as you can see, the wastewater treatment plant, city hall and the citywide street lights are three of the uh, larger consumers. And that's where a lot of the uh, the work actually is going to be focused on specifically to the wastewater treatment plant. Sorry. I should be good with technology. Um, okay, so this slide is going to be the categorical representation of all of the recommended scope of work that's being proposed here today. Um, so on the left side, you can see here, these are going to be the various city facilities. And on the top columns, you're going to see the different categoricals of scope measures, um, they're being recommended. Um, as we go through the presentation, we'll go to a little bit more detail on each of these various measures. Um, so the first one, lighting, um, so we're looking at interior, exterior and citywide street lighting. Um, this is essentially going to be capping off everything that currently hasn't been already retrofitted to LED. Um, so these are going to come with seventy-five thousand burn hours, um, five-year warranties. And generally on this, we'll do about a thirty-five thousand, uh, thirty-five hundred Kelvin for interior, which is going to be a softer light. Uh, reduces sensitivity to eye, we'll make sure to sit down with staff and customize that. If there's any issues with staff, we can make sure to accommodate those. And then generally for the exterior, we'll do about five thousand Kelvin, will be that brighter kind of bluish tint. Um, you can see the three sites here for interior is going to be Bagduma Park, Bagduma Community Center and Public Works Building. Uh, for exterior, same thing, Bagduma Park, Rancho Las Flores Park and Public Works Building. Um, these are some of the images for some of the existing uh, lights and fixtures here, and then some of the newer uh, retrofitted measures on the right-hand side. Um, the street lighting portion is going to be a little over about two thousand of the city-owned streetlights that are going to be retrofitted from high-pressure sodium to stated their LED. Um, the stated their LED are going to have about four times longer the useful life. So it's going to greatly reduce the amount of operational maintenance and repair costs that are going to be, you know, staff is currently doing right now. Um, and on top of that, there is also going to be another dynamic and we'll show you some pictures on the next slide of a potential of a reduction in theft and anything else that has to do with crime, right? Because as you see in this next slide.
Real quick, take on on exterior lighting. Um, there, you mentioned uh, city-owned lights, there are some, in some of the older communities in Coachella, uh, their ID-owned lights. Would, are are you also, you know, I I know it's not part of the city, but but i- is, were you also re- retro those, uh, be replaced those too?
So for the ID-owned, um, that's not currently in the scope of work. However, again, being a design build process, there's a lot of flexibility. So once we get to that portion and we sit down with staff, if there's some additional outreach, we could use the ID. Or if there's any scenarios where there currently isn't lighting, that uh, staff would like to actually install brand-new construction lighting. That's also a conversation that we could have, I'm going to accommodate that. Yeah, of course. So again, like I said, this is some of the before and after pictures, you can see a major difference before and after, a lot brighter, a lot more visibility. And then this is some of the differences between the high-pressure sodium and the LEDs as well. Um, one of the nice slides that gave you select, uh, looking at the annual kilowatt saving. So you're looking at about almost six hundred thousand kilowatt-hours of savings every single year, um, just from the streetlights being replaced alone.
And just to bring that in perspective, that's five hundred and ninety-four megawatts that we're putting back into the grid, kind of doing AD's job for them.
Um, so this slide is actually really cool, um, this is something that we've been doing with a lot of cities, we've been working with. In kind of the attempt to increase the aesthetics, right, of a downtown area. This is going to be um, the kind of preliminary rendering of Sixth Street, um, to do some decorative lighting upgrades. Um, obviously, we're still working on kind of finalizing this design and this is kind of currently, um, what we've come up with. On this next slide, HVAC and mechanical, um, so there's going to be a couple units being replaced here at this, uh, over at the Civic Center. Um, generally, when we look at HVAC, there's a couple of different things we'll look at, uh, for consideration of replacement. Um, number one is current age and condition, uh, number two is generally staff feedback. So if staff says, hey, you know what, this is a little bit of a newer unit, it's been giving us headaches, we'll replace that. Um, the third is going to be ashtray level standards, which is essentially the R and D, um, firm in the HVAC and the mechanical industry as well. On the pumping, so we're going to be doing some pumping, VFD upgrades, uh, with controls at Bagduma Park. Um, this is essentially going to reduce, um, excess run hours and reduce the overall energy consumption with pumps. To, instead of it running twenty-four seven, you'll now have a control system that we're able to turn it off and on based on what the current energy demands are throughout the day. Um, so this ne- next couple of slides are going to be the wastewater treatment measures. Um, and one of the nice things to this process, we've actually a strategic wastewater partner, um, due tech engineering. They're actually, um, an existing partner with the city of Coachella and are very, very familiar with the plan already. So there is that familiarity and continuity, um, through, you know, the different measures that we're going to be recommending for upgrades. Um, so the main kind of approach here, there's two separate plant ties with two separate treatment trains within the same facility. Um, so the whole approach is to consolidate that to one treatment process, which is going to significantly reduce, um, energy consumption, make a lot more of uh, energy efficient dynamic. We're going to do uh, maintenance and repairs that are being, um, currently done as we speak along with reducing a substantial labor cost for essentially having to have two separate operations that are duplicated. Um, so these next couple of slides, we'll just kind of go into some of the highlights, some of those different upgrades. Uh, as you can see on the right-hand side, it's a little, little bit smaller, that's kind of the aerial view, um, with some of the different, um, recommendations that we're going to do, kind of drawn out there. Um, and again, to essentially retire the existing package plant and add a third oxidation ditch. Um, so we're going to realize substantial energy savings from not having to operate the pumps twenty-four seven um, along with substantial labor savings as well, without having essentially maintaining two separate systems simultaneously. Um, these are just some images of the current oxidation dishes. Um, and if you go to that last slide, you can see where the new ones are going to be going as well. Um, this is kind of showing a little bit more about the uh, retiring the package plan, just looking at three hundred twenty-five horsepower blowers um, that have been deemed inefficient due to uh, the VFDs essentially being a little bit more ineffective. Um, so being able to do this again is going to greatly, greatly reduce energy consumption. Um, and as you see on the next, uh, next or the one after slide, we'll, we'll see the amount of offset that we're going to be able to realize through all these measures, which is going to be pretty substantial. Um, and this last one is going to be the dewatering measure, um, essentially, we're going to be able to install a belt press at the plant um, which is going to eliminate, um, about eight drying beds, which is going to reduce, um, a considerable amount of labor, uh, time and labor savings as well. Um, and these are just some of the images of the drying bench for the dewatering cycle for the sludge. Um, so that's that part for the wastewater, so there's going to be the controls, um, so we have three sites that we're going to be installing a wireless globally uh, grahamble thermostats. Um, usually, facility staff members love this part of the project because it's going to allow them to have remote access um, to the control system and their EMS and essentially allow them to go in, uh, manage set points, turn the systems on and off. They could be, um, you know, at their house, sitting down on a Saturday, login via, you know, iPhone, tablet, smartphone um, and actually be able to control the system, which is really nice, allowing that off-site management and control. Um, this is going to be the renewable slides, we're looking at, um, solar at two different sites. Um, one of the sites we're going to be looking at, uh, two different EV chargers would might help with versus uh, Tesla initiative a little earlier, um, we're looking at a total of about five hundred eighty-nine kilowatts between a carport and a ground mount as well. Um, so this is going to be the layout for the Civic Center, we're looking at about seventy-two kilowatts. Um, two separate carport shade structures, so now, um, staff or anyone in the public that's going to be visiting will have shade. As we all know, it doesn't get too hot out here. Um, it's going to be including two different EV chargers, uh, with a total of four different charging points, uh, which would be level two chargers. Um, and the estimated production for this specific system is going to be about a hundred and thirty-five thousand kilowatt-hours. Um, this next slide is going up the ground mount system at the wastewater treatment center. Um, so this is going to be a big piece, uh, for the overall offset of the energy consumption that's currently at the wastewater treatment center. About five hundred kilowatt-hours, uh, five hundred sixty kilowatt system. And the production is going to be over a million kilowatt-hours a year. And obviously, you could remember from the last slide with the energy consumption, with the wastewater being the highest consumer. This is going to offset almost about ninety percent of the total, uh, consumption from the wastewater treatment plant. So you're going to see a major, major reduction in total utility costs throughout the entire city. Um, this is a little overview, which is about some of the project benefits, um, essentially just some of the main takeaways uh, and benefits to the project and be able to, um, actually install and realize all these different variables. Um, and on the right side are some of the, kind of like Gabe had mentioned earlier, some of the environmental attributes. Um, environmental sustainability that will be realized for the installation of a sewer system. Um, this last slide is just essentially the project overview, um, showing the total project amount, total project savings with the estimated year-one savings. Um, so we always stress throughout this process, again, kind of gave mention the forty-two seventeen procurement. Um, the whole kind of government code statute essentially says that if you can put a, a project together that will realize energy savings to the extent of fully paid for the project, within the useful life of the equipment, you're allowed to essentially use that statute to put through the project. So you can see, obviously, um, we're well over the fifteen million and after the equipment's actually paid for, you now have cash flow, uh, positive surplus to your bottom line every single year, which is one of the main things that we have worked on. Um, especially with the financing to ensure that it was going to be a, a fiscally sound investment for the city. Um, so if there's any questions, I'll go and take them.
Any questions?
Also wanted to give a shout out to Bill and Zach from BBK, because they really beat these guys up for the last year and a half. And, you know, they went through the agreements, the scope, you know, and found some savings, uh, and they did a real good job making sure this project was vetted very clearly. And without them, they, they, this project wouldn't have come to this, uh, this point, so I think I like taking both of them.
Any questions?
So the, at the end, Bill, in money-wise, and I'm going to talk dollars, right? It'll be twelve million, uh, one hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty, hundred at what would be the total, like, um, net gain because of the savings, right? If I'm reading it right, do you want to make sure I'm reading that?
What they're saying is that the, if based upon what the manufacturer says, that things are going to operate with. And then they also came in and took all our ID bills and vetted that based upon what we're spending at each site. So yes, a twenty-two million dollar savings. We actually have done a little better than that, we've taken some of the stuff out that was in the original scope and and reduced that. We're also looking at doing our own financing, um, their financing was a little higher than what we were expecting. And so we're going to, um, go procure additional financing that, there's no premium if we pay it off early. Um, we've vetted that with the, the attorney and with Gabe and, uh, with our fiscal consultant, uh, Urban Futures. Um, with everything that's before you, I wanted to get to a point, you know, I've always done it before in the past, we'll continue to do it so long as I serve you. Um, we want to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we can and that is fiscally sound and this is at this point. So I I feel comfortable with recommending moving forward with this.
Any questions? Nobody wants to talk about the oxidation ditch? No, but I, I'm, thank, thank you for putting this.
We have our wastewater expert in case of anything, that's super technical, but.
So I, I did initially have a lot of concerns. And I was able to talk to both the finance, uh, director and the public works director, which obviously one sees all the numbers and the others out in the ground seeing what's everything that's happening. And so it gave, it gave me a better understanding, um, because one of the questions I was saying, okay, well, if it's fifteen million, you know, the project savings is thirty-seven million. And then how are we to ensure that it's actually thirty-seven million? You know, when we're talking about changes in the next twenty years, I mean, anything could be of an impact in five years and other crises. Infrastructure changing or whatnot. So I get that perhaps thirty, for me, thirty-seven million, saying it's going to be thirty-seven minutes or the savings we're going to get, I think it's hard to exactly say that that's the money that we're going to get in return, yes. But, um, they shared with me that there is a cap of energy savings that must be met every year.
Yeah.
And that's what gave me the comfort of maybe not knowing exactly how much we're going to get back in the millions over the twenty years in energy savings, but that annually there is a cap of what energy savings we should be having. And I said, well, what if, you know, year four, we don't meet that cap? Well, then obviously we would evaluate, come back and see what's, what's happening. Um, but they, they both supported this, um, shared their comments and I'm, I'm in support of it just because based of their experience and education that they provided me. I seen, um, Maritza smiling when it, when it showed the remote control.
Yeah.
You know, because she always had to send somebody go turn off this stuff or turn it on.
Yeah.
So, um, that makes me much more comfortable.
Motion to approve the, here it is. Trying to read the right language.
It's uh, item number twenty?
Yes, I may, um, motion to approve findings on the energy service contract, facility financing for energy project.
A little second. Motion, there's a second, any other questions? Hey then, Vanessa, we're welcome.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
I.
Councilmember Virgen?
I.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I, we'll move forward on item number twenty-one, this is an execution of the eleventh amendment memorandum of understanding between the city and the Coachella and the sports leagues.
Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, um, today's, uh, MOU amendment, um, is the, this is a document that's been a living document for over a decade. Um, this slide is really just to give you kind of a quick snapshot of how many times we've amended it, this is the eleventh amendment. It really changes with the needs of the leagues and, um, the availability of the facilities that we have. So as we've grown the parks, we've grown, um, we've amended the MOU to reflect that and the changes. Um, the change that's before the council this evening is we discussed this change with both soccer leagues and both soccer leagues are supportive of this change. And it would be a change to when we close the soccer fields. And currently, we close our soccer fields for maintenance for a three-month period from August first to October thirty-first. And during those twelve weeks, we spend the first six weeks, um, basically installing new sod in all the wear pattern areas. Primarily the center of the field and the goalie areas are probably the highest, um, the highest needs. And then we spend the second six weeks, um, really overseeding and putting topsoil, um, to prepare the, the fields for winter grass. Um, we have noticed that last Um, we have noticed that last year, we definitely are anticipating that this year we're going to have a longer summer. And what that does is it doesn't allow the winter seed to germinate very well based on the current schedule. So um we spread the seed in the last part of September and it doesn't really pop as well as it would if we can overseed a little later in the year. This this fits really well with soccer's request um as they participate in Costa tournament play. And that tournament occurs basically mid-September to mid-November. So and in conversations um with them, we are recommending changing the soccer maintenance period um from what you see on the left of that screen to what you see on the right, which would be still closing it for a total of three months. But doing six month, six weeks from August first to mid-September and then opening them back up for about two months and then closing them from November twentieth to January ninth. So the overseeding will happen in the November timeframe and the repair will happen in August. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
So just just I'm curious about the maintenance schedule. So last year, and it was it was by law that we were required to take a certain amount.
That take point oh eight percent of our per capita population um based on S B thirteen eighty-three of mulch. We have to procure that much.
So we have to, we so we did it. And then and then what we did, our strategy was to put it over the field.
We put it over all our turf areas. Um, and it was very successful. It also adds nutrients to it.
So it was it was uh, I walk the parks every morning. I see you up and see your crew up. Anyways, um, there were some areas that was very successful. And then there was one area where we we went first and then we overseeded. And then the grass didn't grow really well. So I've just lessons learned. I mean, in terms of what we're applying and what we're doing. But I think overall, it actually added like it it made the field look really good.
It improves the soil quality. I I agree with you, mayor. And so that's why we're also looking to do that process later in the year. Um, with the with the right gla- grass seed as opposed to doing it during the first six weeks, which is, I think, when we did it.
The only the other, the other thing I would add is that it's important to also around the tree bases too, because the trees they they tend to get very uh
Dense.
They just get hot like, well, well, I mean, and it's it it just adds the motion fertilizer, et cetera. So just an observation. And then and then lastly I got a call and text and others have gotten calls and texts, I'm sure. Does this M O U also include the lease of the Arntech area?
No, the lease for the Arntech area is a separate document run separately. This is only for city parks. Really, it's just Bagduma and Las Flores.
Yeah, okay.
Because there are two sports parks.
So that lease is is separate, but it's them as the the leagues taking on full responsibility of that and having exclusive use.
Correct. We do no maintenance on the that property. We have leased it from Armtech um to allow the leagues to then sublease it from us because Armtech has requested that we stay involved. Because in long time history, um, when they were, when we were not involved, the leagues uh really defaulted on their responsibility to maintain that space. So um it is an eleven acre parcel that is really divided down the middle and half of it is managed and maintained and utilities are paid by one league and the other is done by the other league.
So that's them and they there's no, they can do whatever they want on that.
They program it as they need to. It is identified for, you know, for soccer, sports play. But um they they manage and program and schedule their uses.
That's important.
I uh since you mentioned it, I watched a a parks and right commission a a few months ago and I know I saw that there was a, you know, concern about the billing. Are we up to date now with other people, you know, the leagues that said they're going to make a payment plan? Are we are we up to date there or are we or?
Both have entered into a payment plan and to my knowledge that neither has defaulted. They have been making their payments um on time. So default of that would then um bring us back to the commission and bring us back to the council to discuss that because that would be a default of that lease arrangement.
Okay.
And and by the way, it is important that this council know because it's something that I discovered that the city offset some of the water cost to the tune of and it was like forty-two thousand dollars. And that never came to us as a council. And so that that to me is just it's concerning because it's like, how did that happen? And and why did it happen? And why are, if they entered into a private, that they have a sole use of a property? And they're in control of how much they water and they can, they can lease it, they can rent it, they can make money, et cetera. Why do our taxpayers now? Like, why are we making that payment? And so that to me is just something that's that needs to be further talked about. And and avoided in the future. And this council should know like what what's going on there. Um, but at the end of the day, with respect to all the leagues and how we're using or how they're using our fields. It's free. It's free. And we've 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 augmented that budget basically to provide zero-dollar sports fee use on our fields.
And lighting.
And lighting and lighting. And I think that is a huge it just, it says a lot about us as a council where we believe prevention in terms of public safety, like that's a good use there because we have a lot of people that are using these fields. Adults too, and it's a, it's very preventative and it's and we're not charging sports leagues that we know, by the way, are not composed of just residents of Coachella, but are composed of a lot of people from a lot of other cities. And for our use, it's free. And I think that's very good. It just, it just shows where our principles are. Like where where we really, where we value things. So I I I I I'm okay with this. This is fifteen.
Right. So for some of these um patches that we have out there, um, these dry patches on the parks. Um, what is something that we can do um to water it? And I know it's difficult, you know, because sometimes you don't have sprinkling nearby. It's not as easy as some people think it is. Uh, we also have um patches or I'll say holes, you know, in the ground um that once they're packed in, you know, with dirt and grass, it sinks again. And so, you know, how do we address some of these things that we see out in the fields?
So some of them are visible, some of them are not as visible. So we do rely on that collaborative with the soccer leagues and we meet with them almost every month.
Yeah.
So that's part of our meetings is for them to give us feedback on areas that need some assistance. Uh, we currently got feedback that and we're putting sand in some of those on, you know, pasture areas. Um, on, for example, at Bagduma Field One was requested. The challenge with some of the dry areas is that if we increase watering, then the areas at this point in the season, which is kind of the end of the season, and we have more wear pattern areas. So then we end up creating mud in the areas that don't have grass. So that's the constant balance that me and my staff are challenged with is that if we increase watering, then the areas that are bare are going to have mud, honestly, essentially. And we could put sand there, but there's no grass. So all that happens is as the goalie is in that gold pit area, a goalie area, they're, you know, they're doing their cleat thing and they're moving the sand back out. And now they're in, there's more sand and it's not compact. So you're going to have more mud situations. So we're trying to balance that, but really the um, the effort here is to ensure that we we recapture that maintenance period so we can have a better turf.
Yeah, that makes.
And ensure that we can give it rest.
And it is incredibly challenging. And I'm out there constantly telling them, it's not.
Because they're they're on the field every day. So I don't have a day that I can really beef up the watering without impacting play the next day. That's the struggle, especially as we have a hundred and twenty degrees heat. So.
And then we do get these, like you said, these areas where we have that sitting water. And then we have all these mosquitoes there.
We will continue to monitor that. Um, we do walk the fields weekly. Um, and we do meet with the leagues every every month so that we can have that collaborative feedback back and forth.
Yeah. Bill, how much money have we put out um to pay water bills? How much city money have we used to put to pay for water bills? Yeah.
You know, I I became aware of it when I came back and I had questions too, because it didn't make sense to me either. And it won't happen again. Um, just to uh clarify that, those those bills were paid by that grant that we got, I think. So we got everything that was delinquent that thirty-four thousand.
But that was intended for houses.
But it would, everything qualified. So we just got our delinquent bills added, asked for that lump sum and they gave it to us and we paid.
Yeah, but that's that's the money that could have went to our residents that actually own homes or that.
But I think Stephen's point is is yes, but but we shouldn't like, like, you're right. But but we shouldn't like, you know, like, we already give for free and and then that money for the ARPA funding. You know, we could have excluded it from this forty thousand dollars to something else. And it was excluded in the ARPA funds, but since we got this other grant, that money went back. Yeah, so 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 I I think you're you're right. It was used for that. I think what you're saying is it it could have been not used for that. Right. Had 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 the league's been responsible.
Yeah, because it's it's and you, what what happened is that you, we took the one, one single user who has a private, was a private use was a beneficiary of a forty thousand dollar grant.
Where it could went to a couple hundred homes.
It could have went in the average, the average resident that qualified and were delinquent were maybe given fifty to a hundred and twenty bucks. And one user that has a private use was giving forty thousand dollars. And who made that decision? Why was that made? And so you enter into an agreement to operate these fields, understanding that you have full control over the the water, the maintenance, the use. To me, that's that's not very, that's not right. And 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 so that's why I'm asking like.
It it will be vetted and that will not happen again.
And so and then also, um, Gabriel, some of that funding that was kicked down from the state, and I think every city got some of that money to pay water bills. Was it also afforded to businesses?
It was uh open to everybody, businesses, uh nonprofits, residential homes. So they just, you know, you were able to submit uh whatever amount you needed to stay and they they gave you that.
And I just want to, I and I just, I want to get a better understanding of what the grant was and who it went to. Uh, so some of the beneficiaries of the of the of the estate money that was kicked down.
That's true, yeah.
Also, and then did some of it, well, I obviously some of it also went to then private businesses as well.
Water agencies needed to apply for that money. Um, I believe that, and this was again a while, a while back ago, so I'm trying to remember, but uh we did provide a roster of 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 unpaid water bills that then totaled the amount that was requested. Um, I believe we received from the state uh water board about two hundred and fifty thousand uh based on those bills that 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 we were able to present. There was a different, there was a different uh program that uh the city was was utilizing to pay for for other bills and and that money came through the ARPA funding that was given to the county. And so the county was administering their own kind of uh program to pay off uh water bills. And I believe that that particular uh uh funding was the one that was that was open to um non-residential accounts. Uh, I I'd have to go back to try to pull the 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 roster that we gave to the state that amounted to the two hundred and fifty thousand to give you a better answer whether that was all uh residential accounts or whether that also included because of non-residential accounts.
And I say this because it's important to know what the grant is, what it allows, who did it cover? Were there any, I know that you guys had the list of all the homeowners that were behind on their water bill. Was there any homeowner that did not get their water bill that was outstanding not paid?
Uh, I there, the way the grant, the way I recall it again, it's, but I'd have to go back to the details of it. But when the grant opened up, the uh the state had very specific uh uh range, a range of of they they rolled out these funds even after almost the the pandemic was almost over. So they, so they put a timeframe and they said, if you could, if you accumulated a bill between these months, then that's, then that's what the grant's going to cover. Your bill could have been a bill that was uh even higher, but you would have only qualified for a portion of that because of the parameters of the months. So let's assume that your outstanding bill was five hundred dollars, but what was qualified because of the months might have only been two hundred dollars.
So.
It didn't cover the totality of the outstanding debt.
So I I think that's where I wanted to get, because from what I recall is that, and I remember you guys coming forward and talking about, you know, the funding and stuff. And so you're saying that there was a timeframe. Within that timeframe, I'm pretty sure that in the in the payment department, the water department, they pulled all the outstanding water bills that were behind during that timeframe. And then you use all that outstanding money, whether it was businesses, whether it was homeowners. And then you submitted that to the state and it all got approved.
Yes, we had to sub, uh, we had to submit um evidence of of the money that we were requesting that fell within those months. I don't have an answer for you now, whether that included more than non-residential accounts or whether whether it was only residential accounts. I'd have to go back and look at the roster.
Yeah, we should look at it because.
That homeowners, I'm sorry, um, that homeowners, that was there a bill, a homeowner bill that was not paid for during that time? And that I guess, you know, that's something maybe that we can.
We we tried to embed all of it in in that um. I I'd have to go back to to see if there was a cap. Uh, but but what I recall was that we gave a roster of everything that we had in our system and that's what we submit.
Yours, right now, it sounds like you're saying the roster was less than two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand outstanding debt.
Yeah, it was, we only got like two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, no, we got an amount of of that was the allocation, but what our residents old in outstanding debt was greater, in my opinion, than the two hundred and fifty thousand that we were awarded. And you're talking about a league with private interests and and private, you know, that got one-fifth of that amount that to me is is sounds like just like insider moves here. Somebody knew the room, the game, and it's not right. I say that because just recently, how many delinquency notices have we have we sent out uh that, you know, that are people are now getting their delinquency notices that if you don't pay your bill, uh, you you you're going to get disconnected. Furthermore, what's happening is you have the same league that's contacting all of the council members and is now asking us to provide a same incentive or the same two hundred fifty thousand dollars to waive what they already ran up. I don't believe that's right. I don't believe that 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 the policy or that decision that was made to waive, to give them that incentive over our residents and then for them to ask again is proper and it's not right. And at the same time, you know, we're going, our residents now are being uh shut off. And there is no more programs to offer them assistance. So it's it's, we're doing enough for them. And if they enter into these programs where they want to take these the these the we charge them zero on the public use, but on the private use, they they want their cake, they want to eat it too, and then they want frosting and then the other cherries too. That's not over our residents. It's not right. It's not right. And and so there there's a, there's something that we need to talk about. You're hearing it a little bit right now and we'll continue this conversation.
I could share the roster with you. You'd like me to pull it?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have a a memorandum of understanding between the city and the leagues. It it is a, and this is again only on our portion and what we control as a city. And I'll motion to approve this. For a second.
One second.
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Hi.
Council member Virgen?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez?
All right. Move forward on item number twenty-two. This is a doc resolution twenty-three twenty or twenty-three fifty-five authorized by the city manager to apply for and accept exec uh the T C C application. Selena?
Yes, good evening, mayor and uh council members. Selena Jimenez, Economic Development Director, again. Uh, the item before you is Coachella Prospera, which is uh the city of Coachella's uh T C C implementation round five uh fu- uh funding proposal request that we will make to the Strategic Growth Council. There we go. Are you guys able to see? And first I want to present our Coachella Prospera logo. Uh, as you can see here, we have a seashell with twelve lines and each line represents one of our partners. And also the seashell was selected because Coachella, as you all mi- might already know, is Ponchilla, which is the Spanish word for seashell. So we thought this would be a very befitting uh depiction of the logo for Coachella Prospera. And next, I wanna talk about our vision. Uh this is a vision statement that the community worked very hard in developing. And uh staff did provide guidance that S G C expects that the vision statement incorporates uh some of the. Strategies and plans that will be uh a part of uh Coachella Prospera's uh T C C round five proposal. And so the vision of Coachella Prospera is to create a more equitable and climate-resilient community through neighborhood planning. That supports climate change adaptation, the healthy development of children, the ability of older adults to age in place. And an overall sense of connectedness that benefits all residents. It means having access to public resources like recreational and wellness facilities, zero emission public transportation. Affordable housing, urban forests, and solar programs that help make homes more energy efficient, parks and open spaces. Infrastructure like sidewalks and bicycle trails that promote activity and mobility. And economic opportunities that increase wealth and prosperity. Uh the City of Coachella engaged in a very extensive community engagement process. When we developed the community engagement tracker, we saw that we had uh more than forty-plus sessions that we. Uh conducted across the span of two and a half years. Uh we had about four hundred and sixty-eight participants. Uh so each of these strategies, projects, and plans represent. Uh they they are the product of extensive community engagement that has been conducted across time. And this this uh stakeholder structure is Coachella's P C C framework. And I just wanna uh point out to council that staff did update the partnership agreement. Uh to reflect the stakeholder structure that includes the community member seat, the youth member seat. The working groups, the hubs, and advisory council to reflect the entire collaborative. Uh structure. And then we made other small edits that uh were mostly grammatical er- errors. Uh so as you can see here, we have the Strategic Growth C- Council at the very top. It will be the. Uh agency that disperses advanced payments. If the city requests that, up to twenty-five percent of the total. Grant request, and we are requesting twenty-nine point five million dollars. And so then we have our vision statement that essentially uh uh governs. Uh all the plans and projects that everyone will help us implement. And we have the City of Coachella as the lead agency and applicant. And so the City of Coachella will be the treasurer and fiscal agent. For Coachella Prospera. And we have our advisory council, community seats, and the youth seat. Oops, I'm sorry. Uh and so so together we will govern um our work, uh our T C C work. And as you probably have already heard, we have Chelsea Investment Corporation on board, uh Grid Alternatives. The Southern California Mountains Foundation, which houses the Urban Youth Conservation Corps. Uh we are incorporating Sunline Transit Transit Agency because we will install a prefab. Prefab uh bathroom at the uh transit hub. The LEAP Institute, Alianza Coachella Valley Desert Recreation District, the University of California Riverside, serving as their. Data collection partner, Bound Corporation, Conquy Design Initiative. And then again, our, we have our hubs and our working groups comprised of. Uh a city oversight working group, a community engagement working group, a workforce working group, and a displacement avoidance. Uh working group. So between all of us here, we will definitely implement, if awarded, an implementation grant. In the amount of twenty-nine point five million dollars. And this map here represents the project area and uh all the green that you see here, except for this other shade of green. Uh that represents tribal uh lands and uh but all this green here that you see that is part of Coachella Prospera. Uh is actually a qualifying factor for uh an implementation grant application because you must be. A disadvantaged community uh by measure of environment screen and A D fifteen fifty. And so the City of Coachella does meet that. Eligibility criteria. In addition, we previously were the recipients of a planning grant. And so that planning grant produced a planning document that identified all of the strategies that. Coachella Prospera is hoping to implement. Uh one of our strategies is affordable housing for senior citizens. Uh this project will feature fifty-three units. Uh and some commercial spaces fronting Sixth Street. Uh it will also feature a community room uh that at times could be used as a cooling center. And then we have rooftop rooftop solar that will be offered by Grid Alternative. They're going to install. Solar photovoltaic systems on approximately a hundred and fifty-five income-qualified households, uh single-family housing. Uh the project will also install solar for the proposed multifamily affordable housing apartment community that. Chelsea Investment Corporation and Pacific Southwest uh Community Development Corporation will. Uh construct through this opportunity if we're funded. We will also have a very robust urban greening strategy that will plant more than three hundred trees. Where uh right now, I think the tree count is about three hundred and fifteen trees. Uh we will be planting uh trees within the Coachella Prospera uh area. And so that will be like Shady Lane and Ninth Street, that little diamond-shaped property. Uh we'll get some trees there, we'll have some at the transit hub, uh uh as you know, there were not enough that were planted. We will also plant additional trees uh at the Fifth Street, the Dale that uh goes from the transit hub. We will also um include tree planting along Avenue fifty-two, I mean, uh the bicycle path that is between Avenue fifty-two and Avenue fifty-three. It's by that retention basin. Uh the new senior housing site will also plant trees, which Chelsea Investment Co- Corporation will uh plant. And we will also include she, a a tree canopy on Sixth Street from Date Avenue to Palm Avenue, which Chelsea will also um undertake. Uh and then Grayford Boulevard from Ninth Street to Avenue fifty-two on the west side. Uh also the Avenue fifty-three Tatla and Sierra Vista Park, or the trailhead of Sierra Vista, since it links up to C D Link. Uh we will also have a health equity and wellbeing uh strategy that includes park, open spaces, and recreation access. And through this uh project uh strategy, we will have. Um uh we will be doing different things to expand uh again recreational access. And so that'll include. Uh replacing the playground equipment at Caillaca Macho and Avenue fifty-three Tatla. Uh we will also uh plant some trees there, because as you notice. Uh whatever you do, you must plant some trees to kind of support the amenities that you wanna do. So at the Sierra Vista Trailhead, we're gonna plant uh just a few orchard trees, and then we're going to replace the bathroom. With a new prefab bathroom. At Dayton Park, we're going to uh rehabilitate the bank ramp ramp. Uh the quarter pipes and the mini ramp and the half pipe that are at the skate park section. At Veterans Park, we will install a splash pad. And at Bagduma Park, we'll have an outdoor fitness court and two swing sets. And then we'll have minor capital improvements that will be made to the Bagduma Community Center so that it serves as a wellness hub. Uh the Bagduma Community Center will feature uh this fitness court model. Uh that you see here, it has a shaped structure and then the outdoor fitness equipment that actually comes with an app. And other supportive uh elements that um help people. Um you know, get get a full day's worth of exercise here, and they don't have to pay any gym memberships, and it'll be shaded. Uh so the community wellness hub at Bagduma Park is supposed to serve as a trusted gathering place that will help connect. Uh every member of the community to essential programs, services, and spaces that advance health equity. Improve health outcomes and enhance quality of life. And so uh we're very excited about this uh feature with Desert Recreation District. And here's another enlarged uh image of what the fitness court could look like. And then we'll have a ride-sharing and mobility enhancement strategy that includes the seventeen Tesla Model Y's. And jobs for ride-sharing drivers. Uh the green Raiteros will. Uh implement this program with the LEAP Institute. And so. Uh here's a little picture of what the Model Y seven-passenger vehicle will look like. It's like an S U V. And they they are uh white with the black interiors, so that'll help with uh stains and and you know. Uh it it it'll uh help uh keep the car looking cleaner, I think, longer. And then we'll have some active transportation elements. We'll have seventy-five e-bikes, seventy-five e-scooters, and reduced fare vouchers for bound riders. Uh so Bound uh Corporation will be um uh. You know, implementing this strategy, and they will also feature this other exciting um feature that I'm gonna show you next. And it's the charging shelters. Uh so this shelter here is actually self-sustained. It includes Wi-Fi, wireless charging, a Bluetooth speaker, L E D lighting. It's fully programmable and it has U S B charging. So we intend to place some of these at the transit hub. Uh to help people um, you know, remain connected with their family members if they have to use the internet or send a text message. Uh they'll also feature bike lockers, and we're not gonna place um, we're gonna place these mostly actually at the transit hub. And so this will be really great because it'll help keep all the e-bikes uh uh in order, and it'll give people an opportunity to. Uh bring them back and hop on the bus and do uh, you know, mode shift, transportation mode shift. We will also have transformative plans, the Climate Adaptation Resiliency Plan, which the City of Coachella is responsible for. Uh we have the Community Engagement Plan, which Alianza Coachella Valley is going to activate. And then we have the Displacement Avoidance Plan, which K D I presented this evening, so you know what is going to be in that Displacement Avoidance Plan. And then we have a workforce development plan, and this one's very, very exciting because. The Center for Employment Training, who has a uh office here in our city with with classrooms and all the resources that. Students may need, is going to be the lead agency. And they're gonna feature green building construction skills. H V A C technician and green technology uh um course. Uh uh electrician uh career path, and then the business office administration for those that wish to pursue that. And we also have Grid Alternative that's going to um provide installation basics training. They'll have the Solar Corps uh fellowship, and they'll also have a Solar Futures High School program that they're going to be offering with. Uh C D Unified School District. And then we have the Urban Youth Conservation Corps, who will provide training in urban forestry and greening, because the U C C will be helping us. Uh plant trees. Uh so they're gonna have um a job to do, and and so that's great. And then they'll also uh assist us with energy audits or weatherization audits. Uh they're going to do zero waste and recycling, and then they're gonna do some conservation work uh for natural resource protection. And the program will include wraparound support services and a high school diploma program for core members who need it. And this concludes uh the presentation. Uh please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
No, uh I don't have questions, just comments. A great presentation. I also thought you did a great job in the community uh event um. Uh you know, you handled that very well, and um you know, community. And partners were, you know, present, um well-attended, and so that was great. So I just wanted to applaud uh for these efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh Selena. Just really quickly, um can you go over the timeline for this application? I know you mentioned it during um the gathering that we had with the community, but I think it'd be important for those that are listening. Um if they didn't get a chance to join, that they have that opportunity to know.
Yes, uh so this application is due on August first. And we will be notified of a site visit that will occur most likely around October, uh the end of September into October. And then S G C told me that uh they would make award recommendations in December. Uh so they definitely um are staying on schedule to make award um announcements in uh December.
Thank you. And then, Gabe, I know that we talked about this a couple of you and I when we have our one-on-ones, but. Um we, I had mentioned that area on Avenue fifty-four. Did we include this in the grant? Do we have a plan to to include it at all?
I planned to bring that in a separate item.
Okay. Okay.
That will address uh some entry points.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then just lastly for me, Selena, if you're able to share this presentation with us via email, that'd be really great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Selena, when is um, when is Sesaf Chavez gonna get some of those trees? You can get a little bit of love.
Uh Sesaf Chavez School or Sesaf Chavez Street?
Yes, the street.
Um well, we hope to actually uh propose that in uh with our urban greening application, uh because. There is urban greening in this application, but we ran out of budget um to include the Sesaf Chavez corridor. And so we uh intend on uh submitting that with uh. A an urban greening application. And also, the Urban Youth Conservation Corps has let Marissa and Gabriel know that. They do have uh about ninety-five trees that they wish to plant. And so so I'm hoping that between that partnership and maybe others that the mayor has told us about with I I D. And C VAG, we can plant uh more more trees. Uh because I think with the C VAG and I I D grant possibility, there might be. Uh we might get maybe two hundred and fifty trees. Uh so that, those are opportunities that are still in the works. And so I'm. Hoping that that does come to pass.
Yeah, I'm hoping that too. I know there's a lot of challenges there with the businesses, um but it does need quite a bit of love. And the Grateful Boulevard corridor is beautiful, but Sesaf Chavez Street remains uh the street that we receive most of the traffic. And so many residents and myself have mentioned, you know, the condition of Sesaf Chavez Street. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh just a good, how to grow, Selena, this is a uh try number two. And uh and so I know that we've got some good feedback from the first round. And we made the adjustments, uh particularly when it comes to the the displacement avoidance plan. Also, the health plan, the element within this. And so I, obviously, the the grant. Before was thirty-five. I think that the highest award we can get is, is it twenty-seven point three or four?
Twenty-nine point five.
Twenty-nine point five. So it's five left, but it's still worth the effort. Um. My hope is that we can take this plan and then also. Use it, or at least it's it's a, it's. It's structured to apply for federal funding that is now being available. And I know. Uh I believe, Dr. Figueroa, you were part of a conversation with with Congressman Reese. Where he talked about federal dollars being available. And if you look at the program. Uh the the Fed is 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 going or offering. It's very similar in the sense that they want a lot of community nonprofit engagement. And so we need to be able to use these structures to also go after other grants. And I think that what you establish here in terms of just the the collaboration. Is a good thing, and we need to continue to duplicate that. Um I will bring up the, and I brought this up in a small meeting that we had with staff. Um you know, we, I recently learned of, and and I actually see Councilmember Kitania here from Palm Desert. Of a heat action plan that uh the City of Phoenix is embarking on and embarked on. And even it potentially integrating that into this application would be great, but but if it's, if it can't be done. We should also go after those efforts on another uh application, but um. Uh just how to grow and and way to keep everybody together.
Thank you.
And 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 to the partners who perhaps are listening, thank you for re-engaging with us once again. Uh to to go after this. We don't get it. We don't know what we'll do, but if we get it, we'll we'll implement it. You know, and we'll have a good uh success. But so thank you. If there are any speaker cards or no other comments, I'll ask for a motion.
Um Selena, when are we gonna get you or some of our executive directors to have to speak at the League of Cities? I think, I think it's about time that the City of Coachella talks about, you know, some of these grants. Um that we're receiving. Um and I know there's many of you that make this happen. But I think it's about time that we start representing and sharing with everybody else, you know, what we have going on here.
Thank you, Selena. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll take role, Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitan?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
All right, move on now to we.
It is past eight o'clock. Do you want to?
Oh yeah, if we have a policy right at eight, where any public comments, we will take them. Uh anybody in the public would like to address the state council?
So this is going to be for non-agenda items?
No.
Is it for a non-agenda item? Okay, then we will call those up when the item comes up. Is there anybody on Zoom? Can you please raise your hand if you would like to speak for public comments on a non-agenda item, if you are on Zoom? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
Okay, we'll move on now to item number twenty-three. This is to authorize the use and purchase of the automated license plate reader technology. How you pronounce that? A A L P R? It's not like.
Alper.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to give a little background before I I handed over to Lieutenant Martinez on this item.
Vasquez. Lieutenant Vasquez.
I'm sorry. My bad, they just member uh uh. On March twenty, on March seventeen, twenty twenty-one, this item was already taken to the subcommittee, the building. Uh Code Enforcement Public Safety Subcommittee, and it was moved forward to City Council on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. During that time, staff uh presented an item to purchase sixty-five of these cameras and purchase a software system. City Council wanted to uh get more information and uh direct staff to return this item back to the Subcommittee. So on May thirtieth of this year, we met with Subcommittee and they decided to pr- provide three options, cost options. And bring it back to the City Council for discussion. During this time, I'd like to call Lieutenant Vasquez.
Lieutenant.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here this evening. Uh Lieutenant Manny Vasquez, representing Sheriff's Department. I like to look at this as an opportunity for the city to uh increase public safety and also the solvability of crimes. Uh as uh city manager, this is not for a time coming for council. Um and just hopefully uh this presentation will answer some questions and provide some more information on this. And what it is is it's automated license plate readers uh for the city of Coachella. Or Alper, if you want to provide that, pronounce it like. So uh what we have is uh what it is is uh this is uh provided for by a block. Uh public safety, uh camera safety, and it what it is, it's a license plate reader. And these cameras would be, as proposed, these cameras were placed uh at key intersections throughout the city. Now, what it does is it reads license plates and uh actually it actually documents. Vehicle description, it actually recognizes different vehicles and colors of those vehicles. So that's what's kind of unique to uh the block system. So the information it provides, it just scans license plates throughout the day. Okay, and what it does is it provides alerts to law enforcement. So if there's a wanted vehicle out there, the most common is a stolen vehicle. But it could be a wanted vehicle for a missing person. It could be a wanted vehicle for a felony felony suspect or felony vehicle, say in a robbery. Or homicide, whatever the case may be. So any kind of violent crime, anything like that, anything that's entered into the system as a wanted vehicle. It'll alert to that vehicle and provide uh the location of when that plate was scanned and the time from plate was scanned. So say it was at uh Caesar Chavez Avenue fifty-two, okay, it'll tell what direction that vehicle was going because whatever depending on what the camera position was. And that last location that that was at. Okay, so it provides that. That information to uh the law enforcement officers that are out there and they get an alert on the phone via email or via text. Now, um most people relate license plate readers to stolen vehicles and it is used by a bit for them. But what I like about this system, it's more importantly, it's it's a crime solver. Okay, it helps us to solve crimes that occur within the city. Now, everyone knows that uh we've been having a rash of crimes lately. And I'll get into that in a bit, but what does it do? Okay, real-time investigator. Okay, it's basically like I said, uh a fingerprint for the car. Doesn't provide photographs of the driver. Doesn't uh provide any detailed information about the driver or anything like that, just the license plate and the vehicle. That's it. That's the only information it provides. Okay, so uh. It's set up at fixed locations. These aren't bound into vehicles, so police cars, anything like that. It's actually at fixed locations, like I said, intersections. Uh no people, no facial recognition, no traffic enforcement. So it's not a red light camera. It's not a speeding camera. It's nothing like that. Okay, there's solar power, uh LTE enabled, so it draws power from the sun and uh it works off the cellular system. Okay, so where's the cameras gonna be deployed? I get that asked by a bit again. It's gonna be a major intersection. We have it. Depending on the amount of cameras uh approved that we uh we receive for the city will depend on where we want to put them. We want to put them in prime locations where receives a lot of traffic and has the most opportunity and most benefit. So normally at at an intersection, we require roughly four cameras to cover all directions and to get those license plates. And normally they're assigned or mounted to existing uh light fixtures, existing uh single lights. And rare occasions, they can be on a standalone pole, but we usually don't like to use that. We usually like to have it amounted to some kind of existing system already in place within the city. Okay, block is widely adopted in California. Now, this list is a bit outdated, pretty much from my research. And what I've been uh been told is that there are two cities within Riverside County that do not have a block system. Or any kind of like license plate reading system. Those two cities are currently in the City of Coachella and the City of Calamisa. Everyone else has adopted this, even the unincorporated areas of the county. So it seems the trend is that they're actually increasing the amount of cameras in those areas. I heard uh Calamisa is actually uh presenting uh proposing it to the City Council to adopt a system within their city. So pretty much every everybody within the valley and the Coachella Valley has a license plate readers. Okay, I wanted to list here a few of the success stories and these are all pretty current. These are all this year. Now, keep in mind, these are all out of areas primarily La Quinta. Because um it's the most adjacent city with Sheriff's Department that we contract with or they contract with us rather. And uh it's uh obviously pretty close in the adjacent city. So on February twenty-seventh of this year, elderly uh La Quinta man with dementia was reported missing after uh. Uh a missing medical appointment. They didn't return at home. Deputies entered his vehicle into the block system. A block alert led deputies to Harrison Street and sent Avenue seventy-four. Uh the man was located, reunited with his family. So again, it's the system that we can enter missing persons in. Uh high crimes that'll alert those officers and help locate where these vehicles are at and these people are at. So this demo is able to be returned to its home. In March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, twelve forty-five PM, a vehicle was reported stolen from uh La Quinta Service Center and entered into block. At three thirty PM, a block alert led Palm Desert deputies to Ramon Road and Date Palm, where the vehicle was located. Driver failed to yield, led deputies in pursuit, back to Bermuda Dunes, where the suspect surrendered and was arrested. Okay, March fourteenth, this year, a carjacking occurred in the city uh of La Quinta parking lot. Okay, public safety cameras were in place at the time in the City of La Quinta, but they were not license plate readers at the time. They are currently in license plate readers bar in place in La Quinta. So they have public safety cameras. Uh they were in use to obtain a stolen vehicle's license plate direction travel. That suspect carjacked, uh the suspect carjacked another vehicle, cameras on, a block alert the the Redlands PD to a second vehicle. And arrested the suspect. Further investigation the same evening led to the recovery of the La Quinta stolen vehicle. So we recovered property and we also recovered that the suspects took them in custody. In March fifteenth, at five AM, a vehicle was stolen from North La Quinta and entered into block. At six thirty AM, a block alert led La Quinta sent deputies to Avenue sixty-six and Highway eighty-six. Now, that's the unincorporated area of the county. Like I said, these are in place in the unincorporated areas. Where the vehicle was located, the suspect was arrested. Further investigation revealed the suspect had stolen another vehicle from La Quinta earlier this year. So a lot of these are repetitive violators. Now, some crime stats, and again, excuse me, because I can't bring that more with my with my glasses on. But I want to include some basic crime stats. Now, the first table here is uh the two forty-six, two forty-six threes. These are shootings which occur within the city. And there's a lot of concern because we do have quite a bit of shootings within the city. Now, I want you to keep in mind, these shootings that are listed here do not include assault with a deadly weapon or firearm. I purposely did not include that. These are just random shootings that occur. That get reported and many times that there's nobody injured, but there's people firing rounds indiscriminately within the city. So if you want to look at that, in twenty twenty-one, we had thirteen. Twenty twenty-two, we had nineteen. Year to date in twenty twenty-three, we have twenty-two. Okay, so that's a fourteen percent increase that we have in shootings. Okay, another diagram that I want to have in here or or uh statistic was uh burglaries. Okay, in twenty twenty-one, we had eighty-four. Twenty twenty-two, one twenty-four. In year to date, we have seventy-six. Okay, so that's increased forty-eight percent from twenty-one to twenty-two in just burglaries. And fortunately for stolen vehicles, it shows that there's a bit of a decrease from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Now, what's the reason behind that? I don't know whoever figured that out. Sometimes uh modern cars, a little harder to steal till they figure out how to get into them. Could be a lot of different things. Uh but I want you to pay attention to the recovered vehicles. In twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and nineteen recovered out of the two hundred and thirty-three. Eighty-eight recovered and twenty-two out of the two hundred and twelve. And year to date, we have a hundred and fifty-two vehicles that were stolen and thirty-three have been recovered. So again, this would assist in that also. Uh one other statistic, I went on wrongly statistic, but information I wanted to bring uh to the attention of the council is June twenty-seventh, about a month ago. We had a shooting that occurred in the city, and I think all of you are familiar with the incident. It involved a fifteen-year-old juvenile that was shot multiple times in his vehicle and ended up crashing into a fire fighter. That case is still unsolved as today. That juvenile, from my knowledge, is still in the hospital recovering and from my understanding has severe injuries. I'm confident that if this system was in place at that time, we would have had a viable suspect lead and most likely a suspect in custody. But because this system wasn't in place, we're going off of the old-fashioned way of doing investigations, which is very time-consuming. Costs a lot of money, a lot of time, for not only deputies but investigators and relies upon eyewitnesses. Okay, which many times people don't want to come forward. I I have complete confidence we'll solve this crime, but it's gonna take a lot longer than what would would have this sponsored system in place. Crime ranges. So with the block system, uh we're always trying to find a way to track the success rate. And it's kind of hard because uh uh if somebody is recovered coming through blocks, say it's a stolen vehicle, it's like I said, that's the most common. Um that is related back to a violent number where that vehicle was initially stolen. So we don't track actually block at this point. Block intervention for lack of better. So the crime rates, the best way to kind of look at that is the solvability of crime because it helps us to solve crimes. So if you want to look at the chart above, uh and this is for twenty twenty-one. And you have property crime uh within cities and then clear crime within those cities. So for the City of Coachella, you had seven hundred and twenty-two property crimes and thirty-three of those were solved. And which is a four point six percent, pretty dismal type of group. And if you look at it, it's actually one of the lower ratings through all those cities, Ferentia, La Quinta, Palm Desert, Ranch Mirage, Pito City, other hotspots, Palm Springs. So I provided three uh at the request of uh Safety Committee, I provided three options. The first option is for seventy cameras. Uh currently, uh prices increased. They used to be twenty-five hundred a camera. Uh they're currently three thousand a camera. So for seventy cameras, that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. They also have one-time installation fee, which is uh three hundred and fifty dollars. And that's twenty-four thousand five hundred for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the initial implementing of the system. Reoccurring cost in the city would be two hundred and ten. Now, option two is obviously a reduction in cameras, fifty block cameras and the price reduced from them. Reoccurring price for that would be a hundred and fifty thousand. Total cost initially would be a hundred and sixty-seven five hundred. And the third option is thirty block cameras and that goes with recurring fee of ninety thousand and then a total cost of a hundred thousand five hundred. Now, these are the options I've provided, but again, these can be modified. It depends what the city wants. Also, you have to keep in mind that with this system. It goes by year by year. So if the city decides to try this system out. And two years from now, they say, you know what, it's not working. We don't want to put forth money anymore. Uh we don't see really benefit in it. You cancel basically subscription and go on your way. Okay, so it's not anything that you have to look at. You can look at with that potential, you know, if you want to just continue use, you can just continue use. Or which many cities are, they're actually increasing the amount of cameras that they have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh also, I believe uh Lieutenant Annie Martinez may be on the line also. Uh the reason why I had him come and zoom in is he's actually now, well, previously he was the representative for the City of Coachella with Sheriff's Department. I think I'll be aware of that. But uh he is currently uh works for or assigned to the City of La Quinta. And he is actually the administrator for the Sheriff's Department for the block system. And he was the one that initially proposed this system to the City of Coachella a few years back. And uh he's the one that basically governs it for the City of Porterville Sheriff's Department.
Understood.
Um just to note, Mister Mayor and City Council staff uh recommended uh an item and we were in the around the option number one. Which is the purchase of the seventy cameras for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars and that would come from the city's general fund. And after that would be a two hundred and ten thousand dollar uh annual real current uh subscription to that cost, which is also cheaper than a deputy. If you recall, when we tried to get a traffic deputy, they're around three hundred and something thousand. So this is definitely cheaper than getting another officer.
Traffic?
We uh about last fiscal, we came back with two uh purple cost proposals from the sheriffs to to traffic uh enforcement officers and there were about three something each.
About three hundred and eighty thousand dollars and then the purchase of the Mopet itself.
But I'm trying to understand the comparison if this isn't a.
Well, it's it's not, but uh I'm saying that it's cheaper than getting a a deputy in general to enforce uh uh, you know, reduce crime in the city.
Is there anyone in the public that'd like to address the City Councilman?
Yes, we have um Karina Quintanilla.
Karina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council for the community who does not know me. My name is Karina Quintanilla. I am Mayor Protem of the City of Palm Desert. And I wanted to share with you our experiences in Palm Desert. And originally, when this came before the council, I was the lone no vote. I had many concerns, I had many questions and I was very unsure all around. Since that came around, I have voted yes on the the second time it came around in which we increased the number of cameras. One of the original concerns I had was in regards to the ACLU and if this would be relative to any um profiling. But it is my opinion that you're no longer now going to stop every black car, maybe a Honda, maybe uh. Something else and you're going to pull over a lot of unnecessary individuals as you're looking for a specific license plate. And they also have a regulation over who is allowed to access this information with regular audits. And again, this is all coming from our lieutenant Willison in Palm Desert, that they um have systematic audits of who has access to it. Who's viewing it and anybody with unauthorized access um or improper access is removed from that. Echoing a lot of what was already mentioned, it is assisted in amber alerts and silver alerts. And when we had the um unfortunate shootout in our mall, we were able to get a suspect within fifteen minutes. That was arrested and within a matter of an hour or two, they had also identified the. Individuals in the other vehicle that had been involved in that shooting in Desert Hot Springs. So this is allowing for quick collaboration across agencies that resulted in a suspect or apprehension. There was an incident with a major robbery with significant physical assault. Um this person needed substantial medical treatment and when they were able to say, I saw a green. Four-door sedan, they were able to narrow into what had gone on in that area. Since there were not a lot of green four-door sedans that went along that strip of El Casao. At roughly that interval, when the robbery happened, they were able to not only get information and track down that vehicle. But it then related into a three-county. Cool collaboration that resulted in finally apprehending a ring of burglary suspects that were coordinated and finally arrested in LA County. I was very surprised to find that since the time that we had even gone through the first round, even before we approved the second round of of cameras. In the City of Palm Desert, there had been a recovery of a quarter million dollars in illegal drugs and illegal guns, including ghost guns, which we know is a substantial threat to public safety. In addition to a quarter million dollars in recovered vehicles and stolen property. This allows detectives to spend more time investigating the major crimes. And this also allows our community service officers to spend more time engaging in the community, serving um lesser bench warrants and other things that allow the efficacy. Of our law enforcement partners. We have placements uh near um. Uh Magnesia Falls, which leads to College of the Desert, our city hall, elementary school and middle school. So this allows us to protect our soft targets and assist should there be any problem. Additionally, um. There had been a potential felony murder issue in Temecula. They realized that the individual had ties to the Coachella Valley. Within ten minutes of arrival in the Coachella Valley, they had been. They realized that the individual had ties to the Coachella Valley, within ten minutes of arrival in the Coachella Valley, they had been apprehended. So thank you very much for your time and consideration on the program for um, automatic license plate readers. Thank you.
Other speaker?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? No, anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this item, if you can please raise your hand? There are none?
Okay, council. Any questions?
Well, you forgot to mention one, uh, Mr. Lieutenant Vekas, Vasquez, you just got one on Friday, where you use the sound flock for a DBTR.
I'm sorry.
It's locked to apprehend uh, someone that, you know, you sent us an email. Those reports you send, right, there was another one spot that you used.
Yeah, uh, this is actually used quite a bit, it's used actually on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, this one, this one actually happened in the city, right, and so it happened that that person ended up going somewhere where there was a camera.
Yeah, they they end up going someplace where there was a camera and we're able to get a read off of that and able to locate them. Um. It was brought up during the safety committee that, you know, hey, why do we need them within the city if all the cities and everybody around us have it? Well, many times when the crime is occurring within the city, uh, they don't leave the city. Especially the shootings that everybody's concerned of, they don't leave the city, they stay within the city. And you have to wait till that vehicle randomly leaves the city to get a, you know, a possible lead on it. And then again, like I said, the shooting that just happened last month. Um, I truly believe that if these, this system was in place. That vehicle would have been identified and would have given us a lead and I want to clarify that. Just because we get a read on a vehicle, say from, you know, uh, a potential suspect vehicle leaving the scene of a crime. Doesn't mean we automatically go arrest the driver or the registered owner of that vehicle. Investigation still has to be completed, this is a lead. This is a lead that we normally would not have. Besides maybe a generic vehicle description, a possible generic vehicle description. So it gives us a viable lead that we can follow up on. Of course, we have to standardize that lead and and through a further investigation, positive identification of of the suspect, things like that. But it gives us a lead that we don't know.
How how help me to understand the technology here, because. I, I, so they just say hypothetically. Block is up at uh, Caesar Chavez. And uh, it's, I imagine it's recording uh, all day.
It it doesn't record what it does in 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 the typical sense, everybody hears like a camera. And see if I can understand it, and again, uh, Lieutenant Martinez may have a better take on it, but it doesn't necessarily record. What it's doing is it's taking uh, license plate reads.
Of every.
And of of every car that goes through, so in the presentation, there was a a picture, if you want to back up a bit, let me see here. Uh, one of the first few pictures, let me take it. It'll show you what it actually snapshots. Oops. Right there. So that picture is what it actually takes, it takes the license plate and and it gets that vehicle and it's recording vehicle license plates and those vehicles. So that's all it takes, it's not video recording, it's not, it's not doing anything, that information is stored on on the cloud. And then that information automatically deletes after thirty days. So it's not retained permanently, it's not, it it's retained only for a period of thirty days and then it's it's written over.
But it's fair to say that it, it takes a picture of everybody's comings and goings.
It takes a picture of every vehicle that goes through that intersection.
Comes and goes, it just, and it has a record.
Yes, for thirty, for thirty days, yes.
Of everybody, irrespective of.
Yes, if you want to say it takes every license plate that goes through there, yes. But the deputies are not alerted to anything unless that vehicle is is wanted for something. Or if there's a, an actual crime that has occurred and we're trying to track down a potential suspect vehicle. And we have a tight timeframe of, you know, five minutes or we know when the crime occurred. They can make an inquiry into the system and say, okay, what, what green Toyota? You know, came through this intersection section at this time.
But if it's only recording the license plate, how would it know that it's?
And this, that's what the block system is unique to, it does recognize vehicles.
So it does record the whole car with the license plate?
It records exactly what you're seeing right there. But it recognizes color and be.
Sort of report, it records a corolla for like, what is that, like a grayish corolla?
And again, like I said, this is a lead, so it'll go and uh, it'll report that that vehicle, that snapshot of that vehicle. And uh, the deputy or investigator can make an inquiry into that. And see what vehicles or generic, what vehicles came through this intersection at a certain time. And usually, you know, when we do have a shooting, we do have a robbery, we have a pretty good timeframe, so we get the call, the nine one one call. And we can go for that specific time. And let us, if we know, went through Caesar Chavez in fifty two. And what was the last thing going north about? So we can check that that time period.
So it's recording the vehicle, vehicles that go through there. It's just.
The snapshot of those.
Snapshot just.
Mm-hmm.
It's it's live.
And uh, uh, so, so we, we, you, you covered this, the license plates can't be used to prosecute people because. That they don't identify.
They don't identify just because you see the vehicle with the license plate, it requires further investigation, it's a lead.
Yeah, but you can't prosecute someone.
Have to go further, run that license plate ourselves, it doesn't automatically run it. It doesn't tell us who the registered owner is, we have to look into that.
Yeah, but you can't prosecute someone because of the license plate.
No.
And and so, but you, um, so say, uh, can you input into the system? Uh, say here we see this license plate, can you put that number in the system and it'll tell you the route?
It won't tell us the route.
It'll tell you.
It'll tell us what cameras, what cameras.
So that, so that'll tell you the route, their route.
Possibly, it depends on what route they take and it depends on where the cameras are at.
Say, uh, a citizen in Coachella, they go to work. And uh, and in their, and in their daily commute, they pass by ten of these. You would have a history of all the ten cameras and so you, you now have information of their daily commute.
Yes, but. What would we use it for, first off?
Right.
Then why, why would we, why would we inquire that because it wouldn't set up any alert?
I'm not, I'm not asking that, I'm just asking would you have it?
Yeah, it would be under for thirty days and then it would be erased.
But they, they're here three hundred and sixty five days, so, so you would always have someone's daily commute.
But there's no need for it.
But you would have it, that's what I'm asking you.
It would be there, yes.
Yeah.
But again, there's no law enforcement need for it.
Right, so.
And I know, I know what you're concerned is, it's tracking people and knowing where they go and all that. Law enforcement has, law enforcement has no concern of where you go and shop.
Right.
Law enforcement doesn't care where, what businesses you visit.
Yeah, you're.
We only care if there's a crime that we can solve.
Right, but I, I'm not, I'm not asking that, I'm not saying that, I think you're implying that. I, I'm just asking specific questions, yes or no. And and so that, that to me, the, the idea that, that uh, 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 law enforcement without. Going to a judge or getting a warrant or or getting any, any, anything, you can know where Stephen, where Stephanie, where Scott Figueroa. Or Carlos, where we're at at any time. And to me, that, that is, that, that's a, that's, that I know that advancement technology, sometimes we need to embrace it, other times. When we have this big brother system that, that, that does sort, that does keep this and it's for thirty days, but it's, you, you mentioned after thirty days it gets erased. But then, but we're driving every day, we don't have here in 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 Coachella, we have some, but use a sun bus and it's great. But we don't have the bark system that exists in in San Francisco, so people use cars. Out in sunny, public area where I grew up on a daily basis, and so that is is worrisome to me. That, that, that although you don't, you may not use it for something, but, but, but it's accessible. And and to, and so that, that, that's one of, I, I, I keep, I have concerns about the ability of doing that, I also have concerns. Uh, in the, in, since. A, since these cameras have been in place in California, although there are state laws that don't allow. Out of state uh, sharing with other, with law enforcement or federal enforcement, uh, so for county sheriffs and you, you can work with the border patrol or ICE. But there has been a, 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 incidents in California where uh, some law enforcement, like the city of Tracy. Uh, because I looked into this, uh, use, sold and share these data with out of state law enforcement agencies. And to me, that's also very worrisome that in a community where we are a sanctuary city, that. That there has been a history of these cameras being used to share with out of state a- agencies. And on top of that, with the fact that our county sheriff has joined the Sante's anti immigrant uh, coalition. Is also very worrisome to me because the idea that, that, that now an agency that aligns himself with the ideology of the Sante's. Has access to undocumented immigrants' daily commute. I'm not for, I unfortunately, it's already accessible in the unipublice communities of Riverside County. But to, to today, because of the reasons that I'm mentioning. Uh, I'm, I'm not, I still can't vote in support of this, I know you're mentioning, you, you, you know, you, why? But you have it anyways. And that anyone, that, that people can access it is worrisome to me and and I, and I just can't.
When you say people, it's law enforcement.
Correct.
And, and again, you know, everyone knows that cameras are, are everywhere.
Right.
Cameras are everywhere and you say about daily commute, somebody takes the sun bus every day.
I mentioned.
There's cameras, there's cameras on the sun bus. And documents that. Okay, and the only time we access that is obviously because of private entity is when there's a crime that occurs and that's the only time this, this information is actually retrieved. Um, for the camera system itself. We don't share out of state. And again, Lieutenant Martinez is the one that governs that, if there is a request and it's for a homicide suspect. That they know has come to California and is in the Coachella Valley. Okay, we may provide information that, but we're probably going to take this person, that person to custody ourselves. Um, so it's not shared for any kind of immigration, it's not shared for anything like that because we don't have any desire for that, nor we, doesn't allow us to do that. The, uh, laws that are in place do not allow us to do that.
I, I, I'm with you and and for the reasons I, I would become like, you know, like, it, it, it makes uh, some sense as that, it's not allowed, at the same time. It doesn't make sense to me why a county in California is usually, is, is joining a, a, a presidential hopeful anti-immigration coalition. And now would have access to this too, that, that to me, that, that I don't, I don't understand how that makes sense. That the Sante's along, along with the Texas governor have sent uh, undocumented immigrants in buses full to what they, to sanctuary cities to make. Uh, 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 to make a, a political part of, of our, of, of people, of human beings. I don't understand any of that and because there's a co- connection here. And people's information can be accessed by law enforcement that maybe. Uh, that, that has an agreement with. These anti-immigrant sentiments. And at the time where it's true, there, there are, you know, fentanyl is, is a big issue in, 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 in the county of California. But some folks have been using that argument to be, to, to pose anti-immigrant. And in, in others, and saying that our, our, our community and our communities are very vulnerable at this point. Because it's, it's being sort of blanking out using the, the vulnerable communities that are being abused by the potential prices. But also blanking is a statement for undocumented people and criminalizing undocumented people with their rhetoric that they're also. Human trafficking, I also just read a, a report that, that uh, some news article talked about how new, uh, here in the valley, how food vendors are. It's part of a human trafficking plot and, and so, i- i- and so those things to me like that and, and now having access to, to these, to this vulnerable information. I, 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 I'm not comfortable with and that's why I had those art, those, those feelings. And two years ago and today, if anything with the, with, with. With the, with the political state that we live in. I, I, I'm even further in, in, in a, a move to oppose this today as well.
Understood. Any other comments?
Just note that Lieutenant Martinez is on the, on Zoom and we can promote, be promoted to panelist.
I, I, I think, um, at least my concern and, and I understand that after thirty days it. It, it, it erases, but. To the point of the council member, every day we drive. And so it restarts another thirty days and another thirty days and another thirty days and. And this idea of having a, a comprehensive record of everyone's comings and goings. It, it's just, it feels weird for me, it, it feels big brother, it feels like what's next, maybe a facial reader. We're doing that in other communist states and it just really like. It's, it's, it's the beginning of, you know, letting the camel's nose underneath the, the tent. And uh, and as you look at, you know, kind of, uh, just where we go or what, what's happening, whether it be. Um. This effort and, and, uh, and it feels like, you know, big brother. Those very big brotherish and, and you know, if you look at like flock. Their goal is to be in every, every city within the nation. And they're doing a good job of working with law enforcement to create a very, very comprehensive list. Uh, uh, or record, I should say, of everybody's comings and goings. And it is being sold as a, as a, as a preventative tool or as a, as a public safety tool. But there's other, others that believe that like, hey, you know, having a comprehensive record of. Everybody's comings and goings, even though we're saying that we're not going to use it for that, there's no need to pull it. But things happen, things get pulled, you know, sometimes information and data gets shared. And it just could becomes very concerning, it's like, okay, what, like, why are we living in an age of big brother now? And, you know, it just. Um, it's kind of, it's. I, I start reading, you know, I'm going to read nineteen eighty four and it just, the age of big brother, we're, we're constantly being tracked. And kind of just feels like against our civil liberties, that's all. And it's hard, it's hard to balance that. In my head, uh, uh, like, you know, the, the, the. The one hand of, you know, public safety tool, the other civil liberties and, and privacy that people deserve. You know, and, and if you're not a criminal, you're not being looked at, then you shouldn't have a record to put up to them. You know, I mean, that's the, that's the, that ultimately is the, is what's going on. You track everybody, be responsive if you're guilty or not, you're just being tracked. So that's how I feel, but again, that's two voices and if there's emotion, we'll entertain it.
Just have questions regarding the cost, I feel like we haven't really gone into that very much, but. So I see for option one, two and three, there's, you know, the recurring annual subscription. So that's one thing that we have to take care of and then also the one time installation costs. Um, what about the maintenance for, is, is the maintenance for these cameras? I know, you know, equipment sometimes doesn't work or they're not synchronized or whatever, we've had that before. Um, I mean, I remember when I was in college, there was always, you know, um. Articles regarding our camera system that most cities already have. Um, they were on top of, you know, where the, the lights are. And a lot of them were not up to date and they weren't being maintained and it was because of the cost. So I guess my concern is just, you know, is the cost included, the maintenance included on?
And, uh, from my understanding, it is. And uh, the installation fee is just so they can mount them to the, to the poles and that, and so if there are any issues or anything, they take care of those issues. Uh, Lieutenant Martinez, again, he is the, the administrator for the system for the sheriff's department and he can probably elaborate more on that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes, the costs are included.
Okay, if you could, um. Answer that.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So that's a fantastic question and, and Lieutenant Vasquez is pretty much on point. So that is a annual subscription fee, but it's inclusive of all maintenance and ongoing support. Uh, block manages these cameras, so as they detect. That they're not reading well, they're not capturing enough solar to maintain the battery. Then dispatch their own technicians out to the sites and either replace or repair that equipment. So it makes it a lot easier for the city to manage and makes it easier for us to, to manage and use also because it really doesn't take much or any effort from city staff at all. Um, I believe the only effort that it, it'll take from city staff is during the permitting process.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just regarding the, so the cost, what, what? Where would we, what funding would we use to be able to uh, pay for this, would it be for, through our general fund or? So it'd be that additional cost annually coming out of our general fund. Thank you, um, I, you know, just for me, it's. I, I, I think I understand the need, I, it makes sense that, you know, a lot of cities are using it and. Um, it's helping them, I know you shared a slide. Um, if we can go back to the data really quickly where it shows, you know, the amount of cases that we have and those have, that have been resolved. I think a good comparison would be, um, you know, Rancho Mirage. Um, we almost have the same, you know, percentage, the same number and they have that system, correct?
Yes, they do, they had, uh, they had started with two different uh, systems, they had started with uh, vigilant, if I'm not mistaken. And I couldn't tell you what year they started with that, uh, which doesn't um. Recognize vehicles, it is a license plate reader, but from my understanding, it doesn't recognize vehicles.
Interesting.
Uh, it just records a license plate. And then they have recently, uh, actually kept both systems have increased, I think they've purchased, I think it was, it's been a hundred cameras. Within their city of Rancho Mirage for block.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Yeah, I think so, seeing the, the numbers, how, you know, similar they are to ours and, you know, we don't have this system in place. Um. You know. Working for, for the county, one of my jobs has been a lot of social services and making sure that, you know. We're being very intentional of where we're spending our money. And that's probably one of the things that I hear the most too and even here as well as, um. You know, our, our, I think our city, uh, and our residents need a lot of, um. We need a lot of programming, we need a lot more services, we need a lot of different things that perhaps we haven't been privy to before. And so when I see something like this, I, I understand the, you know. And so when I see something like this, I I understand the, you know, this is something that we're trying to use. So that we can be able to, you know, you discuss, you know, solve crimes and and take a look at the license plate and and all that. But it almost forces me to think of. You know, how are we using our funding and it's coming from general fund? How are we using that and? And to ensure that, you know, we're. We're actually helping our community thrive and helping our community, um. Get out of poverty and and uh get an education for those that are seeking that and be able to find jobs. And what are we doing as a council to be able to to do that better for them? And so, you know, I I understand the. I understand that, you know, this item that is, you know, put before us, but. I don't know that I feel too comfortable um with an annual subscription and and doing this. When I know the need, I know the need in our community. I I know that, you know, I've spoken to a lot of community members. Where, you know, one of the things that they've just asked for is, you know, I'm a senior, I'm, you know, eighty years old. I would love to have my house, um, you know, maintained and my tree to be, you know, looking great, but I can't afford it. I either pay my bills and buy groceries or I maintain my home. And that's very difficult to hear. I think, uh, you know, as a as a council member and and just a community member, it's very difficult to hear. Um, you know, that. Happening and and all of those things going on. And so. Personally, I I I don't know if I could support this item. For those reasons, just because my background with social services, I feel that. Um, that's what I always have, you know, the community telling me is. Wh- why aren't we supporting, you know, more community programming? And you hear that also from our community-based organizations. Um, it it kind of. It's almost, it it sucks that they're not here to hear this item as well and, you know, share their thoughts too. It their thoughts may be different, but that's something recurring that I always hear is. From them, from our community-based organizations is why aren't we putting in more effort and more money and more funding and more? You know, of that energy into our programming for our community. Parks and everything else that we need so that our community can thrive and so that we don't have these issues. Um. But a- anyways, I think I'm getting a little bit off topic. I I will leave, you know. The rest to uh my fellow colleagues and council members up here, but those are, those are just my thoughts.
You have to remember, these are twenty twenty-one numbers. I don't want to see like. Twenty twenty-two, but I know that the it's in a rear sometimes to get those trends. So then maybe when you got they got those, I'm not sure when they got them, but I know the ranch garage increase. Right? And we heard from another councilman from another city this evening also, but I've also talked to other council members in other cities as well and the various um. Boards that I'm on and they really talk about what. These actually do for the community and talk about social services and helping people. And yes, we do need to help people with different programming items. If we want to say about seniors, why don't we have a cooling center eighty-seven days a week? We only have five days. What happens the other two days in our city when there is no two other days for senior citizens, right? But also you then have a lot of high theft. That occurs to the senior citizens who then are saying, we don't have enough of this support. We need some support or I got something stolen or then this happened. So. You know, social services look in different things, but this is also public safety and the public service of how do we support our community? Right? They're asking for support and different methods. And so we need to be in a shared way of looking how we support our community, both in public service. As the public safety, the social services, different type of programs that we offer. And we had a whole discussion about water bills earlier also about clearing balances. And so. How is making sure that we're looking out for our community? And I understand the tracking. I drive to work, I leave my house and I drive the same route every single day, but I also drive having a fifty-two and once I cross over to India. I've become getting tracked. So they know that I go up that way and go back that way. So it's. This kind of method of, you know. You're stuck in the middle of understanding where do you really support or not support? Um, you know, the the tracking of this and what is it really used? And I don't use the same route every day because you never know if you have a, you know. A, you know, stalker or someone's following you, right? You you always have to change your route that you go home because you've got to alternate. Sometimes there's traffic, sometimes there's different things. But you also have to look at. We live in a region where there's high human trafficking as well. We see these signs on the on the on the expressway on Highway eighty-six. You'll see on the freeway. And so how can we also look at how this benefits people, right? In that sense.
Correction, we live in a country where there's high.
Well, there is a, there is a high country of high human trafficking, but there's two big billboards on the eighty-six that I just saw the other day. So. Those are scary to watch, but you know.
In uh federal law and documents, immigrants are also considered part of human trafficking. So I just want to make sure that we 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 identify that that's something that needs to be fixed. Um, so that we can have real numbers on human trafficking because I. Uh 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 child of immigrants uh. Uh, and uh family members that are documented, they're not human traffickers and they're not victims of human trafficking.
And then.
So I want to make sure it's not that.
I would reference, but they reference, you know, but how do you stop it from happening or, you know? Different ways of, you know, to looking at that. So I understand my other colleagues' points and 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 concerns about. Those things, but we also have to look at that larger public safety. And my one question is, you know. We contract with the RSO, but if we were to get this contract with this. Right? This transfers that we have our own police department, right? Right? So in that sense.
And I. I truly believe if uh when when and if you do get your own police department, this is one of the first things that you police have been asked.
Right? So, you know. Why not build the infrastructure now while we can and get it started? So when that discussion starts. And or if it happens, you know, we're not, that's not spurring around to try to get those installed. So those are my comments.
No, um, I've mentioned it many times that public safety is the top topic here all of the time. For the um. Juvenile that got shot. It was heartbreaking. It hurt me a great deal. And when I called you, the first thing I always ask is what their age is all the time. It's the first question. And I say this all the time is how do you put a number on someone's life? Would I be willing to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to save one person? Absolutely. More than that. Would I be willing to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the person who committed the shooting? Just to give that family, to give those parents just some justice. A little bit of peace, a little bit of peace, absolutely. That's just what it is. I completely understand the comments that have been made. When we talk about. Privacy and tracking routes, our phones track us. We have GPS on our phone. We have GPS on our vehicles. In fact, all of our vehicles now have GPS system. We're constantly being tracked. When I asked for the um. Uh, I had asked for the business, um, the statistics, remember for, you know, uh, people coming into the city. Um, where are they shopping? How do we improve economic development? What did they use? GPS. GPS for businesses, they use GPS. So if the logic is while we're tracking them and that would apply to us as a as a society now. Everything is being tracked. It's just the reality. It's the reality. You know, we're using data. That's being tracked through GPS from people who are shopping in our city. And knowing who we're competing with. It's that. It's that advanced. So when we talk about privacy, we have to also consider that we're already being trapped. It's just a reality. Um, when we talk about um the services, recreational services, I completely agree. That we need more services, whether it's parks, whether it's education, um, whether it's more programming, absolutely, one thousand percent. But we've been having the conversation of public safety now for years. For years. Where is the recreational programming? You know, and if the and if the logic is that the recreation is going to reduce crime. Then with that logic. The fifteen-year-old wouldn't have been shot. I mean, it's it's just the logic behind it. Do we need all these services? Absolutely. But we also have the obligation to our residents to provide public safety. And we have a lot of residents. Who are constantly living in fear. I can't tell you how many times I talked to residents where they say that there is drug trafficking down their street. They don't want to share anything. They don't want to say anything. If they can give us a license plate. That's all they need. I mean, it's just the reality. There's a lot of shootings in the city. To say anything else is just completely untrue. There is a lot of shootings. In the last few years, the fatalities in the city of Coachella have increased. The fatalities. From shootings, but the shootings have been there. You know. If you guys uh recall, was it last year? We had parents who came in with their kiddos. And they sat in these seats. And the mother uh very graciously, and she did so much work. So much work, so much um studying. And she came before us and she talked about. The crime, she talked about, you know, the fear that she lives in. What occurred is that her kids had been shot at. And just by luck, none of them had been shot, just by luck. And when I looked over to the young lady. She was shaking. She was shaking and she was. Moving back and forth. And usually kids do that to comfort themselves. They naturally try to comfort themselves. I mean, what do I tell those parents? What do I tell the parents where I knocked on their door and they told me that they have bullet? You know, through their houses or their cars. What am I supposed to say? Now, if the thought is that we don't have enough money. Well, we just heard that we do have the money. But for the statement of that it's coming from the general fund, that is true. But also is that last year it was removed. So it was actually put into the budget. We removed it. You know, so it was only this year alone that we removed that. But prior to that, it wasn't coming from the general fund. It was provided into the budget. I hope. That we can get past. Um, the trust issues now, not completely. But I do feel that it is our obligation as representatives to work with whoever that law enforcement agency is. That's just the reality. Now, if there are any concerns that we have, then we address it to leadership. And we have these respectful, professional conversations about what we can do to address these concerns. I also hope that my colleagues will remove. The politics behind it. I just don't care for them. I understand the concerns for it. But it's very different than what happens on the ground. And what we're responsible, what we took an oath for. Was to provide services, quality services to our residents. And that includes public safety. Do I agree with all the costs? And I also understand that for the city of Coachella, it eats up. Quite a bit of our budget, but it's not just law enforcement. It's also fire. I think, by the way, we also have to address that because we also need, in in my opinion, in my uh opinion, an additional fire station. We have one. For almost fifty thousand residents. So we also have to address that issue as well, is that we need to look. For possibly another fire station and the personnel that comes with that as well. I hope that my colleagues will reconsider. And give this a shot just for the sake of our residents. If it doesn't work out, we can end it. You know, in a year. And, you know, if it provides the services that it should provide, then we can continue it. I. Also, as as we talked about all these cities that have, you know, the flock or some type of system in place. I think, you know, if I was committing a crime, I would just, I would just stick around in Coachella. Why? Why would I go anywhere else knowing that there's cameras there? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. I would just stay here, knowing that there isn't any systems in place. That will pick up my license plate. That's just the reality.
But your phone's being tracked, so you probably wouldn't stay in Coachella. Like, that wouldn't be. That doesn't make sense. You just said earlier that our phones track us either way.
That would if they knew who I was as an individual. So that only works if they knew who I was as an individual.
But what I'm.
I think the difference is government agencies.
Hold on. What I'm referring to, and I just want to make this clear, is the only thing that's being read is a lot. They don't know who's driving that vehicle. So if I was driving the vehicle, they would not know that it was me. So regardless of all the things that I have, technology that tracks me. There is no way of me of them knowing that it's me driving the vehicle. All they get is a reading on the license plate.
And color.
Yeah, in color and make.
Yeah, uh, the difference, I think, you know, to your example about the uh the 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 phone, if you've been opting out, opting out all these apps. Uh, the difference is government agencies aren't tracking people white with your phones. And if they are, that's illegal. Uh, it's been, you know, on on cases, Apple and other, you know, uh, companies have chosen not to give access to government agencies. People's phone records and 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 because. You know, the the idea and and as as US citizens, we have this uh. Uh, our privacy, it needs to be protected. And as elected officials, we need to protect our citizens. And undocumented immigrants or people with regardless of status, their privacy. Uh, I also want to point out because uh we we can. Uh, we can choose to ponder about the feelings and emotions. About vulnerable incidents that have happened in our city. And and we could use that to debate today. But at the same time, this, as you mentioned, it's not a crime prevention uh uh tool. It it's a, it's it's a tool that wants to help. I- if it can help, because you track people. Uh, to to solve a crime, but it's not going to prevent crime. Uh, and and it hasn't prevented crime from desert, as you mentioned, you have this. Uh, and you guys just had a robbery in your mall. I I saw that they were caught, but you you know, it's not preventing crime. It's it's crime is still happening and uh we could point, you know, to the right to the numbers in twenty twenty-one. And I'm sure you'd look at twenty twenty-two, it would be the same. City of Desert Hawk Springs, I don't know. Why those numbers are there? That's probably not accurate. Uh, but if you look at this house springs too, that they they have, they they also have these flock cameras. Cat City has these flock cameras. I I don't know what happened with these numbers, but those numbers aren't true. That were are reported in this. And and so if you would have to have more accurate uh numbers, we probably see a trend. We look at the crime rates in 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 the city. Obviously, after COVID, things have had, things have, you know, haven't stabilized. But City of Coachella isn't one of the highest crime rate uh cities. We we so so the idea that that these cameras are going to prevent crime. Uh, i- 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 it's not true. It hasn't happened in our neighboring cities that have these cameras. Crime still exists. At at a rate, you you know, similar or higher to our to our city that has an adopting piece. And it is so that sort of that's that's my take on it. Again, uh, people can on on your, you people can choose to buy this iPhone or other stuff. People can opt in or opt out of being tracked on these on these flock cameras. And that's what we need to sort of be cautious about. Uh, uh, and so I'll, I mean, it's, I I I could go on and on, but I've already made my point uh. Uh, and.
Well, I I uh. I just want to say the idea that because everybody's tracking you. That uh that it's makes it okay. It it just leads to my point that. These innocuous acts open up the door for larger. And clearly undesirable actions where what's next? What's next? And and I uh. It 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 just feels really. You know, just tracking everybody. Tracking everybody and you have a record of where everybody's coming and going. And and I understand. What uh. That this can help us solve crime. You know, I I also understand that there are other actions that we can take, whether it be, you know, getting the. Uh, you know, our traffic enforcement police that will also help us stop crime. I mean, I'm all for that. I'm all for that. I I just. Again, I'm I'm uncomfortable with the idea of a of a surveillance state. Of a call it government voyeurism, if you want. Because it's a government tracking uh for uh your comings and goings and they have a comprehensive record. Um, and the idea that. That in Coachella, that we're not solving crime. And if you're a criminal. That you should just stay in Coachella and come here. That's to me, that's one of. Probably uh just just kind of goes along with. Some sentiment that's out there amongst people. That really believe that people of color are crime inducing and and this is an unsafe community when when you compare our data. We 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 do pretty decent here in terms of reducing crime and and apprehending people that are committing crimes. And so I I I definitely, uh, you know, just caution about using analogies. Uh, particularly when there are others that are listening from other communities and already have that perception of the city. To go ahead and reinforce it because a council member is saying it. So. There is an opportunity for motion. We'll take it.
So I will provide clarification because it's quite often that my words are, you know, twisted. I never once said it was okay to be tracked. I said that that's the society that we're in and we're moving to. It's very different from saying that I'm okay with it. I'm saying that that's just a society. That we're in and we're moving to. Even if you go into, you know, a restaurant, a shop, there's cameras in there. That we're in and we're moving to, even if you go into, you know, a, a restaurant, a shop, there's cameras in there. You know, so when we talk about privacy, what I was trying to state is that. You know, it, it's just really hard nowadays to have any privacy, I'm not saying it's okay, but that's just the reality. My comment, when I said, I said that I, that me, I never used any uh, group. I never used anybody else but myself when referring to, I mean. If I knew that there was cameras everywhere else that recorded license plates. Just logically, just common sense would mean that in the cities that don't have cameras. Whether it's Coachella, what's the other city in?
Calamessa.
Calamessa or any other city, it's logical to think that if that city doesn't have a license plate reader. Well, then it's, makes more sense to someone who doesn't, who knows that, would probably go and hide there. That is what I'm saying, in no way did I ever say or connect it to people uh, of color. It's just being twisted, what I'm saying is that cities who don't have the system. Well, it would make sense that people would probably go into those cities. And it's just, I mean, it's flock today, it could be some other technology ten or twenty years from now. And you know, it's, it's the reality, and so we just have to make sure that we're providing our residents. That safety and the security that they're asking for, or else the Coachella PD department wouldn't be such a big. Debate item, I mean, that's a top topic, why? Because they have public safety in mind, that is why they're constantly bringing it up. Constantly, so I just want to make sure that I provide that clarification.
Well, there's an opportunity for a motion, I'll take a motion.
Well, three members of council already said that you're not in support of it.
There's no option for motion.
If not, we'll just table this item.
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, I, Mayor, you did say that you were not in support. Of this program, but you were in for traffic deputy, then would you be willing to bring back an item for traffic deputy?
Well, there's opportunities to discuss that, you know, under the appropriate venues to have those conversations. This isn't an either or, do this and then do that, I mean, we can discuss that at any appropriate time, there's no problem. Uh, but what we have an action in front, and we'll, we entertain a, a motion. Uh, to approve, deny, table, whatever it is.
Your motion. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to oppose and uh, so that we don't take one, and it doesn't have to come back.
So there's a motion to, uh, uh, oppose this item and, and. And not bring it back, is there a second? I'll second. And uh, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Delgado?
No.
Councilmember Figueroa?
No.
Councilmember Vigen?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Galarza?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez?
Hi. Move forward now on uh, adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-seven, authorizing the city of Coachella participation in the county of Riverside. Urban County Program fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Selena will be making that presentation.
Uh, yes, hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, uh, Selena Jimenez, Economic Development Director. Uh, the item before you is, uh, it, the city will be, uh, since we did not, uh. Reach fifty thousand in our population, uh, census count. Uh, we, uh, have a, we would like to continue participating in the county CDBG. Uh, grant program so that we can continue to receive an allocation from them through HUD. Uh, typically, our allocation averages around three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, per year, so this would allow us to continue participating through the county CDBG program. And uh, so that we can undertake uh, various programs that benefit uh, our low income, uh, uh. Households in the city. And so as, as you know, we have typically used the fund to fund improvements at Bagduma Park. Uh, we have, uh, completed quite a bit of, of wonderful improvements there, and so we are. Looking to use our allocation uh, for the next cycle for the housing enhancement program. And uh, and then we will uh, bring these items back to council to uh, obtain direction for future years. And so staff recommendation is that we, uh, move forward with, uh, uh. Adopting the resolution and allowing, allowing the city to continue its participation with the county CDBG program.
I, 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 I'll make a motion to approve this item, I will say that I did bring it up, that we need to start. Thinking about our residents and so far as. Facade improvements, roof improvements, i- in addition, I think, you know, energy. Efficiency programs that would include new windows. Um, installation in some of these old homes, new roofs, new ACs, I think that definitely needs to be considered. Um, moreover, I think it's also important that, I mean, we heard it today with the. Displacement avoidance plan, that there are small businesses that are looking for assistance and CDBG is an eligible form. Of providing that small business assistance, and so I. I want to just, you know, and, and, and maybe what's needed. Is that this council should get a presentation of what you can use CDBG for, and instead of. Instead of just coming to us and saying, well, this is what we want to use it for us. And, and getting a really clear understanding of what it can be used for, and I think that's important, but. There, there is, there's a lot, you know, and, and we've concentrated, what, the last four years and. You know, putting in lights, restrooms, improving the parks, and that's even after we've put another two, three million. And so you, you got to spread the love a little bit and, and, but I, I'm all for, uh. Participating in this program, but I think it needs to, council needs to thoroughly understand all the different uses associated with CDBG.
Sir, would you like me to bring this item back for uh, council direction in October, uh, or?
Yeah, well, I, 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 what I'd like is a presentation on the uses of CDBG that could be applied to. Just give us, give us, what's the manual uses?
Perfect.
Now, I, I think that's important that we understand the menu and, and then we can have this conversation, how we want to allocate those funds.
Will do, thank you.
But I'll, I'll motion to approve, uh, our participation in the urban county program. For fiscal twenty-four through twenty-six, actually through twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Take role, councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Hi.
Councilmember Vigen?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez?
Hi. We'll move forward on the authorization uh, to award affordable housing sustainable communities, A H S C grant funds. That were originally intended to be reimbursed to the city for the land acquisition cost of the transit hub. Now to be used for the construction of the transit hub.
It's a, it's a cleanup item, um. Yeah, good evening, councilmembers, um. Back when I was here, we had partnered with Sunline, and we're going to build a transit center, and one point eight million dollars was set aside for that project. Of that, five hundred thousand was supposed to be spent for the land acquisition. And there was an agreement between Sunline and, actually, I was the city manager back at the time, we signed this, the GM Lauren had signed it as well. However, through me leaving, Lauren leaving, and nobody knowing about what was actually in place. It was understood to Sunline when they put the construction out to bid that they had one point eight million dollars to build the transit center. And as you heard from Selena a little earlier, there's not enough money to put in restrooms or their, the cost of construction went up. Because of the pandemic happening and timing and all of that, so. They came back to us and we had a meeting and they got a bid back and it's for the one point eight million, plus there's some additives, uh, things that the city wants. Ultimately, though, Sunline wasn't going to participate, uh, they've come back to us and said they will participate, they're going to go to their board and try to get four hundred thousand dollars from their board. Um, however, there's still a shortfall, uh, timing is critical because the bid expires. Uh, by, I think it's August twenty-fifth or something like that, we need to spend and encumber these funds because it's kind of our last piece of the, the grant. So, we've already paid the five hundred thousand dollars, it's just hasn't been reimbursed to us through the grant. So what staff is recommending is that we don't get reimbursed, we use general fund money, we'd sold property before, we have some money, you know, that we. They're non-discretionary one-time money, which I let you know that before, that we love to spend one-time money with general fund reserves, this is a use of that that's. Critical, you put a lot of time and effort into this project, it looks great, it needs to be finished correctly. Um, and meeting with Sunline staff and, um, the staff recommends that we go ahead and forego the five hundred thousand, put it into the project and get. What you thought you were going to get out of the project, it's unfortunate that, uh, costs have gone up. And that we're not able to get what we thought we were going to with the one point three million originally, but that's kind of where we are. Um, it is critical to approve it, we're not meeting again until September, so. Um, we need to let them know if we are going to do this so that they can approve the bid. Um, we will come back to you, letting you know what all of that is, I, um. Has that been shared with the council, the, the concept and the, yeah, okay, good, all right, so. I, I have not seen it, I, I guess it came back before, um, I was, I was back, so.
I'm in motion to approve, second, uh, and I'll, I'll just say that, um. I think it's good that they participate and put some skin in the game. You know, and if they're going to put four, then we can not get reimbursed, and it is what it is, it is a more of an accounting technicality at this point, so. All right, cool, there's a motion in the second.
I'll take role, councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Hi.
Councilmember Vigen?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez?
I, now this next item, um, oh no, I'm sorry, now we'll, we'll move into the, uh, public hearing items. And this is to introduce, uh, ordinance number twelve oh six, City of Coachella. Objective design standards for multiple family residential and mixed-use development. Or, and some member, number twenty-two dash zero four. Is a proposal to make Coachella Municipal Code Title Seventeen, zoning, Gabriel, welcome.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, member of the city council. Um, I'll go through this pretty quickly, we do have a consultant that's helped us prepare this document, uh, this. Is part of a grant that, that we did receive. Uh, to prepare objective design standards under state law, SB thirty-five and three thirty. We must use objective design standards for multifamily housing, uh, when considering, uh, qualifying projects. That, uh, could be reviewed at administrative level. Uh, so what objective design standards are, are those standards that would have the measurable? Verifiable, and it's involves no subjective judgment. Uh, an example of that, um, would be like the zoning code, right? We have a lot of guidelines, so the downtown Pueblo Viejo guidelines, we could not apply that to new multifamily housing. So, under state law, we would have to use objective design standards, we also have to use that for single-family housing. Uh, so we pre- prepared this in, in coordination with, uh, our consultant, Crandall Arambula. And so they'll share the presentation on this document right now. So, Don, I believe Don will be doing that. Don, are you in, on Zoom? Hi, Don.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So these are the objective design standards, and it, it'd be about a.
Need to share screen or? Don, we can, uh, if you're trying to share a screen, we don't see it yet.
Okay, well, hold on here, to go back to it.
And if that doesn't work, we have the presentation on file.
I don't use Zoom that often, so I'm having to find where that's at. There was me a second here. Hey, can you help me out with work and find it to share, I'm not finding it.
Uh, yeah, Don, we, we could pull up the presentation and then just, just reply next when you want us to move to the next slide.
Yeah, I, I just hold on here, I'm just trying to get this share going here, I've been. Waiting for three hours, so my computer's a little slow here. It wants to sleep on me, hold on, this should be here in a second.
You got it. Hi, Don, that works. Don, we could see the presentation, but, uh, we can't hear you. Can we just make sure we hear it here, I think it'll be easier and faster. Oh, there we go, Don, we can hear you now.
I, I can hear you now, but my screen is not showing the presentation.
All right, can you just share it and then we can just do it over here, it's going to be easier.
Hold on, it's a second here.
I, 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 Don, I think our, our IT team can share it, it'll be easier.
Okay.
You, you, uh, you just need to tell, uh, Gabriel next, whenever you want to go to the next slide.
Okay, can, can you see it now?
Yeah, but we're sharing it, you, you, you don't, uh, you would just say next and our IT team will, next slide.
Okay, all right, next slide. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, it's already well after nine o'clock, and it was implanted about a twenty minutes, uh, presentation. But I'm going to make that a little quicker, so let's go to the next slide. So, state legislature is, uh, asking all cities across California to, um, prepare objective design standards. And the rationale for that is to reduce housing costs, and there's a couple ways that can be done. That is providing certainty in the development of. Standards which, uh, will be used to evaluate projects. And as a result of that, um, if they're done consistently, consistently, they'll be, uh, faster permitting, next slide. Uh, the question is, why do we need objective design standards, was as Gabriel said, you really don't have any standards today. You're relying on things like the Pueblo Viejo design guidelines. And as a result of those guidelines, um, they're, they're ambiguous, they're unclear. And as a result, that subjectivity often results in inconsistent interpretations, it's a he says, she says sort of situation. Next slide. So, the intent of the, 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 the design standards is to be predictable and offer no gray area for interpretation. So the idea here is that, uh, the standards or requirements, they're shells and muffs. They're measurable and verifiable as opposed to guidelines which are simply recommendations, may or should. And the idea here is that the, uh, the predictable outcomes will be reviewed, not by your planning commission. But what is called ministerially by the planning staff. Next slide.
It, just, uh, uh, on the advice of, uh, or by, by our city attorney, I, I'm going to abstain from this item, even though. There's some ambiguity if I have a conflict or not, but to be what the abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining from this one and the next, thank you.
Okay. So, so the question is, where will the standards apply? It would apply to the list of areas you see today. Uh, in your lane views update, so that would be the downtown, urban employment and neighborhood center areas. It applied to apartment and townhouse development and also in the urban neighborhood and general plan neighborhood. It doesn't apply to single-family neighborhood areas, nor does it apply to remodels, this is for new construction, next slide. So as I mentioned, it will be, all projects will be reviewed by staff. And, uh, and if an applicant chooses to, they can opt out and use the existing architectural review process. So this isn't something that everybody has to do. However, if you submit a Senate bill SB three thirty application, which we'll talk a bit, a little bit about. Or an SB, for SB thirty-five affordable housing eligibility application. You can, um, you will need to meet all the requirements to qualify for this type of review, next slide. You can, um, you will need to meet all the requirements to qualify for this type of review. Next slide. So what are the benefits of this? Well, the intent of this is if you use this process, you would, will have a streamlined application process. And there are three really, uh, key pieces for that. So if you have. A project that has a hundred and fifty units or less, housing units or less. It would be ninety days. It would be a hundred and eighty days if it's larger than that. And if you're eligible for SB thirty-five. Uh, you would need, you would, uh, not have to meet, uh, CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act requirements. Next slide. The benefits for the city is, uh, by doing this expedited process, you'll get. Uh, high quality developments that are based on the community value. So this is really something that's in, not imported from some other part of the state. It's really been crafted specifically for Coachella. There are also amenities that come along with it. So what we're suggesting are some things that we call in the public realm. Sidewalks and plaza amenities would be constructed and maintained by the developers. And where there's mixed use project, you're gonna get viable. Types of, of first floor types of commercial retail shops. That will be built as part of these projects. Next slide please. So what are the standards? Next slide please. What's in there? So the standards are really broken up into three sections or elements or chapters, if you will. And they're listed here and I'll go through these one by one. Next slide. So the first one are what we call the public realm improvement. You see that little yellow stripe along the edge? That is the area that extends from the curb face to the property line or setback area. So this is the area that every member of the Coachella community can use. So if you're walking by or biking by. You'll be interacting within this area. So what are those standards? Next, the next slide please. Well, the public realm improvements are the, uh, streetscape's, uh, improvements. They include. widened sidewalks, canopy trees, shrubs and ground cover. Ornamental lighting, benches and bike racks. So you've got some good examples, uh, in your downtown in the Pueblo Viejo. That they're really kind of modeled on. Next slide. And the question is, why do you wanna do that? Well, when you have, uh, a lot of designated multi-family sites, generally along very busy roadways. Uh, the conditions today are not safe. For people walking. On these streets. There's often gaps in the system and the construction of these are not. Uh, adequate to provide some safety for those pedestrians who might live in a multifamily development site. And they not have a car. May need to walk to school or a job. So the idea here is, as you develop more of these along your busy corridors. They would incrementally improve that situation. Next slide please. So what do you have today? So the standards would apply generally. To these types of streets, the streets that are wider and have higher traffic volumes. Next slide please. And those streets include what are designated in your general plan today as major arterials. Primary arterial streets and collector streets. Next slide. And so what would we like to see? We don't want to see. The example on the left where a. A pedestrian. Is walking adjacent to very busy streets with, in some instances, sixty thousand cars a day. So for those beaches, busy streets, we'd like to see a buffer. So the standards prescribe. The following that you see on the right side. Next slide please. So they prescribe, describe a public round that is twenty feet wide. A wide, what we're calling a parkway zone, where you see that dark green strip. Which would include landscaping as that buffer between the busy street. A sidewalk and something that we call a transition zone. To achieve this would require a public, uh, easements in generally most cases. If there's an existing twenty foot right of way today, that would not include an easement. But if it's anything less than twenty, it would be, require a setback or an easement to accommodate that. Next slide. There are also standards for other streets, quiet streets, and generally this doesn't occur very often. Because most of the areas that are designated for multi-family development. Are on busy streets, but in fact, there may be a few instances. So to accommodate that, there are some standards for this. Next slide please. And those streets include collectors, suburban arterial streets and urban residential streets. Generally. These are your quieter streets that have less than fifteen thousand average daily trips a day if it's a collector. And clearly the residential streets don't have that, uh, level of trap. Next slide please. So what do we wanna see? Like the busy streets, we wanna see a buffer between the roadway. And the sidewalk. So traditionally, the low cost approach. Is to, uh, attach or do a curb adjacent sidewalk that you see on the left. The standards do not. Suggest that. Instead, what is suggested is a landscape upper, a little bit narrower. And also this orientation that you have direct access to residential units that might front onto that quieter street. Next slide please. So as opposed to the busy streets, a little bit narrower, but the sidewalk width, a minimum stays the same. Next slide please. There's also what we call public round transition standards. So these deal with privacy and livability for those people or. Or businesses that are on the ground for a building. So they're broken up between those two uses. And they establish requirements for anything that would happen a lot within any required setback. Next slide please. So accurate standards for residential uses, there's a multiple ways of doing. So if the first floor unit is at grade or equal in grade with the public ground. There is a required setback. There's some requirements for walls and fences and other things like that. Next slide please. And it may be something like this. So the idea here is that the ground floor would be setback. And within that setback, you would be permitted to have things such as patios. And. The setback would extend only for the ground floor. Upper floor uses could extend all the way to that. Of what we call a built-to line or that public round line that you see in the illustration on the left. Where the ground floor is notched in. But to maximize development, you allow the upper floors to extend beyond that. Next slide please. It could be landscaping at grade is another option and the buildings could be, uh, uh, always straight up rather than. Can't alert it, levering over. So it doesn't say that you have to build a, a patio. Next slide please. And in some instances, it would be permitted also to build right to the public round. If the building is raised above the sidewalk, if you will. Uh, a minimum of thirty-eight, uh, thirty inches and a maximum of forty-eight inches. Next slide please. And it might look something like this. And so the idea is if you're gonna build to that line, you may wanna have some landscaping and front door space in the street. Next slide please. Or if you have just residential units along that sidewalk. It gives people privacy. As you can see, the women walking by. Cannot peer into windows. And so that's the concern. If you build right up to the sidewalk, people will have their drapes. Closed all the time, will have the doors, uh, blackened. But, uh, what we wanna see is that transparency and have people have eyes on the street in that public realm. And if you don't raise it off the grade and adjacent to the sidewalk, you won't get that. Next slide please. There are also standards for at-grade commercial use. So what we want to promote with this standard. Is the interaction between the sidewalk and the ground floor commercial. So we want people to circulate in and out of those businesses. Uh, with ease. Next slide please. And we would expect these sorts of situations where you would have. Possibility within the sidewalk for outdoor dining. But that doesn't mean you couldn't have a setback. And also have small for course, as you see on the right. Next standard please. So the next piece of this is the site design. The area you see in the yellow and the second diagram. So this is the horizontal surface. The carpet, the placemat, then that which the building sits upon. And there is a series of standards that regulate. From the property lines, the front setback, the side setback and the rear setback of any site. So those standards are as follows. Next slide please. Landscaping. So the idea with the landscaping is if you've got multiple buildings on a development site. To unify the buildings, so they're tied together with a common thread. To enhance enjoyment and beauty of, of any sort of public plaza or landscaped area. To provide visual screening. And also to provide shade and sun and shelter for the wind. As we're seeing higher and higher temperatures. The landscaping plays a vital role in providing those kind of things that maybe we've taken it for granted in the past. Next slide please. There's also outdoor lighting. So there's, uh, multiple things that the outdoor lighting is intended to do. One and most. Importantly is to provide nighttime safety. If you have an outdoor gathering area, uh, a place to sit for mixed use restaurant, you wanna animate it. And while we have lighting, we wanna be careful that we don't have any lighting spilling over to adjacent properties. So we don't wanna create some unnecessary nuisance. So we wanna see down lighting or lighting directed away from adjacent properties. Next slide please. Utilities are a must. And they're often very slightly. And so there are standards to, to ensure that they don't distract from the visual quality of the public realm and building facades. And wherever feasible, the standards really suggest that they should be underground. And if they can't be underground, they need to be screened. Next slide please. There are standards for freestanding walls, fences and gates. And, uh, those would be surrounding things like parking lots. Separations from adjacent development. Enclosures for first floor residential units in terms of patio walls. And then enclosures for common areas, standards that regulate that. Next slide please. And finally, probably the most, uh, uh, extensive, we have standards for building design. And so the standards for building design are not a one size fits all approach. So next slide please. So what we wanna do is have three options. You can see the, the illustrations on the left. And so what these options are not prescriptive that are requiring certain types of architecture. But they do recognize that there are historic development patterns that are present in Coachella in. The greater Coachella Valley. And those are Spanish revival or, uh, mid-century modern desert modern architecture. So these, uh, extract the fundamental elements of those. But if somebody can achieve these with other types of architectural styles. That would be permitted. So again, it's not prescriptive. So what we want to do though, is to ensure that we address some issues, what we call building modulation. The form and mass of a building based on those. Uh, uh, sort of broad architectural vernaculars. So what we'd like to see is a building scale reduced, the perceived size and presence in relation to. Ex- existing development. In other words, be a good neighbor. And building massing. What we wanna make sure is that the buildings don't appear to be. Overscale. So in the intent of this is the volume of the structure is. Appears to be multiple buildings rather than one long building. Next slide please. So let's start with the, with the building modulation. So the first option applies to bigger buildings, buildings that are twenty, twenty dwelling units or larger. So these are. Generally three-story walk-up apartment buildings or mixed-use buildings that are that size. And it would apply to general neighborhood, urban neighborhood and urban employment zones. Next slide please. So what we'd like to see is to look at what we call vertical modulation. Vertical modulation means. The, uh, 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 the forming, the shaping. Uh, of the building so that it appears less tall. And there are multiple ways of doing that. But if we look at the historic vernacular more of a Spanish colonial. It has an asymmetrical arranged irregular stepped variations. So you see the diagram on the, the, the photograph on the left, that's an affordable housing project. That includes that, that vertical modulation. So this would apply only to buildings three or four stories in height that are permitted by your zoning ordinance. Next slide please. So there's standards that regulate that. And I won't get into the detail, but it really is, makes it simple and understandable. To, to meet that modulation. Next slide please. And then we've got standards that modulate. The building horizontally. So the idea here is to take that thrust of the building, the length of the building. And recess it, push it and pull it by projections or recesses. So it appears to be multiple buildings along a street frontage so that you don't have buildings. Going on and on and on so that they're smaller in scale. Uh, horizontally. So this, again, this standard only applies to buildings two stories in height. Next slide please. And there's standards that talk about that push and pull of the building, what the minimum deaths are. What the number of those are, and you see those on the left. Next slide please. Also, what we want to do is regulate the silhouette of buildings. So the, the idea is to have standards for building roof forms and materials. So, uh, you can see an example on the left. Next slide please. And so the idea is to generally promote slope roofs, recognizing that many buildings. Would have flat roofs as well so that there are. Uh, there's a percentage regulating that slope roof form. Next slide. So the second option. Is very similar to the first, but it regulates lower density buildings. Buildings that are less than twenty units an acre. So it would be buildings of nineteen. Point nine and below. So that applies to general neighborhood, downtown transition and an urban employment zone. So I'm gonna go through this one a little quicker because it's very similar to the other. Next slide please. So it's got vertical modulation with step facades. Next slide, uh, please. And there are standards that talk about that height, uh, of the facade, not the roof, but the facade. And it's the overall massing of the building, not articulated elements such as balconies or bags. Next slide please. It also has horizontal modulation. So pushing full of that long, uh, facade. You can see very similar to the option one. Next slide please. And here's the diagram and the percentages. So if you wanna come back to these, we can talk about it. But the idea here is to provide some variation without overdoing it and making the buildings overly designed and fussy. Next slide please. Reforms and materials, again, looking for that stepped arrangement of a roof. Next slide please. And then the final option. So that again, a menu developer can pick any one of these. Based on the density. So this option applies to all densities. The real, regardless if it's twenty units or less or twenty units or more. So the idea here is to look at what is more typical with desert modernism. Which has buildings that are much more hugging the, 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 the landscape. So they have more of a horizontal thrust to them. As you see in the examples before, well. So. Next slide please. That being said, we would still like to see some vertical modulation, some stepping. Next slide please. As opposed to the asymmetrical of the first two options. These could be more symmetrical. And the stepping would be less. Next slide please. We also wanted to have some push and pull on the facade so that it doesn't appear to be overly long. And those recesses and projections could be emphasized with changes in materials or colors, as you see in the. The, uh, the, the illustrations. Next slide please. And here's the standards that regulate the number of those, the width and the depth. Next slide please. So those are generally the, those not generally, those are the standards, uh, the objective standards. And so the next question is, how would you use those standards? Because it is gonna be, uh, uh. Because it is going to be uh uh regulated and guided by staff rather than the planning commission. Next slide please. And that ministerial staff review, as we mentioned before, would would have a timeline to it, and this would be discussed with the applicant at a pre-proposal conference. So it would be clear what they could submit for if they meet all requirements. Next slide please. And uh let's just move on to this next one. Uh there would be an application form that would be discussed. And so this is not a ninety percent and you pass it, it is it's a pass fail. You need to meet all the requirements. And these are uh outlined by the state in the SB three thirty uh form, and this has just been adapted for Coachella. Next slide please. And the SB thirty-five Affordable Housing Application, this gives you some additional bonuses such as the uh the uh not uh the avoiding the requirement for CEQA requirements. Next slide please. And then uh there's a timeline that's set up for when these need to be reviewed. I won't get into the detail on this. Next slide please. And the infor- information needs to be applied consistently. So there have been forms that the applicant, the property owner uh would need to fill out. Next slide please. And as part of this, there will be a checklist. And so in pre-application, because there are varying types of standards, it will be discussed which uh ODS are applicable. And then it will be up to the applicant to determine whether they're compliant. And there's a system of ways that we want to have consistently applied that will be discussed. Next slide please. First of those is there will need to be drawings. And so it's the onus of the applicant to provide drawings that illustrate how they are compliant with each of the standards. So this will include plans and sections or illustrations, and also a narrative that goes along with that. Next slide please. And here's some examples of what that would be. So for example, the standard required a certain amount of landscape area. They would have to illustrate it on a plan as shown here, and then provide a narrative. Next slide please. The narrative would be set up like this. You would identify what the standard would be. And then there would be text that discusses how that standard would be met, as you see in blue, the response to the standard. And if there are any requirements tables to prove that that standard would be met, they would need to be included as part of a seminar. Next slide please. So that's the presentation. I went through it fairly quickly. Uh it's pretty in-depth, it's pretty comprehensive, but the idea here is to be very clear and objective with it. So with that, I'm open for any questions or discussions uh at this point.
On presentation.
Yeah.
Just just quickly counsel uh adopting this, you would be applying these standards now in municipal code. Opening of public hearing, uh Gabriel, how does it impact um the last affordable housing project which is approved?
Yeah, so the so that affordable housing project, we need to comply with these standards. So there's kind of three standards that were identified, right? So one of them is the public realm. So you would, that development would have had to have provided um a landscape planner between the street curb and then the sidewalk.
Did it?
It did, it did not.
I did not. So 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 we had to bring it back or?
No, that was already improved.
So okay, so anything before today?
Right.
That's that's my, okay. Okay, cool.
Um and then the building form probably would have changed, right? So there would have been more emphasis on slope roofs on that development um. And probably some more modulation with that building on the exterior.
Do you do you see it having any impact for affordability of building affordable housing projects?
I I don't think so. Uh we did get so some comments from Colleen from uh Chelsea.
Yeah.
Edwards, um just stating that theory um concern about having the public easement, so the additional area besides the right away. Um but I I think that's important. I I don't think it's actually going to deter affordable housing. It's really making streets more walkable.
Right.
And livable, so um we.
Especially with accidents and stuff. Any any comments to counsel?
No, I think it makes sense that we apply it to multifamily mixed use development.
Um, anyone in the public?
I think you have to open that.
I opened it.
Yes, it was okay. Public hearing was opened at nine fifty-four P M. If there is anyone on Zoom, can you please raise your hand if you would like to speak on this item?
I will close uh by coming at nine fifty-seven. There are motion by council.
Motion to introduce ordinance number twelve oh six, City of Coachella Objective Design Standards for Multifamily Residential and Mixed Use Development. Zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two dash zero four and proposal to amend Coachella Municipal Code Title seventeen. Zoning adopting the objective design standards for multi-family residential development to acquire the GN general neighborhood, UN urban neighborhood, D T P V downtown, Pobiejo and D T P V transition, uh U E urban employment and neighborhoods, commercial zones.
I'll take role, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa. Council member Beedhun.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarza.
Hi.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Yeah, Gabriel, um. And Gabriel, you know, thank you for this. I think we can though, like be a little more intentional in making the presentation a little shorter. We have access to these online ahead of time and specifically community members being present, maybe we can shorten these presentations. Um, number, moving on to item number twenty-eight, City of Coachella, zoning consistency of the general plan amendment number twenty-three oh two, zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two agree and change of zone number twenty-three oh one, a proposed update of the official zoning map and zoning ordinance for consistency with the Coachella General Plan Amendments to the General Plan twenty thirty-five, an official general plan map.
Okay, council member, in the spirit of what you just said, you've heard of this presentation before, um what I can update you on is the um the direction you provided last time, so that was incorporated uh into the staff report and the proposed uh changes. Um so there were here uh here's the list. Um and so there were some requests from the public. We incorporated that. And um we continued this item because we were waiting for Airport Land Use Commission approval. And they did approve it uh last week, so it's ready to for your decision today, uh which would be uh approving the second reading of the ordinance and also adopting the resolution for the general plan amendment.
Opening public hearing at nine fifty-nine. Anyone uh in the public? Online? Council member comments? Concerns?
Before we close the public hearing, I'll just remind um everyone that we did receive a letter from Live to Rise that was forwarded to council for this item and for item number twenty-seven in favor.
Thank you for the reminder. Any uh um so anyone in the public, we'll close it at two o'clock. Um, do you have a motion?
A motion to approve City of Coachella zoning consistency update general plan amendment number twenty-three dash zero two zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two zero three and change of zone number twenty-three oh one as proposed. Update of the official zoning map and zoning ordinance for consistency with the Coachella General Plan Amendments to the General Plan twenty thirty-five and official general plan map, city initiated.
So most do have second?
I'll second.
No roll call?
Yes, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Hi.
Council member Beedhun.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Galarza.
Hi. All right, motion carries um.
Okay, so I think we can let mayor know that you give them back.
All right, mayor back. Can I keep?
Do it.
I'm gonna get you on.
All right.
You're on item number twenty-nine. Uh this is general plan amendment number twenty-three dash zero three, environmental assessment number twenty-three dash twenty zero three, general plan amendment, project assessment, general general plan land use as destinations for three areas that were evaluated as part of the city general plan areas. Gabriel.
Okay, thank you, mayor, members of the council. Uh just quick background on this, the general plan to twenty thirty-five was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Um it created the land use map that we use for the City of Coachella. Uh part of establishing the land use map, there is a boundary that cities usually identify outside the boundary called the city's planning area. And that would show where the city would um likely grow in the future, right? Which would involve um potentially future annexations and increasing a sphere of influence. Um in that general plan map, this is what you uh you could see in the general plan map here. Um there are three areas that are part of the planning area, so the planning area, meaning the area outside of the city boundaries, that did not have a designated land use. Um so one of the northern part of the city is shown by the arrow. Um one in the area that we know as P seven, um that is on the west side of the city. Um west of Calhoun Street, um the other is to the south uh between Avenue sixty and sixty-two. So the part of this effort was to establish land uses to kind of fill that gap uh in our planning area. Um typically, cities would have the land use there. It does make a city eligible to be able to amend its sphere of influence in the future. Um and LAFCO does require uh that land use to exist, that it was analyzed as part of a general plan. So um that P seven area is identified here that would have um an estate rental general plan designation. This and the intent behind this was to create land uses that would be consistent with the county. So right now, the standards that would apply to those property owners would be those standards of the county. Um the state rancher would only apply if those properties in the future were to be included um in the city boundaries. Uh this is the P seven area, so the city, um when LAFCO did its municipal services review, cities can request to expand uh their sphere of influence, and so we did propose to include this area which is between Calhoun and Jackson Street and north of Avenue fifty-two. Uh but that proposal uh was not approved by LAFCO because they indicated this area had to have been identified in the general plan. Um in the past, this is what our general plan actually did look like. It actually evaluated a very uh large planning area. Um as you could see, it went all the way past Monroe Street.
Gabriel, when would this map is within our general plan for how long? It went up to what, two thousand and fourteen or something like that, fifteen? Yeah.
So so the the actual land uses that were evaluated um with, it was a bigger area outside the city boundary. Um just some background for sphere of influence, you should you should uh in nineteen eighty-three, you should extend all the way to Jefferson Street, which is now in La Quinta. So you could see that area in yellow, which was the city's sphere of influence, and this is all to the west of the city, was quite large. And so a lot of that area um slowly decreased in size by decisions that were made by LAFCO. Um and so the P P seven area that we were talking before used to be in the city's sphere of influence. We lost that area in two thousand and six. Uh so here's a closer look at the western uh area that I mentioned, so.
And Gabriel, it would be good for this as well, that you include the infrastructure map that 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 we've also provided LAFCO because a lot of our water sewer is in this P seven area.
You are correct, yes. We have that agreement with the Coachella Valley Water District that we would provide services area sewer and water. Uh so to be consistent with what the county designation is, and so we can do this all consistent with our uh general plan E I R. We did designate this as a state rental with lower density, uh one to two point two dwelling units breaker. And then the area where um it's the um, getting the name of the funeral home right now. Uh at the corner of fifty-two and Jackson Street, that would be suburban retail, matching the county. Um again, this is what I mentioned, uh so the compatible zoning uh for the future would be the residential estate zone. Um and for that corner would be general and commercial. For the northern area, this would be the area to uh to the north of the city boundaries. This is an area that's encompass, includes um a lot of vacant land, but also um the 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 Burt Tech uh transfer station. It is in our planning area, so we identified some land uses for that area, which would be public facilities. But also uh a designation that we have in our general plan called agricultural rancher that would allow very low densities in the area consistent with the county. And the consistent zone for the agricultural rancher would be the agricultural reserve zone that allows for point zero two five dwelling units an acre or one unit per parcel. Um the last area is to the south, so all the way up to Avenue uh sixty-two. And it wasn't designated with land use, so the proposal is to be consistent with the county. So the county actually has a specific plan out there that was called the Panorama Specific Plan. And a lot of that was designed around the East Valley uh C O D campus. Uh but around that specific plan is also a lot of farms. So we would uh identify agricultural rental land uses so that it's consistent. And then we would recognize the county specific plan in that area.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna recuse myself only because it borders my community, and so.
Okay. Um and so the consistent zoning in that area would be agricultural reserve. Um one other policy that we recommend uh addressing in the general plan, there is a policy that limits when the city uh could consider annexations. And that's when it says that sixty percent of the land within the city limits is built with urban uses. Uh we thought uh that was limiting, and there's already other policies in the general plan that call for sustainable and orderly development in the city, which are shown here. So as far as environments review, we did prepare a CEQA um E I R addendum. And so this is prepared when it's determined that there are no substantial changes. Um and that wouldn't require additional review um under CEQA. That would require supplemental environment impact report uh of the general plan. So staff recommends that city council adopt uh the addendum. And also adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendments for the three areas. Um I'm available if you have any questions, but also want to mention that the secret consultant that prepared the addendum is also available if you have any questions.
Uh it's ten oh nine, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any questions from the city council? Anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on the addendums? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, it's ten oh nine. Uh I will just comment that uh thank you, I think this is very good that we're uh adopting or about to hopefully adopt these addendums that correspond with our sphere of influence. I I've said it publicly at LAFCO hearings, you know, and 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 I think it's something that this council needs to pay attention to. Um for a long time, you know, we we've gotten cheated of uh in in terms of where we're supposed to be growing and where we were intended to grow as a community. Our infrastructure is there, we have water, we have sewer. And then I believe it was twenty fourteen or somewhere right in there. Actually, actually, no, it's like oh six oh seven, there was a major move by La Quinta to throw our sphere of influence basically up the hills where we have no infrastructure and the cost of development is extremely expensive, and yet they're now trying to come in and circle us in which we're gonna continue to fight that, and I think at the same time, we're gonna, you know, make sure that people know the story of Coachella, Coachella sphere. It used to just take off, you know, what what is that west and and now we're getting relegated to go up those mountains and and like we'll never be able to build up in that whole area up there. But yeah, LAFCO and the folks at the time did this 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 move on us, and so the fact, you know. you know, we need to continue to just preserve our boundaries and and make sure that we can have diversity in our community when it comes to different housing stocks and different opportunity. In my opinion, the growth of the Coachella Valley right now. Well, we think that it's gonna be along the ten and eighty six. It's not. It's actually between Monroe Street fifty two and fifty four, where you can expect the next boom to really occur. Um, and so we just need to make sure that Coachella that we have diversity and and by that, a lot of it being proposed or or or, you know, homes and that that would help us in order to pay for public safety and and in different services. And we just need to make sure that we can uh properly get those those that land that's here. So thank you, Gabriel, and I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
Hey, I I'm questioning Carlos, uh just just because I want to make sure I I recuse myself, I need to. When when it's not our rental property, but our first home, do we need to recuse ourselves?
No.
It's the way do we need to recuse, except for instance, the T C C grant, it covers the community I live in where I own my home?
No.
It I mean, it's it depends on, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not asking if like I'm asking, do we need to recuse yourself? That's what I'm asking, yes or no?
On which item this is?
No, uh, where my first home is.
Well, any any property you own, obviously, you have financial interest in it.
Yeah, but do I need to recuse myself when the first one were only rental properties?
No, also, yeah, I mean, any, any, you might have a financial interest. So home, any home rental, any property you have, if you have a financial interest.
So the park, uh, well, can you, can you give a precision about that? Like, if there's a park near my house or?
I I think, yeah, that's, I think we can do that later. We can do this offline. But yeah, generally, it's any, 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 any financial interest you have that potentially can impact that that's where you have to come conflict yourself even and dealing with real property, it's within, it's a presumption if you're within five hundred feet that if.
Yeah, but 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 your home?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's specific.
Yeah. A real, real property. Yeah, I mean, we can, we'll talk offline.
Go to the next. The last one. That's weird now. Oh, we had the motion. Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash forty nine, adopting an addendum to the Coachella general plan update environmental impact report, finding that determining that the additional environmental review is not required pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Um, section fifteen one six two and adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash fifty approving the general amendment plan and number twenty three oh two approving tax modification to chapter four land use and community char character element and a change to figure four dash twenty three of the general plan twenty twenty land use and community character element entitled general plan for designation map.
I'll second.
I'll take role. Council member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye.
Here is, we'll move forward now on the on public hearing regarding resolution number twenty three dash fifty two. Uh, go ahead and open the public hearing at ten. Uh, by council member Delgado back into the meeting, we'll take a step of course.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. This is an annual item. Um, it is the annual assessment for the landscape lighting maintenance districts. Um, the uh we set the public hearing in the June twenty eighth meeting. This is the public hearing during the setting of the public hearing, the preliminary engineer's report was attached. Uh, what you'll be adopting is a final engineer's report and approving collection of these district assessments um on the county on the county.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the committee or I'm sorry, the council on the resolution two thousand twenty three dash fifty two? Again, this is an annual item of assessment for our lighting and landscape maintenance district. Anyone in the speaker queue? Seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close.
I'll make a motion to approve uh item number thirty.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call?
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Ah.
Mayor Hernandez?
I move on now to item number thirty one, and this is also an annual collection of residential sanitary sewer rates for fiscal year twenty three dash twenty four. Uh, Costello?
Yeah, you, as you mentioned, Mayor, uh, this is an annual item. Um, this is for the collection of residential sanitary sewer rates and short. Uh, we had about two hundred parcels that are added to the tax roll. Our uh our collection is calculated to be about four point four million dollars. That's about three hundred thousand above a last year's report. The reports attached to your uh agenda packet. Um, there's any questions I'm here to answer.
You gotta go ahead and open the public hearing at ten sixteen. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council? Seeing that, I'm gonna go and close the public hearing at ten sixteen. Uh, what are the wishes of the city?
I think the motion is adopt resolution numbers S D twenty three oh four.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
I move forward on item number thirty two. This is the resolution uh two thousand twenty three dash forty eight authorizing the establishment of our annual special tax for City of Coachella Community Facilities District number two thousand five dash zero one for law enforcement.
Hello, members of the city council, mayor. This is also an uh annual item, so I can just go over some um quick specifics for the special districts that were established to attain additional funding for the police and paramedics services. Uh, we'll be adding one hundred ninety eight new residential units and the levy will go from, uh, let's go. From one, one thousand three hundred forty eight to one thousand four hundred forty nine. Um, and then we'll be submitting this by uh August to the county auditor. We have any questions?
Any questions?
Opening, you know.
Oh, let me go ahead and open the public hearing at ten seventeen. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address us on adoption of resolution two thousand twenty three dash forty eight? Seeing now, and I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing at ten seventeen. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the adopt adopt resolution number twenty three dash forty eight.
There's a motions or a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye. Move on now. This is a adopt resolution two thousand twenty three dash fifty one. Approving a thirty six month renewal of an entertainment permit number two thousand and two dash oh two for the Rancho Escondido event venue, an outdoor entertainment venue located on eight point six acre site at eighty five three twenty one Avenue forty four. Applicant in Leonel Lopez and Margarita Lopez.
Mayor and council. So this item uh previously went to city council. Um, so this entertainment permit issued about a year ago, uh, they have to get a renewal for thirty six months um per our code. This is located in South Avenue forty four um on a ranch uh residential state uh property. It is an equestrian property, uh, but they also um have an event venue at the location. Uh, this is a larger vicinity map, and there's a Terolago community to the north. Uh, they have uh family events, birthdays, anniversary, the wedding, and spartacus practice. Um, and it's there was a seventy, seven hundred fifty one foot long driveway that extends from Avenue forty four uh to the site. The events uh occur on Saturdays uh under the permit and um are required to end at midnight. The maximum of two hundred guests is permitted, and they have to have onsite land license security. Uh, there are existing improvements, the plaza kitchen building, uh restroom building, and uh wedding ceremonies are held in the turf area. They do have onsite parking. And this is a site plan that was approved last year, and so they've proposed to maintain the the same uh type of layout. Now, um, they did prepare a noise study last year, and there was um an environmental document that was approved by the city council. Um, since that time, the applicant, based on uh comments from staff, um, has adjusted where the sound systems uh would be oriented. And so since April, they they have adjusted it. So if you you could see on the site plan, um, there is a, looks like it says cabana, that's the stage. The music uh is is oriented in a southeast direction. So um they've actually moved all the sound equipment towards the middle where everything goes completely south um oriented in the south direction, so it has minimal impact to neighbors. Um, some pictures of the existing driveway, the existing improvements, the buildings that they have on site. Uh, so with this, the city council does have the ability to impose other conditions if they feel it suitable related to ours operation, noise control, traffic control, number of persons uh permitted, uh safety and security, and use of metal detectors. A status recommendation is to approve the thirty six month renewal of the permit and subject to the condition of approval. Available for questions if you have any.
All right, this is a public hearing item. Go ahead, look in the public hearing at ten twenty one. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the city council? Welcome.
Yes, I have a request to speak for from Bill Collins.
Bill, welcome, Bill. And thank you for joining us. Been quite a.
Out of marathon.
Well, it's our last meeting of the summer, and so they got it all in.
I move in Terolago north of this venue, and I'm asking that you um decline your application for the renewal. Um, I'm emphasize with personnel and group properties rights, but this has become a real nuisance. A quality of life issue. Uh, it says up there that music ends at twelve, that's not occurring. So, um, um, it's, I have a uh child who's medically fragile and um, if he's not able to get a night, get a good night's sleep, then it creates a problem for him. So um, I appreciate the improvements that they made, but it's really become a quality of life issue because the noise goes is quite loud. It goes on past midnight. And I suspect that if it was venue close to you guys, you would understand what I'm talking about as far as disturbance of quality of life.
It, there's a big festival that looks like by the street down the ride and it's every.
So I'm asking you both, no, I'll renew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, speaker?
And if you can please bring me a breakfast form with your name on it, that would be great. We have them located in the back. Yeah, okay. So you can just come up, state your name, and then provide me with the form when you're done.
Welcome. Everybody, um, my name is Deborah Schuster. And um I spoke to you, um, well, see, an hour and a half, it would be a year ago, um, on the twenty seventh last year. Um, uh, I also live in Four Seasons, Terolago on Burano Place, which backs up onto Avenue forty four. We don't have anything but behind us other than Avenue forty four. Um, and when I came in last year, um, my concern was that um for the previous six months or so before the venue was permitted, the noise was excessive um to the point where we had to keep our windows closed. We could hear, uh, it it was incredibly loud. Um, and we were given, um, uh, there was acknowledgement at the meeting last year, um, before you approved the permit that, um, that, um, the the noise issue would be ameliorated, that the owners um agreed, um, that they would do something about it. Um, that didn't happen. Um, I personally have corresponded with Renee Rosales multiple times, maybe ten fifteen times since um November of last year, when we realized that nothing had improved. Um, Gabriel Perez came out and took um measurements at our gate. Um, the problem is that um, before these changes were made, um, which I don't think were made in April, because in May I came home from the hospital on a Saturday night, and the music was still going um very loud at midnight. Um, but basically, it seems as though the speakers were pointed directly at our street because no one else, none of the other communities could hear anything. I mean, even in our community, people at the front of the community couldn't hear anything. Um, I was told to bring a USB drive because I wanted to play just a short clip um for you. And then I was told when I got here that your lawyers advised you that that wasn't possible, but that I could play it off my phone, if that's okay. Um, this was about three months ago at eleven forty five at night. Um, I turned my phone down so that I right outside her window. So that gives you an idea. Again, it was just three months ago.
Nine forty five?
Eleven forty five, yeah. Um, can I have more than three seconds just to wrap up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
You've been a long time.
Uh, I mentioned last year that that my personal objective was not to not allow the venue to to do what they do. My husband is a professional musician. He makes a living playing at parties. Um, but this is, as well said, it's really turned into a quality of life issue. Um, and um I don't know, you know, I I pray that the changes that they've made will mean that we can't hear it at our house. But if we can, I would ask that um that someone come out. In fact, you're all invited to my home for cocktails or coffee or something on a Saturday night, but it's so different at the gate than it is in our backyards that um doing the re- doing readings at the back gate or on Avenue forty four is not gonna tell you. It's not gonna show you what it's like to live where we live and listen to this until midnight almost every Saturday night during the season. Um, so that would be, that that would be my request. Um, the other thing that really bothers me is that it goes on until midnight. If we couldn't hear it, I don't care if it goes on until three in the morning, but it seems like the amplification should be turned down at ten o'clock at night, again, if it continues to be um, a problem on our street. Um, you know, we love living here. We just don't want to listen you know, to this music until midnight, so loud in our backyards.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you.
Yeah, Thomas Aguilar, and I had sent Renee uh a complaint about the noise back in April. I'd also called in previously to that. Never got any response. Uh, he did send me a reply, which was just kind of a form reply. And I did follow up with him. He said, well, you know, we went out and measured it, but your own requirement, your own uh noise ordinance nuisance orient says you're supposed to take the readings at fifty feet from the source, which would be fifty feet from the speaker, not fifty feet from our back gate, which is almost half a mile away. I can't use my backyard any night that they have that. I can't. I have to keep the sliding door closed. I had a police officer come out, uh Riverside County Sheriff Deputy uh Zamora came out to my house. We were sitting in the living room at eleven o'clock at night, and he could hear every word they were saying with windows closed, doors closed. And I'm half a mile away. So I know that they are violating the decimal reading fifty feet from their speakers. There's no way. The other thing is, I looked at the map that uh of their layout. And they have a bandstand. I have a feeling that the bandstand is directed straight at our property because uh Officer Zamora lives in another part of Terolago and cannot hear it. So I have a feeling that they're projecting this, which is just a tunnel effect on directing the the music straight at us. And if it cut off at nine or ten, that would be one thing. But I mean, I can't even use it from the time it starts till midnight. I can't use it. The windows vibrate in my house. I mean, it's ridiculous. And they don't seem to be able to do anything about it because they said they did it in April, they changed it. Well, in June, it was still going on. So something's, something's not right. I mean, it's just a constant problem, and I would recommend that that it not be approved, or at least if it's approved, then then put a condition on it for ninety days and see if there's any complaints from the residents. If we can still hear it, then it makes sense to be able to, uh, uh, they need to make some other adjustments or some other arrangements or not do it at all. Because it doesn't seem to me that there's any effort on their part to actually ameliorate the problem, the nuisance itself. Because it doesn't seem to me that there's any effort on their part to actually ameliorate the problem, the nuisance itself.
Thank you, Tomas. Any other speaker?
Yeah, is there someone raising their hand on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Margarita Lopez. I'm here by my side is, uh, Lionel Lopez, my husband. We are the owners of the property on Avenue forty-four and Dillon, which is eight five three two one, Avenue forty-four. Since we've been operating, we've had numerous, uh, groups of. We actually spent for about four individuals that have been the same. Individuals complaining, uh, they are coming from Charalago Four Seasons. They've complained about the venue being too close to their community. They've complained about the noise. Um, they've, they've complained about numerous things. It's not only the venue. They were complaining about the crops, the farmers. Uh, firing those propane shots to scare the birds, the, um. Other animals from eating their crops. Uh, they've complained about the dump site being too close to the area. I think at one point they, they actually requested Dillon Road to be closed down because, uh, there was a lot of traffic in that area. Got to keep in mind that they live in the city, city of Vino, which is the city of festivals. City of Vino has numerous festivals. Let's talk about Stagecoach, um, Coachella Fest. We can hear the noise all the way to the property. I wonder if the complaints come. Go, go to the city of Vino for the same. Uh, we've been working closely with, uh, planning. Um, code enforcement regarding the mitigation of the noise. We've done. Many changes and improvements to the property to mitigate that issue. Uh, I believe. Renee and, um. Gabriel have everything documented. As far as many times that we've met and they, that they've actually contacted us regarding the noise issue. We did a higher LSA to conduct the study, which provides suggestions on the sound equipment. We got to keep in mind that this is a low density noise area, which can indicate that any noise will be heard in that area, and even then will be. Uh, within the municipal code limits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other speaker?
I don't see anyone else raising their hand on Zoom.
No other speaker?
No, no.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven, ten thirty-three. Counsel? Gabriel, uh, can you provide me a, uh? Um, the map of the site? See if you get the aerial in. To Leonel and the, uh, Leonel and Margarita's point. This is a, oh, a low density noise area, so sound does carry. And then, um. Which way are the, is the? The stage, which way is it pointed here?
So the, the stage.
And by the way, the proper name of the elevated enclosed is called a band shelf.
Okay, all right, it's, 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 it's pointed in the, the southeast direction. Um, since that time, I believe the applicant can talk about it. It's either April, May where the change was made. They moved the speakers so that it's not in the southeast direction because it looked like the sound was. Potentially impacting the property owners.
Can you point it out like, cause I could, you're pointing at the screen and I'm like, but.
I don't know. May. See what I can do here. Okay. Okay. So when Renee and I would go out to observe noise that was happening, um. The noise you would hear is more like in this area, right? So based on that, and they still were not. Violating the municipal code, right? There were times or certain points where, where it does. Right at, at times, but it's a weighted average over a ten minute period, so they don't exceed the noise ordinance. Um, limits. Uh, but we did mention that to the applicant that to make adjustments based on what we were hearing, right?
Okay, so that, so then our noise ordinance is at what decibel?
I believe it's.
It's fifty-five?
Here's five, fifty-five at six to ten.
And then.
Forty-five, uh, ten to six.
This property is a, uh. A residential area?
It's a residential.
There, the, the ranch property is residential, okay. There is no.
Um, just a couple of interesting things to note, too. When you take noise. Um, measurements from the street exceed seventy decibels, right? So even just the traffic exceeds. Um, the noise, um, coming from the venue. Um. It does, so we have the measurements, so we can provide that to, to council. So one of the things that we asked, um, the applicant to do. Was to, to figure out if there's adjustment that they can make that would limit the noise, right? Even though they're not exceeding the noise limits in the code. We want them to see if they can be, uh, good neighbors and address some of the complaints that we were getting. So they did move the sound system, so it's in the southerly direction, because in the southeast direction. It may find out the noise where it's impacting the residents near the entrance of Avenue forty-four.
So point that out again. Um, in, in the map.
So let me point to where it's at, and this is a older aerial. But the stage is about here, right? And then, so the noise would go in this direction.
Oh, cool.
So what they do now is they have the sound system kind of next to it. But so that the noise is going in the direction of the south, away from the community. Since that time, you know, I asked Renee, is there, is there any noise impacts since then? Have we received complaints? He says he hasn't received any complaints, right? Um, so that's why we're comfortable with the council making decision to extend the thirty-six months. Um, so the city council could decide, you know, to add conditions. You know, uh, thirty-six months is a period, you know, a long time. So, you know, if there's conditions that you want to add, you, you could do that with this project. There are conditions already that address some of this, so if they exceed noise limits on a consistent basis. We can require them to have noise measuring devices so that we don't always have to go out there, right?
Yeah.
When we get a complaint.
How, how many times have you gone out there to measure?
On there, I've gone out there twice. And I think Renee's been out there three times.
So five times, and then in those five times. Did, there was no violation over the ten minute average?
Not, not the municipal.
So it might have spiked and then it just went down.
Uh, in the. Layout there is in the agenda. The. What's, where is the street facing where in that app?
There's another one.
There is the.
That one, this one, yeah. Um, so the street would be like, if this, that was north, it would be north, right? About seven hundred feet.
So now it's, now the, the stage is going southeast where it's not supposed to.
Um, yeah, so the sound equipment would be in, in this location. Uh, so that it's oriented towards the south. And that was based on, uh, consultation with their noise consultant. From LSA.
And Alice is a pretty reputable firm.
Okay. I'm still. I'm just sad I haven't been to a party here. Sounds like they're fun.
I have.
Oh, wow.
Multiple times.
Well, you know, I, I live behind, uh. Fifty-three, behind two, three. There is. Just going to the way, I walk outside sometimes and you might hear the noise, but. I, I live probably the same distance away from some of these homes are.
Excuse me, can you blow your mic?
And it's also pretty open space, so I, it travels and there's a big funnel, and so I'll hear it sometimes, um. And, you know, but it's, it, it's. Usually comes, it's like a spike, so it do, it does come in spike, but there the, the noise, I think the way it's, and they've fixed it, so now the, they created like a. Uh, they added something so the noise isn't reverberate as much anymore, so I'm seeing what they did here, hopefully. So they. Give her recommending a thirty-six month extension or?
Well, that's what the, the code allows is the renewal is thirty-six months.
Is that what you're recommending that you go up to thirty-six months?
I, I do want to just, um, quickly comment is. To the folks that are here, I mean, I, I completely. Understand, you know, why, you know, the sound of the music, you know, what would bother you and I. You know, but I do think that at the same time, I don't want to be, I don't want to keep this ranch. From being able to continue to earn and generate revenue. And I said this the last time is that they've made a lot of improvements there. Um, and I just, I do want to make sure that at least that investment. Is bringing something back outside, just paying, you know, the cost that they've already put up front. I live out in that area. I, I don't hear the music. But I do hear fantasies outdoor events. I do hear their music. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if, if they're also, you know, listening to that music since it's outdoors. Um, and I, I also, uh, agree with, with the applicant about how noise would travel there since there isn't anything else. Around, and so while it is, um. For me, uh. Understandably, I do understand that the music, um, you know, bothers you, but, but for me, I would. Recommend the approval. Of the thirty-six months. So, and now I'll, I'll leave that there.
Is that a motion, Councilmember?
Yes.
There, a second? Wait, one second?
A second?
A second, I, I am going to say that, um. It's, it's always a, you know, on, on the part of the ranch owners, it's. Just important to recognize that they're going to have, you know, neighbors that are. Are, uh, that don't like the noise, you know, and so hopefully there's a, a constant attempt. To try to mitigate the noise and, and. There are. Things that they could do such as, you know, and I've seen that they wrapped the property with, uh. Landscaping. Uh, they have put it like, it looks like there's ficus. That are out there and then maybe they need to let them grow a little bit better. And then even on the area that, that, uh. Wherever they can, like adding trees, there's some trees that can also help in breaking up the sound. Uh, in terms of the way it travels. Sound does carry, they can carry a mile. Because there isn't anything that's, that's, uh, breaking it up. But it really, it really does go back to. The idea of what's a nuisance, you know, if, if under the law. The, 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 the decibel reader is, is not, it's not violating the term either forty-five decibels or fifty-five. At the ten minute average. That, and that's the way the law is written. You know, what you're hearing is noise and, and at least, or you're hearing something, you know, and it may not be pleasant to. Folks' ears, et cetera, but it's not violating the law. But, but I, I think that's the, the thing for us is to figure out, you know. I, i- is to apply the law where deemed appropriate, and at this case, our staff is telling us that the readers. On five different occasions have not seen the five. The, the ten minute average of violation, so I got to go with that. There is a motion and there's a second, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitan?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye.
Wish carries, we're, we're out of public comments, uh, council reports. We'll take a look at it. Thank you. Thank you. Council, start to my right.
Quick comments, um. Was able to attend the Coachella Prospera, and, um, shout out to Selena, she's still in there. Um, the boxer and, uh, for the good work and the whole staff, um, really good turnout, you know, KDI. Uh, and all the different partners over there. Um, I was able to go. Ironically, to the one for the small businesses, which I was not invited to, I just happened to be in the office that day. And they're like, you want to go to this? And I'm like, well, why is it not on my calendar? But okay. Um, that was really informative. I didn't really discuss too much. I was just kind of hearing and, and, you know, the good thing about small businesses being in purchase pain, so. In that, and then. I remember to, where your, um, bug repellent and mosquitoes are vicious out there, so if you need, um. Uh, uh, in September or maybe October, we can bring the mosquito vector control to a presentation, or, and maybe they can give us some free, um. They had some good mosquito repellent on, so. And it's later, so that's my, um, only comments, and I hope to see everyone tomorrow. Um, and I want to hear about your all's, um, fun, um. Also, y'all were able to go to and learn about stuff, so. That's it. Two minutes, that's fine.
All right, I'm trying to keep it brief. We've been here for a while, uh, but yeah, great job, Selena. I attended the. The, uh, Coachella Prospera event. It was very good, very well attended, um, a lot of good information. Um, the only thing is, you know, definitely just kind of keep the community. Um, engaged, so hopefully we're able to have, you know. A couple more meetings and keeping them informed as to, you know, where we are in the process and the timeline. I think it's always good. A lot of times, um, entities and jurisdictions, they'll, you know. Kind of share, you know, this is what we're doing, but then there's no follow-up, so. You know, just keeping them informed with that. And, um. Earlier this month, uh, I had the great opportunity of, uh, going to New York on behalf of the city. And it was for the Naleo Conference. We had sessions all day, but it was very, very informative. Um, it was a great space, uh, lots of Latino leadership. And it was just very empowering. I mean, very, very empowering. Um, great opportunity to meet people and also to share a lot of ideas and share. You know, what other folks are doing in their communities, and so it's that opportunity to, to be innovative and just. Come back very, very motivated, so it was a really great opportunity, um, a few sessions. Uh, that we attended, um, they went into, you know, entrepreneurship and how. How Latinos are doing in that, in that area. And one of the things that I found most interesting is they shared some statistics regarding, you know, Latinos and, and how difficult sometimes it is for them to get. Um, loans that are higher, or that are higher than fifty thousand dollars, and so. It was great to kind of be able to hear that and, and just see, okay, you know, as a city, what can we do to help? You know, celebrate our, our entrepreneurs that we have here in the city? And how can we find ways to be able to assist them with funding that we have available? So. It was a really great, um, experience and, you know, hopefully my colleagues are, you know, able to attend. I, I believe they have it annually, so I think it's a really, really good opportunity. To come back very motivated. Um, and then on Friday last week. I was able to attend the Strategic Growth Council was actually here, and I know some folks from the staff, um, they had the great opportunity of going as well. And, um, again, you know, props to Selena who was over there with the director from the get-go, I think. She got, she was the first one that got to her, like no one had said hi yet, and she just went in, sat right next to her and was like, all right. So it was really nice to see that, you know, considering that we're applying, so I thought it was really nice, um, you know, props to you, Selena, for doing that.
Thank you.
But yeah, and so they, again, they mentioned, you know, the different funding streams that they have. Um, and it was great just to kind of, you know, talk to them and mingle and. Hoping that, you know, they remember our faces and they remember the city of Coachella was present, so, um. I think those are all, oh, I was invited to, um, Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia's office yesterday. And, um, I spoke to some of their interns that they have, and so then that reminded me of the interns that we have. Um, and hopefully we're able to get maybe like a little report on what they've been working on, who they've been with, you know, this time. I don't know when their internship is over, but I think it would be really great to circle back on that. And then just with that, uh, Gabe, if we can also get. Um, an update on how our youth advisory council is doing. Did we get a lot of applications? Have we had any meetings? Um, who's kind of leading that role and, and yeah, just so we can get some feedback on that. Um, who's kind of leading that role and and yeah, just so we can get some feedback on that. And that's it for me.
Thank you, council member.
So for a SCAG update, um we approved eleven million. Eight hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars um to RCTC. So two point three million dollars is going to the RTA Go Micro Micro Transit Pilot Program, another two million is going to the Vehicles Mile. Travel Study, another three million is going to the Core Capacity Innovative Transit Study. And then another two million dollars for the Coachella Rail Station Feasibility Study. And one point seven million, which was a parcel of what was recommended by RCTC. For the CB Link Community Connectors Analysis, um I believe that RCTC um was the. Was the commission that received, or Riverside County, the largest portion from SCAG. So that's great news, um for the Airport Commission, what they're looking at doing is allowing for sponsorships. And advertisement opportunities, um so I think that's a great opportunity for. The city of Coachella and neighboring cities to start highlighting um a lot of stuff that we're doing, whether it's a downtown or whatnot. But there's, you know, thirty thousand people that are using the airport every single day. For Sunline, as we seen earlier, is that we approved four hundred thousand dollars for the project management of the transit hub. We have our new CEO, uh she did not facilitate today's meeting, but September she will begin to. Um, I also went to on Monday is um, we did a little um. I guess celebration for a a senior, his name was Prospero Montez Perez. And um usually, when it comes to any individual in the city, I always contact my parents because they know so many people. And so I contacted my dad, and he says, yes, I know Prospero. So we've been friends for a long time, he lived in Carver Track. Then I called my mother, I said, did you know Prospero? She says, yes, he wanted to marry your grandmother. And so it was a bit funny, but also it just shares how long we've all known each other and. How many of our residents have worked at the um. Cal date uh for decades, so for uh Prospero worked there for thirty three years. And so, you know, he's, he was a great individual. Um, I'm disappointed that we weren't able to talk about the city council meetings um this evening. Uh and that's because it's a, it's a big deal for me, it's important. Um that we're not canceling meetings and that we're making every effort to continue having meetings at the set date. Because what it does is it backs everybody up. And for the directors, you know, when you learn that there's a cancellation of a meeting, I know you have to have timelines. I know you have to have timeframes of what you're, you know, of what you're working on, and there's sometimes deadlines. And as well as that, if we have a member of the community who wants to attend, even if it's one resident. I prefer to have the scheduled meeting just to have that person come in. Um, next month, we're going to have another council meeting for the League of Cities, and I have proposed this. Uh last year, the year prior, is that we reschedule it instead of just counseling altogether. These meetings have been extremely long because we have two agendas packed into one. Yeah, thirty one items today, and so while it is also because we're going for the summer break, but it's also because we have. Two agendas stacked into one. And then lastly, um you know, we had two shootings today, one at eight thirty in Balboa. And then we had another shooting at nine forty and an individual was shot, so. You know, going back to what we discussed and also the importance. Of constantly having public safety conversations are critical, so those are all my comments, thank you.
You get those updates.
Since last meeting, uh you know, as I mentioned before, I really took back on on uh. On the commission, so I haven't had any commission meetings, uh. Did get a chance to attend some community events, including uh the Coachella Prospera event, again, uh we talked about it earlier, so won't. Uh mention it further, um also get a chance to attend the National Association of Latino Electric Official Conference. Uh very educational, a good opportunity to meet uh other electric officials in other areas and. Learn about the projects that they're doing in similar communities like ours and other and some other uh other different challenges. Uh it was interesting being in the East Coast and, you know, because here in Coachella, you know, the Latinos were mostly Chicanos and Mexicans. And uh our food is way better, so you know, it just makes us miss homes, uh. We have breakfast and we're eating eggs without hot sauce or and without those pies. In these calls, that's that's very interesting, a way of uh eating, um but uh. Reminded us that we're very fortunate to have been born Chicanos, um but regardless, the overall, the the conference, uh it was very educational. A great opportunity to network uh and attend these uh presentations and the luncheons. Um, as well as the dinner, uh uh one day, the it so. Uh they were all jam packed, even at lunch, we were even uh eating, but also listening to. Uh whether it was, uh you know, the governor of New York in a breakfast or another times a. Uh key elected officials, well, there was a a one panel focused on Latina empowerment, and that was very uh uh interesting to to listen and hear and learn from. Um, I look forward to continuing attending, I regret not having attended Naleo. This is my seventh year as an elected official, and it's my first time attending Naleo Conference. Um, so I look forward to to attending uh next year and and seeing how we can even bring it here, uh next year it is in Las Vegas. Um, and so, uh uh we look, you know, it it'll be a little closer, we'll be able to drive, and so. Um, other than that, I, you know, I I don't have any items to bring forward at the moment, I, you know, productive meeting. Um, I just, you know, I think we can, uh you know, just the Gabriel and and Elder Gabriel, we, you know, I think some of these items that we we've discussed many times and. I think they can be shortened in terms of the presentation, um you know, it's unfortunate that. Some people need to wait till ten P M to to make comments, you know, and so. Uh you know, obviously wanna hear them out, unfortunate for them, it didn't go their way, but. Um, you know, it is what is, I do appreciate the efforts in terms of the, you know, expanding our 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 general fund, our general plan to. You know, meet our intention to, you know, expand our sphere of influence. Um, so that, 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 that's it for me, I look forward to our next weeks. Enjoy your August, uh for staff, hopefully you all have great vacations planned before school starts. Uh in city of San Bernardino, the school district, uh their their school starts at the end of this month, fortunately for us, we don't start till the twenty seventh of August.
All right, thank you for those comments. Um, a few things, I I will say that if if we foul and obviously if the city manager felt that. Um, you didn't have enough time to address some of the items on the agenda. Uh, I'm sure this council would have listened to you or will listen to you and make sure that. You're getting the appropriate approvals that you need, and so. Uh I I look around in the city and there's a ton of projects that are happening, nothing feels delayed or stopped. Uh, in fact, I think, you know, I'm talking to staff, things are moving accordingly and they kind of like the the movement and pace. But in terms of projects that are getting done. Uh in terms of what I learned, I've made some contacts with the Bureau Reclamation with our water department. Uh to try to get us a one point five million dollar grant uh for uh. The replacement of our meters, uh and so that was very, very good, and if we get that grant alone. The trip to Naleo was worth it, in addition, I've talked about. Uh the heat action plan that I want this council to take seriously, it's more than just planting trees or shade equity. It it is about creating human and social capacity and expanding on. Uh, the council member Dr. Figueroa, you mentioned uh our cooling centers, we should have those seven days out of the week. But in addition, there's a lot of homes out here that lack. Uh installation windows, uh they they lack. Uh proper cars, et cetera, and we really need to think through how it is that we're gonna help our residents stay cool. Actually, just wanna say stay cool, but just stay healthy and avoid an emergency, and a lot of that requires. Building social and 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 community capacity. And as Latinos, we have that, you know, when when somebody's A C breaks and we all go to grandma's house again and and uh and. Sleep in, sleep in the living room, anyhow, uh the those are the things that we really, really need to talk about, and believe it or not, Phoenix is leading the way. Uh moreover, uh I'm gonna bring back uh come the fall. Uh Gabriel, we we need to really look at, you know, are we ready for uh this new economy, this this uh. You know, transition from carbon based machines to, you know, electric based machines, and. What is it that we're gonna need to do to get our residents ready for that? And that means, you know, upgrading our infrastructure, that means uh making sure that there's. Opportunities for per people to purchase cars, but I think there's more research that needs to really be done on our end as staff. And maybe this is a good uh uh assignment for the interns to really study those two areas, either the. The heat action plan as well as the uh uh grid readiness and and electric vehicle readiness. Those are the major topics of concern, in addition, there's also hundreds of millions of dollars available for workforce. And we need to come up with a comprehensive workforce plan that puts people to work in these green industries, and we've met some really good folks that. Um, can assist us in applying for these dollars, but one of the things we need to do is we need to work with. Our nonprofits and transition at least one or two of them from, you know, uh advocacy to like direct action. And cause right now what we have is a lot of uh nonprofits that are really advocacy based. And will bring up an issue, but in terms of direct action, we need to really think about how we can. Uh get dirty and actually, you know, get our our our. Our our hands and and feet dirty to really do the work. Um, in addition, uh had an opportunity to. Uh, you know, my other endeavor, travel, travel to Austin, Texas, and have seen. What arts and music is doing for that economy, um obviously, they have South by Southwest. While Coachella is not in our city, we do have the name and we do have the namesake. But the opportunity to really focus in on arts and music and provide a good avenue for employment. I think it's something that we need to continue to study, and one of the things that they've done is they built a. A social infrastructure, an infrastructure that really helps incentivize um musicians and artists. And provides housing and and wraps around, you know, kind of that that network that they need in order to be able to survive. And one of the cool things that that I've noticed about Coachella, and and you have too, if you really think about it. You know, we do have a really amazing music scene, uh there's two girls that are actually here on the weekends, they're actually coming from Mexicali. With their dad and and they 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 sing Norteñas, there's another group of about four. Uh young men who have a little bajo sexto and they're really good, and we have all the chirinas too that come and play. And and then we have all the neighborhood, you know, Norteños and bandas and mariachi. That if we really focus in and try to create and support them, we can start to attract and really kind of facilitate this arts and music. A scene in the city, and I think, I think it makes a lot of sense, why? Because it's culturally relevant too. We have a very young population, twenty six, twenty four, you look at, you know, four members of the council were under forty years old. You know, and and uh I think that's that's something that we need to really focus in on. And uh those are just avenues of us really kind of thinking about what we can do in the fall. Moreover, I've gotten a lot of feedback um about the quality of our roads, so I'm gonna ask in the fall if you can work with. Our our public works director and and also our engineer to really bring out our our road plan and and put it to work in the next. Three to six months to really get a head start on our road plan. Uh I wanna talk a little bit about uh our entry points and our monuments, um. I remember when our monuments for the entry got went up. They never came to the city council, that was, it was a public works project that got done, and if you ask me, like, I look at those entry points. And they could be way better, you know, the monuments could be way better, they could be more substantial. We really need to start thinking about that, uh Coachella, we have a lot, a lot of good momentum, and those are little details that matter. To council member Dotato's points, the mediums are are tired on on um. Caesar Chavez, I was gonna say Harrison, too, and we need to address some the 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 lights, for example. They haven't been adjusted in years, and I'm not even sure if they they magnify the palms or the fronts. That's something that we need to really look at, uh on the interns, absolutely, the council member vegan is right, we need to. Uh know our interns, but I think more than anything, we should do a profile on them. Who are they, where they went to school, where they grew up, what they study and what are they doing with the city, and do little videos on them. To really let the community know that our intern program is working, you know, and I I I I've met. Al- almost all of them, I think, and they're all bright, young individuals coming from the city and with a lot of potential. And the interesting thing is, a lot of bright, young. Kids or students are are not coming into government, so the more we can do to kind of facilitate, you know, government jobs, I think is a good thing. And then, um, there's one more, Maritza, uh with respect to the uh the volleyball courts. Um, there is a difference between beach sand and field sand, and we have field sand out there. It's not beach sand, and uh we need to come up with a public works project to address it, that gets a lot of use. And uh we should be replacing that field sand with some real beach sand, and uh cause. If you play in it, you your your feet get really uh torn up. Don't happen on the beach, but we we need to look at that. And then lastly, uh and and out of, and out of boy, out of girl, to all of our staff, we've been working. Probably for the last three years on with RCTC. Um, and mayor, myself and staff to obviously site or to get the money to do a site. Site study, I can let you know this, that. There are a lot of people that are envious of where and they're wondering how we got this done, but we got it done. The, what is going to occur is that the end site of the train is Coachella. And we're gonna need to be able to turn the train around, and that's why this this dollar is coming here. So more than likely, the train is gonna go anywhere from Avenue forty eight down to fifty four, somewhere in there. And what we're gonna have to do is turn the train around, and so we'll hear from, this is just the beginning potentially of uh. Of what's gonna occur, but you know, I I I know different property owners are gonna have one opinion or another. But I I think ultimately, we're very fortunate that we got this two million dollars, I know we're working with RCTC. Uh to have them be the lead on it, and they've agreed, Gabriel, I think I would let you know that. Um, but but really, I think we did a really good job of of making sure. Is that the two million dollars got here, and if you think about it. You know, we can have a train stop somewhere in the city, but we'll have a transit stop. You know, we we all, we also needed to start thinking about. Private sector, right, like, so for example, at the Food for Less Shopping Center. Um, you have righteros that that will take people to Mexicali. Um, at the food for at the, and I'm sorry, it's not the smart and final shopping centers, the smart and China. And then at the smart and final two, you have, you know, the private buses that stop there because they like Burger Box and they eat right there. But thinking about them and then where they can fit in this kind of puzzle is gonna be important, and it's gonna, it's some really cool and great opportunities. Um, that we have on our horizon, and so it's a good time for the city of Coachella, you know, like the next. Next few months, there's gonna be a lot of capital improvement projects, a lot of good things happening, and. We just need to keep up that momentum, and you all heard the other good news too about the Arts and Music Lane. And then that's gonna get going, and if you haven't heard the other good news about. The CV link, the CV link is also gonna get started in the fall, and so. Expect a lot of construction, expect a lot of, you know, just momentum into the city, which will be good. Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours, you already took all everything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that tomorrow we're doing our uh basketball. Uh it's gonna be a good event, thank you to Seth and Marissa for setting it up with a lot of good giveaways and that pickleball workshop, so it's gonna be a good event.
Do you get the jerseys?
I know they didn't come in, sorry. Basketball jerseys.
Gabriel, uh I I heard that the Coachella basketball team's gonna pay, do a pickup game with the community?
Yeah, we're gonna have uh Bill, our shooting guard over there, and then. Yeah, we're gonna have uh, Bill, our shooting guard over there, and then. Other than that, no, no more comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe.
Alright, we're adjourned.